Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this board retreat to order today, June seventeenth. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D, here. Casper?
Here.
Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
All right, start with the master facilities plan.
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion to approve. It's very, it was monkey from this. I moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
This is Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
So kind of we were in master facilities, we're shifting into master facilities, just in kind of two different formats. Uh, so before we come, we had talked about uh busing this morning, just making sure that we were uh comfortable and firm in our decision, particularly as we were working through uh our our IQ thesis, which we'll talk about uh again in detail. But I think, again, we are comfortable with our decision of right now, the answer is no to high school busing. But the idea of forming a working committee to look at um as we perhaps change partners with busing, you know, as as our contract expires and how we go from there, perhaps what routing can look like in staffing, I think we have an opportunity to look at that with kind of fresh eyes. Um, so knowing that, uh, I know we still have our central conversation, but I'm gonna kick it over to the architect piece. We'll start with that and then we'll think back with central uh immediately following that. So Tom's team, let me turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. I understand you got an A. That's not even a bad thing. Um, we wanted to, on a day really, just get you a little bit more definite. I'm gonna let things I can walk through uh some of the conversations we've been having. And then toward the end of the document, you'll see some images that are the beginning of of what we're creating in order to tell the story of basically educational opportunities, the kinds of spaces that are needed that you don't have. Um, so that uh and um that's yeah, he's could could really have some some tools to really cater for the relief to what to do with what they're trying to accomplish. So.
Great. Well, um, I did kind of want to review where we are right now with this document. And this isn't a, you know, a finished package. It's snapshot of where we are and kind of our process. I still um need to make sure I like spell check all the names, you know, anything like that because, you know, so. Um, but I think last time we were together, we looked at some of the results from, you know, that would be using the charts from the section. And I'm not gonna go through each page here, but when we start to look at kind of the best practices imagery, any adjacency diagrams from the group, that starts to really tell us a story about the kinds of priorities to your educational teams or, you know, senior is the biggest need. And so we're really using that information to start to move out the types and sizes of spaces that really want to be a part of the communication, obviously, and, you know, the the master plan as we're in design in earnest. Um, and so we're really hearing a lot about um the opportunity for gathering, whether that is in more of an auditorium type of space or um just more of a an opportunity for also for larger groups to gather or co-teaching or, you know, community partners to be able to use. And so we're starting to consider spaces similar to that for the gathering piece that may not necessarily be fixed auditorium seating, but would serve a similar purpose. And then, um, you know, we heard a lot about uh the arts and the opportunities there to expand on um choir, music, band, um, arts, um, visual arts and so forth, to make sure that it's accommodating, you know, the full population of the big standard buildings, uh, making sure that the rooms are sized properly for that population, enable the function, you know, as intended for the whole group. So some of those art um and band music world type of spaces, we're assuming to be. Um, the other types of spaces are, you know, more flexible, project-based spaces, STEM maker project-type spaces. There's a couple of of images at the end of our packet of uh what we're thinking about as we're um piecing together all of the input from all the staff. And so, you know, we're distilling the information that we got back from the groups. And then when we start to get to our uh images pages, well, what would they be about? You know, what what would they look like? How are we gonna communicate this visually to the community um that has place?
Is it on stage numbers when you?
Uh, page nineteen.
Yeah.
So that's where we start to get into, you know, what could these spaces look like? And this would be an example of um that field house athletic space that we were talking about uh as an opportunity. Um, you know, some mature, some additional field space, gathering, things like that. And so pages nineteen and twenty are images that could represent, you know, that scale of states and those types of functions. And in those those spaces of the district government uh yesterday to provide the seed money. So the scale of it will depend on what the part of why to what help with start. Great point. Yeah. So, yeah, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one are all images of what an athletic skill house could look like. Uh, we get into spaces for, you know, gathering, um, twenty-two, page twenty-two is an image of more of an informal gathering, but the types of spaces that we're hearing about are important for collaboration, multiple uh classes to come together, uh teen teaching and so forth. And then uh ages twenty-two and twenty or twenty-three and twenty-four are more on the STEM maker project technology type of space. Um, so we have one that, you know, this one could be a a finance class space with technology here. Uh, the following one could be a maker project STEM type of space. And then uh twenty-five um and twenty, twenty-five and twenty-six are really hard spaces. So, you know, art studio type of space and a band um instrumental music type of space.
Question on that. Uh, I know when when um a subset of us met with um some of our arts folks, um, and I certainly realized we're a large school district, large high schools. What in the OFCC world for a school our size, what is a normal band room space? And the reason I ask is, you know, one of the ideals that they were showing was was kind of that catering model, which is what, six sixty by a hundred? You know, which is like big as a gym, big as a gym. What is an OFC? Just for to get my mind around, what would be, what would be a normal size for OFCC?
It depends on your student enrollment for that building. So I don't have that off of my head, but it's several thousand square.
Okay.
Um, and so there is a little bit of flexibility within the programming um in terms of that size.
Okay.
But, you know, it is several thousand square feet so that it's able to accommodate the size of band you might have.
And do they consider those, uh, and I'm sorry, these are not bad questions. Maybe I'm just jumping the gun.
No, go ahead, please.
Um, would they consider just like the educational entity programs like band, like I'm gonna say concert band during the day? Or do they consider you have a marching band and the marching band might want to practice indoors and consider that part of the educational entity as well?
So they're primarily focused on educational program programming that's happening during the day.
Okay.
But within that, we mo- in mo- most cases have a lot of flexibility to think about, well, what does it mean for, is there an additional space that could be used for marching band when it's raining or things like that? So their primary focus is the educational programming proper. Uh, but again, there's a lot of flexibility. Uh, and then, you know, again, also their primary focus is building spaces inside. And so, you know, there is a lot of um language in the OFCC world that is planned for related to site amenities, specifically athletics.
Okay.
So it's, you know, they're not co-funding, but they're suggesting that it's um something that the districts.
I have a question of them. We we're talking about the band rooms and having to be big enough for the whole band.
Yep.
When would they, when in in the day would they use, the whole band would not be together during the day because there are periods, like first period jazz bands, that because kids can't, we can't have all of the kids in jazz band go on the fourth period because it doesn't.
It doesn't fit.
Fit their schedule.
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
So right now, right now, some of some of why we segment into like jazz band A or jazz band B or whatever is because of the size of.
It's okay.
We just can't schedule them all in.
Right.
So if you had an opportunity where we have one big room that could hold all of our jazz bands, it's a good and a bad. Yes, you can get them all in one room, but then it becomes a singleton and a singleton has to be scheduled first, right? Because we only one opportunity. So yes, you get that that breadth of the group, but it creates some scheduling complexities from a scheduling standpoint.
And from the kid's standpoint, what if they want to take, I don't know.
Any singleton that would line up with it would be a conflict.
Yeah.
And so that is where, again, in some high schools, not all, in in a lot of high schools, band is a singleton, meaning it's offered once during the day. And if with a singleton in a high school scheduling world, you put them on the board first because you gotta know where those conflicts are. So oftentimes I'm gonna pick seventh bell because it tends to go seventh bell because a marching band, they flow and then it goes into the day. When you put it seventh bell, that means if you only have one section of, we don't, but if we only have one section, AP line, we might say, if you put it there, any band can kick. So you've got to get it out of seventh bell. That's why all singletons go on the board first. But with a school our size, the reality is there will be singletons that line up and kids will have to make a choice. If if we went down to one band class and give a.
And okay, this might just be a logistic question for later too, but you have one band class, what's the band teacher doing the rest of the day?
Uh, so.
I'm just, I mean, the reality of that, I don't, I.
So that is where, and and this, and it's funny because we're having these conversations right now with specials, right? How you schedule specials? Do they travel? Do they not travel? And and um not just music, but art, um, well, like it's really art, music, PE. Even though you are K through twelve licensed, that means you can teach any music class, you can teach any art class. Most teachers would say, yeah, but I don't. Like, I teach choir or I teach band or I teach orchestra. They tend to think of themselves as very niche where their license views themselves as very open. So in theory, I'm not saying they should, just want that for the record, not saying they should. In theory, the band teacher can teach choir. In theory, the band teacher, that that's what they do during the day and people who uh are super, super, super physically responsible and very lean, they make, instead of having a specialty, you teach all of the music or you travel and you teach general music and things like that. But mo- I think most, I feel confident, most K through twelve art teachers or music teachers or PE teachers would say they have their niche that they are the expert on because that's what they trained in.
Right.
Of a discipline. And I would, I would agree as somebody who plays an instrument, that singing is playing is different than playing an instrument. Or playing a violin is different than playing a tuba.
Right.
Right? I mean, there is, there is some some truth in that. And within that, you know, requirements, there's a variety of types of spaces to kind of choose from depending upon district's programming. You know, there might be choir, there may be instrumental, there may be ensemble, there may be smaller practice spaces, smaller vocal rooms. So there's a lot of choice within that that the district can choose to suit your curriculum, your programming, and also give that flexibility of, you know, we not having one giant band room and not the only useful space you have. You know, obviously, there's multiple choices, there's multiple sizes, and there's a lot of flexibility within those choices to make and tailor them to the size that the district needs. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility.
And it becomes interesting too, especially when you have a big space of what is the appropriate staffing model. So, I mean, our bands are huge, right? So you're not gonna have like four hundred children and one band teacher, right?
Right.
That's the, there's all kinds of reasons you're not gonna have that. So then it becomes, when you have a teacher, but do you have two teachers? Do you have um IAs? Do you have paras? Like, then you have to have a conversation on what is so big that it becomes a staffing complexity for a safety and maneuvering and logistics, unless you have a really huge, like sixty by a hundred space that that can fill that. So there's the, I want them all together, but then staffing becomes a real reality of not what is too big.
Yeah. And then from an efficiency standpoint, with your footage, you're getting a certain number of square feet. And the goal is to use as many of those square feet as often as possible. And if you have very specialized spaces at a very specialized size, that can become tricky. And so keeping as the programming effort um would pick off, it that's a, that's a conversation that aligning that curriculum and and efficiency when it comes to that square footage is going to be important conversation.
And we've also talked about, just particularly with art, because we've been talking about specials, um, and how and what that rotation could look like. We do need to do a better, uh, well, I think we, a growth area for us is making sure that everything that has an experience in the high school has a stair-step experience in case well. So I'm gonna look at Craig's, we were talking about kilns, okay? We have ceramics abound at the high school, okay? A kiln broke the other day. Now, logical question is, do we, do we fix the kiln? Do we replace the kiln, right? It was, it was broken to the point that we were gonna need to buy another one. It wasn't gonna be repairable. So then the question became, it was my question, I said, well, is this curricular? That should have been an easy question. It was not. Because the art standards are written in a way that it never says a third grader or a sixth grader should use a kiln. It doesn't say that, right? It talks about hands and motor skills, how we're interpreting that as a district. If we're saying ceramics is a robust program here, when does a kid experience that in the seventh grade? When does a kid experience in that in the elementary? And if we view it as ceramics, then every one of our buildings should have a kiln. We're not quite there, right? So we gotta stair-step those experiences and prioritize those and build those in, which then impacts some of our facilities and some of the things that we fund. So our, speaking of the kiln, we decided to pause because we're getting ready to do an art uh exploration next year for the adoption the next year. We need to have that conversation, build those in, and then answer the question, do we replace the kiln? Or is a kiln come into play in the middle school, but not in primaries? Like, those are the conversations we need to have because we, we still have some clarity in that sequence.
Tom, you wanna talk a little bit about the master requirements?
Well, um, I think we've uh mentioned before that um as we are looking at the additions, it's about efficiency, it's about how it's gonna impact uh during construction into the students. Um, uh, it's not destructibility, uh, long-term maintenance issues, utilities, all those uh really come down to helping uh us to find, hey, where are the possibilities of of putting these additions? We're not designing it at this point, but we would definitely want to give uh some glimpses to the community. Um, and what we're gonna be doing is taking these block diagrams and uh starting to put a little bit more definition to them so that we can have some images both inside, which I think tells the story, and then some exterior uh images. Um, so you're, you're seeing the work uh in progress. Uh, and we've looked at a number of different options, uh, but have uh gravitated to these uh when it comes to the major additions. I will also be looking at that for the elementary space. Okay, well, how can these, how will that be figured? Reflect on comments that we're gonna be um engaging on uh for the conversations with staff at the administration so that it it's truly robust, uh, that we may focus on on the need uh on the students, so.
Can I ask a question about the high school configurations? So really like the work that we've done here to kind of land on this design. Have we talked at all about parking, um, given this considerable, especially at West, fact that that's gonna eat up a lot of the existing parking? Um, I think that's something that would, where are we with that discussion, I guess?
Well, and I think it, these help that because the original, again, previous, previous uh architect was around.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Versus, and honestly, I just, I just kind of floated this idea out when we were talking to principals and they were kind of like, okay, that makes me feel better. If it's like, instead of all the way around, it's kind of here and up. They were like, I can wrap my head around that. I think the parking is, once we get, and I mean, Tom's team is aware of our parking limitations, but I think one of the things, once we get kind of that mass design, taking that back to each building with the local police early, they ask for that as early as possible so that we can anticipate how to utilize all of that footage and get the traffic flow to go right, particularly at West, particularly at West, that traffic flow, as you know, we tried it. There are various reasons, while that was not successful, um, but I do think, I think we have enough spot. It's just the traffic flow of in and out of that is the million dollar question of how to make that the most efficient. Like, even in the build, we're gonna have enough, right, usability, it's just that the traffic flow in there. Yeah.
Okay.
So are we adding spots if we're saying we have enough spots and building another grade?
At West, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, at West, the parking lot will come out, like go closer to the road, so we'll expand it back.
Space there.
So then we're gonna do that. The retention pond will be reallocated and there will be parking.
So we're gonna expand it closest.
No, that was my concern.
And then again, and we haven't had this conversation with the architect, but the uh, the police and the engineers, ideally, we have lots of thoughts on this, but ideally, they would not like an entrance on Union Center. You know, they would like to push that traffic almost to that roundabout in the back.
Yeah.
And use that on the side and think about there by the library better.
Yeah.
Um, because even though you're not supposed to turn right and all the things people do, so they would actually like to stop that. That's where we need to look at that traffic flow of can, can it handle all of that, particularly when you take freshmen back into the building? Or is there an opportunity in the back to create an entrance? I don't know where it would be, but they talked about that, more on the backside um that we could explore.
I'm stuck in there for twenty minutes one day as it is now with that entrance at there. Yeah.
As we engage the townships in terms of partnership discussions, um, we're also gonna be discussing uh storm water management, looking at it more globally, is there a regional solution um that helps the school death rate instead of point of the ground shortage? Uh, is there something else that that we could look at that on the block? Um, so thinking outside the box is is really gonna be key in those discussions with the townships. So I, I, I'm excited about their partnership of engage with them at several different levels.
I think at West, one of the things that's been discussed heavily is, uh, you know, right now how it's, well, it's like this at East too, but I feel like the maneuverability is a little bit different. You know how it's two distinct lots? Getting away from that model so you're not like stuck in there. Now, the traffic pattern of that is real, but that's one of the things that we figured out in the traffic pattern when they tried to like, like almost barrier it out. On- once you got in the loop, you were like stuck, like you couldn't get over to the left side or you couldn't get over to the right side. But then on the, I'm again thinking of Craig's team, on the east side, part of the problem is it's not divided in that long side parking lot. And so when it snows, that that's a real issue because they clear it and then there's flow and you're clearing, like you're constantly in this churn because there's no, there's nothing to catch the snow. And so there's a beauty of a wide open space, but there's a complexity of a wide open space logistically, so how do we manage both of those? Um, and I hadn't even really thought about the snow until this winter and I think at one point they cleared it like five, like five times before school started. There was just no barrier.
Yeah.
Um, and a barrier doesn't have to be separate lots, but how can we, how can we ideally get both without creating division, but also create some opportunity logistically? Um, and even in our walkthroughs, um, from a snow removal pieces, things that just like where we have the badge readers, it's a nightmare for snow removal because they're right there in the path of the, and so they need to be farther back, closer to the door. Again, things that we've just experienced that as we build new buildings, we go, hey, you set that back four or five feet, that's a lot better for the snow piece. So just some things legit, like again, there's the functionality pieces and things that we gotta kind of.
All out of.
Yeah. My neighbor asked me this weekend, her outside. She heard we're getting parking garages at the high school.
Somebody did ask me that in a listing session, I said, that is not, not in the plan, but I know.
For any parking garage at the high school. And I'm like, well, if you've heard that, you know more than.
That would have to be a township initiative.
Okay.
So.
There you go. Somebody did ask.
Let's use tip money.
Yeah. I don't think OFCC has that in there.
So I, I like that we're not interrupting the learning experience and having displaced students. How should I think about those existing spaces as community members are engaging us in conversations? As far as are they gonna remain completely untouched? Will there be refurbishing? Like, how should I think about those existing spaces?
Well.
It's early, I understand, but.
No, it's actually important to just continue to say, hey, there's a bigger partnership than absolutely safe. And those state dollars come in at the end, the, the, the schedule in which, uh, number one, when they're available, uh, give built up the credits to receive them. Those are the ones that are gonna go to primarily renovating the infrastructure. But what we've heard from the staff is that we have enough standard classrooms in terms of, you know, let's not build new classrooms. Let's build classrooms that are specialized, that are for the arts. It's a proof what we have for the arts. Let's improve what we have for music, so on. So, uh, but all those other classrooms, um, you know, I think that they'll, uh, they're extremely usable. It's, it's, it's that we're, we're repositioning how, what, what goes in them.
Incredible. And, and when the time comes for the renovation aspect of it, um, there is most often a what's called a reprogramming under associated with. So that's moving walls here and there. It's not a full, you know, full wiping out walls on the interior, but the OFCC understands that while these pieces are moving around, that sometimes you need to edit the side of a space, combine spaces, things like that. And so, um, that often happens in within that budget. And then, you know, when you, when it comes to kind of the renovation aspect, um, you know, it's a, it's a comprehensive renovation um budget. And so you're looking at finishes, you're looking at fit out, you're looking at, you know, all kinds, every category that's in this assessment. Make sure that the new space and the renovated space, when the project is fully completed, are very uh in terms of their, their final product, so.
Great. I think there's the other aspect that, um, it's just the reality when you walk through your rooms, they show very well. Your, your staff uh has done a great job at maintaining and upgrading technology and keeping up. Um, they're gonna do well uh for the, for the next five years, three, six years. And that's when you'll see the dollars come, hopefully, in, in, in that time period after the major additions are completed, the new buildings throw up. That's when you'll see the infusion of new dollars and that'll, uh, you know, it's a major step. But overall, yeah, I, right, and we'll say, done a terrific job. It's not the story, a lot of school districts, it's the story that you had to maintain. You all have maintained. Um, well, it's just it's not the right kind of space. It's not the right condition. It's not, and find addition seeds, find what educational spaces earlier today were, uh, uh, thought about twenty-five years ago. And that's the sort.
Land capacity, you mean, that we just simply don't have room?
Yes.
Can I ask about the field house projections? So my understanding is this one would be kind of representative of what that seed money would enable. Obviously, it could scale up from there. Am I correct in that thinking?
Yeah, the, um, what it is, is ten million of each site, so I mean, uh, you know, it's not gonna be in one in a day or be one location in terms of those schools. Uh, there's obviously logistic issues, a lot of other issues associated with it. So the ten million uh provides you a very nice facility, but if, if the townships can participate, some other businesses, um, that, that's gonna help a lot. And then the discussion is where? You know, do they have it on the, on the campuses or are there other locations that the board and the township should consider? One of the things that Adam did, um, in a meeting with the town officials and, and and the county as well, although we learned that the county doesn't have that many options out there, but townships definitely, definitely have options. Townships definitely definitely have options, shows of land availability. You know, what is the best best location, um, what best use um for now, any systems, sites? Potential boost sites, so those are all discussions that um really uh we would see coming up. And I wrap those up by the end of summer, so by the time school starts, we could have some further. Information to share uh with the public. This, they will ask for details, and there's some things that we're just not gonna know. E- even right away, uh, after after the vote, um, there's just some those that are gonna take some time to develop, that's everything.
So that does lead to the question of when are, when do we have something? Semi-concrete or something to show, when we now go out here and start to. Educate our community on the pond issue, when will we have something to show them that's? I I know we're not showing them every detailed plan, but when are we gonna have something? We have to have something to show them if we want to engage and have an opportunity for. The passage of this, we have to have something.
And I I think uh that's gonna be the focus uh uh the the next several weeks. Uh, you have a lot of the parts, it's just how do you get it down to one page, how do you get it down to two pages? But really, it it had to be, you gotta get all those key forms. So and he, this is a complicated story, a complicated project. You gotta get it down to a handful.
Yeah, something that's gonna engage them.
So I think that's we, at this point, how to have a plan, a direction. We we have all components, we've done that engagement, it's now using this time uh. Uh, during uh the next several weeks to put that. That's gonna keep it together, so that you can each carry it uh under your pillows, have it in your wallets, and. Um, but it's.
Easily accessible.
It says conversation.
Okay, somebody call Bill Gates.
I think conversations that happen during the, you know, at the grocery store or at at athletic events and, you know, and it's getting. Putting those rumors to rest, now there is no.
No parking garage.
I do think something just even like this is super helpful.
Right.
Even for our internal staff, because I think a lot of the questions that we get from our internal staff is like. What, where are we going when you're doing that? And I'm like, well, you're not, and they're like, what? And and as somebody who, again, as the teacher, when they did the major renovation on the back in two thousand twelve, I think I was like, what are we doing? But honestly, I didn't even know, like, I know that sounds crazy, but I didn't even know, I mean, he just continued, right? So I think, again, that idea that we were building all the way around, people thought, oh, my gosh, my whole hallway is gonna be displaced, and. I think this helps create some 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 decrease or deescalate some internal angst of like, oh, okay, well, I can see that you can build this over here. And that's not gonna upset my day-to-day apple cart as much, so I do think just even this concept is super. Super visual to say, what does the exterior look like? And I know we we always talk about the interior, but. You gotta remember, and and Jen does a good job of keeping this from my from my forefront. A lot of people don't ever come in our schools, all they see is what they drive by, right? That's all they see, I mean, our empty nesters, and so. Not that they don't care what the inside looks like, but the outside is what draws people's attention, the wow factor, they're like, oh, look at that beautiful building. I mean, I remember when I moved to Ohio, it was one of the things about the code that I was like, whoa, that building, that's like impressive, right? Um, so I do think that exterior piece, just just getting that narrative in a head will certainly certainly help us.
And with those communications, it's kind of a fine line between, okay, here's what we think we're doing.
Right, yeah.
We're not beginning the process in earnest until after.
Absolutely.
Um, so having had the suggestion of this is the plan, but not so detailed that if something comes. Becomes different at the end of the day, that people don't feel like they were.
Or didn't, yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna say this is gonna be like, there'll be, you know, four.
Right.
Kilns in this art room, and then it comes to be no kilns, and they're like, you promised me four, yeah.
Right, it has to be.
Has to be enough to entice them, but not enough to. If we need to.
But they don't feel like.
It's you two matching.
Very helpful, thank you.
Um, all right, kind of moving in on our agenda, um. Well, I've got notes on on my special version, so I'm gonna make sure they're in front of me, so I didn't forget, um. Speaking of it, I'm gonna I'm gonna kind of jump around in the order just a little bit here, going back to that FAQ review, just because we've been talking about that, and then we'll go to central. Um, one of the things that uh the teaching and learning team and myself have been looking at is we're really. Trying to dig into and delve into a couple buckets. One is class size, right? What would, what would we want the ideal class size to be? What would that cost us in terms of staffing? If we decide if that's the model we wanna go, how do we get that to add up to stair step down and then a quarter? So that's one piece. That that these are a lot of pieces, I'll tell you, so you got class size, I picked class size first, because it was the number one narrative of K six, guys, we'll come back to that. Two, we're looking at specials, to bring back the. Normal, healthy rotation of specials, probably that we were accustomed to kind of before the the two thousand twelve. Meaning kids engaging in specials every day, not not every special every day, but a rotation of that. And then really looking at what offerings do we want? So right now, um, I think in our teaching and learning group, I think we would all collectively say we do have some redundancy that we could probably eliminate. We have a tech special and we have a steam special or a STEM special. Could we articulate that? Maybe not, right? We've also talked about, um, particularly from the parent lens of. Uh, we have instrumentation selection, uh, whether that's at the junior high or earlier, we've talked about almost like a. A three model with maybe instrumentation selection in four or five to get you some of those more uh long-term pa- impacts. But then also give you a little bit of choice, preparing you for that junior high model, but then also parents will really, and I think this is, they wanna see their kids perform. I mean, they do, right? So we're talking about that, then we're also talking about counselors. The the ideal ratio, I've never seen it, I'm just gonna tell you, they put it out there, the national counseling folks do, that it's two hundred and fifty to one. Like I said, they must have Bill Gates money, because I've never seen that model. Um, actually, if you look at the statistics, the the current statistic nationally is about three seventy-five, three fifty to four hundred. Is, you know, they have, you have the recommended, and then you have like, what can we afford? And normally, that's about three seventy-five, again, three fifty, four hundred, so we're looking at that of. And and there's the philosophy conversation here of seven through twelve is different than K six, right? And then there's also the question of what does a counselor do, and I don't mean that facetiously, right? What is the twenty-first square feet of a counselor? This is actually where we left our conversation in teaching and learning the other day, because we we were getting. Uh, energized by the conversation of, I think, I think everybody can tell you what's the difference between an assistant principal and a counselor. Okay, what's the difference between a counselor and a school psych? What's the difference between a counselor and a school psych and some of the resources that we have, and how do they overlay? We gotta get some clarity there, so we're exploring that, and then we're exploring, I told you, they're big buckets, right? Then we're exploring world language. Right, what does that look like in a junior high model? I'm gonna stop there for now, in a junior high model, because. You would have to implement the junior high model first, to then see, would we ever be interested in having an elementary option for world language? And if we did, is that all, is that one? So we're looking at those four buckets, we will be bringing those back. As we get kind of proposals to those, to have some philosophy conversations. And then if we'd agreed on those philosophies, or we decide what we wanna do, then we could talk about an implementation timeline, or we'd work with that for those. But just preliminarily, I wanna put some um, some numbers just kind of in your head to start thinking about, and one of them. Was a real aha moment for all of us in the room that might be helpful for the FAQ, because when we said it, I was like. Is that right? And I was like, yeah, that's right, because we worked, we worked the numbers a couple times. If the levy was not successful. It's not gonna be a feeling, it's gonna be bad feeling, but if it was not, we have no room in the end. Like, there is no physical space in K six, okay? We are getting, I mean, we're getting ready to take a teacher workroom to make it into a classroom, to move, I mean, that's where we are. The only, the only way, I'm not gonna say the only way, but one of the things that comes into question is how do you get that space back? How do you get classrooms that you can utilize? One way to do that would be if this district did not offer, I'm not saying it's a good idea, I'm saying it's just a reality of where we are. If you didn't offer all-day kindergarten, and you only, and you only offered half-day kindergarten. You would get back almost thirty rooms across this district. And I say that because that that might be, I mean, that is, I mean, literally, the number is either gonna reach thirty sitting in a classroom of K six. Or we're gonna have to think really differently now, and I know all-day kindergarten, you joke about it sometimes, right? No, from an educational standpoint, that's not an option, like, you are not a destination district, that is not good for, there's no way to skin that. But if you've got to get space back. I mean, you you can't cut first grade, you can't, I mean, there's no other way to get back until you, unless you talk modular units, that's funny, I mean. I just think that is a reality, I'm just putting it out there, that that is a reality that we discussed, that if if for some reason it was not successful. We might have to get that creative or sit at class sizes of thirty children in a classroom. So I just.
When your options on quality.
Hundred, and and I'm gonna tell you, all data, all data that we currently have is that. Half-day is certainly an option for certain families, but the data from half-day kindergarten is very different than all-day kindergarten. Um, and we believe in the all-day kindergarten model, which is why we have it, as do most places in the state. Um, but I do think it is a reality of if you're out of space. And it weren't successful, you would either have to have extremely high class sizes of, again, thirty. I mean, we're sitting right now at twenty-seven and some flat out for next year, we just are, and you go, well, I. I don't know where to add, I don't know where to push, so you're either sitting at thirty, the only real flexibility we have is kindergarten. And specials, but we have a lot of specials already on a cart, so we're getting to the point of pretty strapped. And I say that just because I think that is important for all of us to hear, that the only. One of the few places we have a living room is kindergarten, it would not be educationally sound by any means, but I just put that out, that that's a real fact to tell somebody, if that's where we are.
Thirty kids isn't educationally sound.
It's a, it's a really neat thing that we're going through right now of, you know, uh, in my whole career, working in a school, we've never had these type conversations. That was based around facts of programming.
And and that is a fact.
Staffing of program, so it's, it's really where you can dive in and say. These are real actual if-then statements that we're trying to work through, because.
And then.
We don't have the ability to just create a perfect world at this moment.
Does that thirty classrooms also include the relocation of preschool to somewhere? We would have in our school building?
We would, we would have, no, that would be some additional rooms we could get back, but again, I don't, I don't know where we put it. Do you mean, we were trying to, I mean, I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying. Now, for perspective, so take that down a rabbit hole, okay? We started to look at, how many more staff do we need in K six? It's gonna be K five, but we're taking the current model, and eventually, again, we extrapolated on K five. You'd be talking about, if you were looking at twenty-four in a class, that was my number, somebody asked me, where did you put that? Or why did you put that? I don't know, it sounds better than twenty-five, honestly, honestly, like twenty-five for some reason, you know, it's like a quarter. Like a quarter is a lot, I only got twenty-four cents, that doesn't seem as much, right? It's a lot, so twenty-four, and I say twenty-four because. Um, kind of smaller districts, I think, you know, some some places you might hear about, you're probably looking at twenty. Some people would say the class size is twenty-one to twenty-three, it is probably closer to twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-five, it's in that sweet spot. Again, when you start to get over twenty-five, I feel like people just feel a little different, so I picked twenty-four. To make a twenty-four model, we anticipate that we would need twenty additional staff. So uh not, so it's really not in the K two, uh, K two would be about four to five additional staff. It's really in the elementary world, so you'd need about sixteen additional staff, which that means sixteen additional rooms, right? As I'm looking at Tom's team, like.
In our crew.
That's the reality, right? If you said, I want to take what we have and make, and that's not, I mean, that's not specials, that's core. That's not specials, that is flat core, so first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade and kindergarten, you'd need about twenty additional staff.
But again, I I this is always that, it's the chicken or the egg, like, I feel like we have to do so many interventions at times. Because we have larger class size, so if we were able to have smaller class size. Would we be able to have less investment on the intervention side potentially, because they're getting what they need? In the classroom and that, you know, whatever it is.
And I, and I will say, like, seven, there are pockets, particularly in seven A. In nine twelve, we don't have, we don't have a class size problem, we really don't. I don't even think a high school teacher would tell you that, and what I mean by that is. It it's not uncommon in certain, not across the board, but you're gonna have blips in a high school where you sit at twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Where you sit, you know, those kind of things, but it all kind of equals out, what I mean is, I might have. I might have twenty in a regular English class, and I might have thirty in an honors class. Well, it's it's kind of a wash, right? Instead of having twenty-five or twenty-four, twenty-four, I just have twenty, it's just kind of a wash. Um, you anticipate that in kind of certain classes, probably more honors classes, you'll have a higher number. The reason is they're self-selecting. They've done school for so long, it's just different than little kid, right? It's just different. Um, so I don't, I don't, you're, don't get me, I wanna make sure, I don't think we we should be replicating twenty-four in every class in a high school. It's gonna work itself out, kind of normal in front of class schedule, we do sectioning, part of that's contractual right now. We don't really have any, we're gonna be like, gotta pay teacher certain course load, it is what it is. Um, but in the K six world, and again, I picked twenty-four, if you say, Ashley, I want it lower, Ashley, I want it higher. Uh, let me know, and we can, we can play with those models, um, but right now, you'd be talking about twenty additional. Stack in the cores, again, specials is over here. Um, in the cores, and then again, kindergarten just for pure space. Could be a, could be a reality, or if, you know, you could say, Ashley. And I, and I, trust me, if we had talked about kindergarten, I'm I'm not sure I could, that'd be a rough conversation for me, but at the same time, thirty kids, thirty. Second grader sitting in a room is not ideal either, so, but I do think that's an interesting narrative of when you're out of room. Go with space somewhere, you either gotta look at it per se to the room, or you gotta look at it as actual physical spaces in a building. Or we could start looking at, and and we didn't look at this, but you could start stripping down. The existing spaces, workrooms, things like that, um, where staff have mailboxes, they launch those kind of, you can look at that. But again, there's some renovation pieces to take.
Staff member, not have someplace to go.
So I just wanted to, again, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, but I also kind of wanna know, I just wanna know kind of where we are when we talk about options and what we have in front of us. Uh, if then, then what?
What you're articulating, though, isn't foreign to to our K through six parents, they see this every day, I mean, they see the class sizes that they have, and so. Now, what those choices are, they don't have that visibility, and I think that's why this is an important articulation, is as we are encountering the reality of our space. These are the physical limitations that we have, and we've been talking for years about, oh, well, you know, we'd really like to bring class sizes down, but we don't have the space. If we do, we don't have the staff, and this is the reality of.
We start to put.
Without intervention and help from our community to solve some of this, these are the choices that we will be facing going forward.
And it will come down to, you know, by Bill Gates money. Um, I mean, it will, it it would be easy, you know, we'd fix class size, we'd fix specials, we'd fix world language, and we'd fix counseling, no, right? If I went to Adam and said, Adam, I need a blank amount of staff, he might pass out on me, right? Because, I mean.
Not if you said need.
I'm gonna remember that, I'm gonna remember that.
Wants, the wants is where we start.
When you talk about twenty.
Yeah.
And if you talk about twenty in class size, then you're gonna overlay. Probably, I'm I'm guessing, at least another twelve to fifteen in specials. But I mean, you start to hit a different number, right? In a, in a year of where the pipeline of teachers is not as robust as it used to be, right? Now, some of that. As you change building structures, absorbing ninth grade into tenth, we'll have to look at staffing differently, right? We will be, we'll have to move some staff based on their seniority, their certification, so that will help as well. But there would be an additional add and we'd have to talk about which one of those we're prioritizing or if we're not prioritizing, and then Adam can start to work that into models. Because if you start dumping in twenty staff in one year, that's gonna do some stuff, right? Versus, you know, we could do class sizes in four years, knowing when the elementarys will be built and build. Now, then you go, what do I do with them in the interim, but that is a conversation to kind of have.
And that's where we have talked a lot about, on the facility project, less building footprints will equal our ability to control those numbers differently. You know, right now, you can only, your ranges that you're working within are larger based on how many units you have. So, a larger building, although yes, it's a larger building, you have more units, now that range is a lot smaller, you can kind of deliver a more similar program to all students a little easier.
It's twenty, so as we continue to kind of work these models, again, I just wanted to bring you kind of that data, but it's twenty four. Would you like to see that number higher, lower? You're comfortable with that number, again, I picked that number just from kind of my own educational experiences as a teacher and as an administrator. But again, looking at K six, not seven twelve, that's a different, different piece. Is twenty four kind of the sweet spot? Knowing that it's never, I mean, it's never exactly clean, right? You're gonna have one that has twenty five and one that has twenty three.
Well, at, at least for me, again, I think in the way we've been focusing is like especially that K two maybe is on the twenty two-ish in the, or fifth is in the twenty six, you know, like, I think that.
This year, the bubble will be at sixth grade, the bigger bubble, and we chose that. Right, wrong, good or bad, we kind of chose that intentionally in that as a transition, you're going into the, you know, the third grade, we wanna keep that small, we wanna help you in that transition. Third and fourth grade just feels different developmentally than fifth and sixth grade. Um, and so, I mean, there are several, gonna be several sixth grade classrooms sitting at twenty six, twenty seven, right at the top of that.
At high school level.
Uh, that'll be at the sixth grade level, sixth grade level, yeah. So we, we chose to put the, the kids who had been there the longest and kind of most attuned to the school and all of that, we chose to take the, the hit kind of there and try to keep the third and fourth grade kind of at a smaller scale. But we're watching those numbers closely, we get the report every day and we're monitoring those pretty heavily.
I, I think, you know, Doug's point, we've noticed, I think we've even talked, I know that I personally have said to people, you know, when my class size is there, like twenty six, I'm like, I would love to bring another teacher, I just have nowhere to put them, so I think we started that narrative, what we have to ends in Betsy, what the, the, the sweet spot is conveying to the community what will happen.
If not.
If not, without them, without the naysayer saying, oh, they're just threatening you. So it's that whole, because it is the reality of what's gonna happen, we don't have any space, nobody, nobody on this board wants to take out a thirty seven year mortgage levy for five hundred thousand, five hundred million dollars. The reality is, what options do we have? We have nowhere to go.
Well, and even, and I would even say, you know, I don't, I don't want an architect to help us build a, a space and then I go, well, we actually needed twenty more classrooms, because that would have been the ideal size. Do you know what I mean? If we build for what we have now, even with just a little growth, I don't know if we would have built nineteen more, nineteen more classrooms. And so I think it's the conversation of, this is what the community asks for. The loudest voice in this community from K six with smaller class size, we wanna give you that. To give you that, we need the space.
Right.
And we need the space that has the staffing, which is about twenty additional staff with twenty additional rooms. And that's before you ever have the specials conversation, and I'm gonna put the secondary as the counselor. Secondary meaning like the peripheral is also counselors, some world language and how that fits in. But from a K six world, specials and, and class size were the.
And we just, I mean, we have nowhere to go, like you said, there's, it's not like we're loving the idea of.
And again, it's not, no, often it's good when you talk thirty kids in a class. Or we're starting to alter what, what is research-based best practice educational program.
You take away, yeah, I mean, if you take away that all day kindergarten, what you get is people leaving the district to go private all day and then bringing them back to us in first grade, and that's also another hard thing to plan for.
So again, I don't, again, those numbers are pretty fresh, we've been working on them, so I don't know how that fits, I don't know if it does fit into an FAQ, but I do think that's an interesting, particularly in the K, K five, uh, conversation that we're gonna have.
That was part of my takeaway on the FAQ was hitting class sizes of harder messaging because I didn't feel like we did that in here, and I do feel like that's what our largest selling.
Well, I think having the data.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, any questions on that piece?
No, we have thirty five minutes left in this.
Gotcha, yeah, um, central. So I know that we have, um, we've, we've talked about central, you know, kind of ongoing on some pieces, but again, thinking more kind of for architectural needs, you know, it's gonna be a standalone, it's gotta go somewhere, right? And so we gotta think about that. One of the things, um, uh, and I'll tell you how it came about that I started to look at it, and the more I looked at it, the more questions I have. Is, um, the day that there was a safety issue, um, at, um, at central, if you remember the day I'm talking about, I mean, we had to do some searches. And, uh, what I remember was, uh, we were having the conversation about logistically, physically, uh, checking kids. And I said, we don't have the manpower to physically check ninety kids. Because not, and I got ninety, because there's about a hundred and eighty kids there, half and half, morning, PM. Um, it was, so that, that's where I got the ninety. Well, then I got on the attendance and there were not ninety bodies sitting in the building. There were forty in the AM section or the PM section, and so I thought, well, was that normal? That seems odd, right? So, um, I ask for, so again, attendance is a little different at central than normal, okay? And this is where my questions, I have more questions than I have answers, right? Just, but so it just led to some questions. Um, so I asked for the Cognos report, and what I mean by that is normally you just go to DAP, you go to E school, not DAS, so you go to E school and you pull up the, uh, attendance report each day because you're logging attendance per period. That is not how central does it, right? Central does it, which is why it has to come through a Cognos report. I would have assumed, I was wrong in my assumption, I would have assumed they had an AM calendar and a PM calendar, meaning I'm taking attendance when you're phys, when Isaac's physically sitting in front of me, and then I'm taking attendance when they're doing their virtual. And I'm using a formula or some kind of average to get their attendance, not what happens. So it says, it's not a daily present day like in a typical school building. The attendance is manually calculated, which I knew, calculated on Fridays, as minutes worked each day. And each student's time is entered into the attendance entry in his school manual. So a student starts with a day with zero attendance, and then the minutes worked for the day are manually entered. So again, my question's here, and I wanna sit down with multiple people and kind of talk this through, not only the teacher, the principal, but also like him as. I don't know what minutes worked means. If minutes worked, either it's just sitting in front of me, and that's minutes worked, or is minutes worked like an assignment completion? And I'm not sure about that, looking at some of these percentages, I'm like, I don't know. So I asked for the Cognos report for the year so that I could see students' average attendance. Okay, that's what the, I asked for the yearly report. Our average attendance rate per student, for the entire students, okay? And when they pulled this Cognos report, this is for the year, remember? Um, even though we have a hundred and ninety central graduates, kids early and they, they, they go out and in. Total year at this point, uh, was two hundred and fifty eight children, okay, that's what the attendance was for. Our average attendance was seventy eight point four percent. Okay, that's logging minutes worked, I don't, or minutes of completion, again, I got questions on what that means, okay? Seventy eight point four, the median was eighty four point oh nine. So you got half the kids above that, half the kids below that. You do have some kids on here, and again, this is where I gotta dig into the questions, you got kids on here who have a hundred percent attendance for the year.
You got a lot more.
But, and I'm just, we got kids with less than ten percent attendance. And everything in between.
And when we're saying that percentage, I'm interpreting that to, they did at least one minute that day, or a, a day, is that?
I don't know how minute, I, I need to understand what it means, minutes worked, because I would have assumed, well, yeah, that's great, so I would have assumed I get a in-person attendance rate and I get a virtual attendance rate of minutes worked. I don't know how minutes worked is, I don't know what minutes worked means in an AM situation versus a virtual.
Might not even be coming in, in person, or they might be stopping in, taking attendance and leaving.
That's a good question. I don't know. That is the average kid is there that.
Present for a day.
Present, present minutes worked, not present, minutes worked, that's how it's minutes worked.
Present in their learning in some way.
Now, and again, I don't know if present in your word means completion.
Right.
And again, I think it's a good crosswalk, some of these outliers, right, the kid who has a hundred percent, just, I get, this stuff kind of jazzes me, so I get like, oh, what's that mean? Um, I don't, the kid that has a hundred percent, what do their grades look like? A kid that has less than ten percent, what does it look like? Now, you hope, I, I don't know about hope, but you would just assume there'd be a correlation there. But if you start pulling ten percent attendance and As and Bs, uh, we, we just, we just gotta crosswalk some things, but my million dollar question is minutes, what does it mean to be minutes present? Because, again, a good, good question.
Minutes present or minutes worked?
It's minutes worked, is what I was told, minutes worked, there is no AM and PM calendar. So they are not tracking in-person versus virtual. Because what happens, what, what happens is, in, in theory, a kid comes for the AM session, I'm an AM in-person kid. I come for the AM, I sit my three and a half hours, and then I go home and I do my virtual. And then the PM kid does their virtual in the morning, and they come in and they sit for the three and a half hours in the afternoon. You would think there would be two systems, one tracking the in-person, meaning Isaac's physically in front of me. And then when he's virtually, how am I defining that? And maybe that is minutes worked. Minutes worked, when you're sitting in front of me, I, I don't, I don't know if that means I'm completing my assignment or I'm getting, for my three and a half hours, I'm getting all my minutes because you're there. We got, we gotta kind of work through some of those pieces, and each teacher manually inputs that. Each teacher, so each thing, remember now, they start from zero, that's a whole different question I have.
It's bizarre.
Which is bizarre, right? Each teacher is, is recording minutes worked, again, I have questions. Minutes worked, and they're turning that in on Friday. That's why they have that Friday off in their schedule, remember, there's no kids report on Friday, it's all virtual staff report, that's when they're entering the attendance.
For the whole week. So there's gotta be some type of communication out there that went to those teachers that.
I wanna see lanes to them. Correct, and that's what we need to dig into.
Because what would be even worse is if they're all doing it differently.
I don't think they all, I don't. I would think there has to be, because of the Cognos report, how the Cognos report is, there has to be some formula that they're using. The question is, is that the formula that we want, that the formula that makes sense? So I just think we have to dig into it, I have questions about minutes worked, I also have questions about why we wouldn't have a in-present attendance versus a virtual attendance that you combine. And then again, I would like to, not for all two hundred kids, but I would like to do some spot checking about how our attendance rate is correlating. Um, you know, our state report card, um, it is, you know, it's, um, the attendance rate, uh, is not, is, it is not in comparison uh, to our other high schools, one of the things also, again, it can be a little bit different because you're comparing apples and oranges. You can't pull a Cognos report for our high school, but you could pull the daily attendance and see what the, the average, uh, high school attendance is. But based on our report card data, it would definitely be above seventy eight percent, because we're sitting in the ninety percent.
So we would anticipate some. So when they're there in person, like.
They're getting taught.
Are, are they?
I asked it twice, and I was told, they are getting taught by a teacher. Because I said, I wanna make sure in-person doesn't mean. And I've been in classes.
We don't have delineation that, of these minutes were in-person versus virtual, so. Evidently, if I'm one of the kids who's less than ten percent minutes worked, I mean, I've never shown my face in the building and there's no way to really verify that.
And what happens if you show up for your instruction and then you go home and don't do anything?
Yeah.
What do those hours look like? Work means.
Right, we need to understand what minutes worked mean.
I mean, could you go home in the afternoon and knock out all your assignments in an hour? Or are you the kid that goes home and knocks out your assignments in four hours? Or are you, like, what?
Or do you not do them at all?
Or you still get credit for the morning?
Right. And attendance is one piece of this, I mean, again, the attendance came on my radar because of that incident, I said, hey, we're gonna search ninety kids, like, oh, a lot. And then they were like, there're not ninety kids in the building, I said, well, there, there gotta be, because there's AM and PM, right? Um, and so that's where that kind of train of thought came. So again, we can ask for the formula and do some spot checking.
I just think this changed when the attendance changed from number of days required to number of hours required.
No, I doubt, I doubt it, because Central's only three years old and how it bill for, that was back in eighteen nineteen, I think, when it went from, I'd have to double check my date, you'd be close to it. But I think just because of its three-year pattern and seeing kind of the consistency of its report card data, I wouldn't think so.
I wonder if they're trying to mirror that in some way though, you know what I mean?
And I'm sure there's some, I'm assuming there's some, there's, there has to be something right now, so we can dig into that. Um, I, I think the bigger, you know, the bigger question is, do we think it's meeting the needs for which it was intended? I think that's the million dollar question.
For me, it, it, it's kind of twofold. Is it doing that, or is there another option that is a revamped central that meets those needs? So it, it's, it, it seems to me, based on the data, that we have some missteps with how it's being delivered currently. But at the same time, for me at least, I recognize that that's approximately fifteen percent of our graduates. And when we looked at why they were there, most of it was for, you know, M and N situation, so that there is, I don't know that they would be successful in our traditional model either. So is there a way to fix the current delivery model and create something that Central was intended, but seems not to be achieving currently while still having to carve out and just doing it with much more fidelity than appears to be currently happening. I would love to see our curriculum department and those that were a part of creating Central reiterate that. Both, curriculum department, those that started it originally, those that are working in it currently, I would love for them to bring us some options to look at that maybe look different from right now, but still meet the intended needs that were discussed when Central was created.
And I think that's where my harsh, and I'm being honest with the, with the team that we're talking about. What is the intended target? Because is that, is that, the number one reason right now, data shows that kids are self-selecting to go to Central is mental health. It is not credit deficiency. And I would have bet my, I'd have bet my paycheck that Central was about credit deficient kids.
Right.
And that is not the data. The data is about eight to, eight to ten percent are there for credit deficiency.
Eighty of the hundred and ninety were mental health.
Right, so that, that's why I asked that, I think if you ask curriculum, they would say it was for the credit deficient kid to make sure we get them to graduation. That's not, and again, it's hard to extrapolate mental health, and that's what I'm gonna call it, mental health from that graduation piece, because there's a ton of air balloon that, and how you problem solve that. But I, I think, I think we have a model that's probably built for credit recovery. And I don't know if credit recovery is it, or if it's more of a, um, wraparound services for mental health to get you across.
And this is where I would love to, to hear from them, because I don't think that credit recovery was the intended origination of Central. I believe the intended origination of Central when it was created is exactly what's happening there. The all for alternate options for students, no matter what that looks like. I think it is probably more mental health than we originally thought it would be. But I do think that it was created to create more options for kids, not necessarily the credit deficiency piece. And so what I would like to see is for them to bring us some ideas on what this could look like. I mean, I, I, I hear us having to make a decision at some point. I mean, I, I, I hear us having to make a decision at some point on what happens to Central. And I don't know that the five of us are really. Um. Equipped enough to answer that question. Because it's a yes or no for us, it's not a, let's build a new model, that's not our work, right?
I gue- I guess, and my question to that would be. Why do we need an alternative model? If our high schools are functioning as they should for all. With a robust.
Maybe that is a model, is to bring that back into the high schools and meet those needs in some way. But I don't think we can just say. Our high schools are now going to be functioning for all and everyone's going back into them.
Well, my, my perspective on this is, as a relatively new board member, who hasn't been on this journey. No one has ever been able to articulate to me why Lakota Central exists.
Yes.
And we get very wrapped up on, on Lakota Central or high schools, instead of talking about the populations being served. If we have, if we have, you know, concerns around the mental health of our students. Then I would like to understand what the plan is holistically to address that. If there's concerns around credit recovery, how is, what are the recommendations to serve that? I think typically we've gotten too wrapped up in these ideas or these visualizations. And I'll take it to another thing, when we talk about, you know, being a high tech, we get very focused on cyber academy instead of thinking through what high tech means all the way across. So I would actually like to broaden it beyond Central to say, how are we best serving these students? Because if it is mental health, I'm very concerned that we have. Uh, the majority of these students selecting this option for mental health reasons, self-selecting with no validation. To validate if that's really the concern, or if it's, I just don't want to attend regular classes, so I'm gonna say I have mental health to go on here. And then they walk into a situation where we don't even have a robust dependence situation to make sure that we have eyes on them, to make sure that we have some way of evaluating. How they're doing from a mental health standpoint. So I think understanding that service delivery would help. Then get us to a point to evaluate. The broader question of, you know, our concerns around Central.
You're still, I'm sorry, go ahead. You're still gonna have the issue. And this is where maybe at the school, within a school, you're still gonna have the issue that. A, a, a majority, I shouldn't say, I, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of kids at Central where the mental health component. Is the size of our high schools, and you can't say, well, we're just gonna give everybody the services that they need, or. When that's part of it, when that's part of their mental health issue is the size of our buildings, so. As we look through this and figure out like why we're there, what the intent is. You know, is there a way to do a, a building within a building, you know, maybe there's still, maybe we don't have Central, we still have East and West. But there's an option for a smaller set of those people, maybe they don't. Come to school at eight fifteen, maybe they don't start their day until nine, and everything gets in their classroom, and then they don't have to. Whatever that is, the anxiety of the large classrooms or, because I think to your point we talked about earlier. It's the whole mental health piece is going to come into play. Over here, as we put kids in one junior high and it becomes large, and then they have the same anxiety of that. Big building, so I, 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 I think we don't agree that we don't have enough really. Like, part of, I think part of the issue is. The staff, I mean, do we have the right staff in there?
Well, and so from a, and I'm, I'm gonna kind of go back to Christina's question, from a credit recovery standpoint. You can handle it. We do handle it, we handle it in big buildings right now, at Apex, right, kids at Central use Apex, credit recovery is. It's small, right, and it has a big impact, but it's small. Mental health, right? If we, and again, as we talk about the org chart, right? If we need to really look at. Kind of mental health, and, and we do this now, I don't want to say that we don't, but if we need to look at what is tier one mental health. And then really, do we have enough robust system in tier two and tier three and how that's differentiated? That we could explore and say, do we want that in a? School, is that school, do we want that in one big high school, do we want that in our current model? I would say, um, that's probably where, again. That's probably where I see the growth is that mental health uh alignment and stratification up through needs of tier three. Again, credit recovery, you can handle. Some people might, I'm speaking for me, if I am a kid who wants to be the Olympic gymnast. I think there are different ways to skin that cat versus Central. Man, I go to skinning cats a lot, and I'm sorry, I should not say it. I think there's a different way to tackle that, and what I mean by that is. When you're the, when you're the Olympic gymnast, when you're the rowing person, when you're the ballet person. You've got such a wonky schedule that I think you're like, I'm just gonna think totally creatively, it doesn't even have to be in a central model, I might have tutors, or I might have. I might be taking school in California.
CCP.
Right, I mean, that, that's four percent, so that I kind of take off, I mean, if you're in that world, I think you're. You find other avenues. I do think we can do the credit recovery, if it is the mental health piece. I do think we probably have some exploration into that world of how we're finessing that. Because it goes back to, but it goes back to the conversation of counselor. School, you should say, it's in that line of, what is our counselor doing, what is our school site doing, what are our. Uh, wellness coordinators doing, what are our liaisons doing, and having that real delineation, and I, I feel. Not that we don't have it at Central, but we probably don't have as robust a model, ironically. If I'm being honest, as we probably do in some of our main campuses where the, where the staff is concentrated, because we only have one counselor at Central.
Yeah, Isaac has turned away.
Yes, I, so I want to. Drop back a little bit before I, 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 I maybe make a point and ask a question. Um, I'm glad that we're, we're, we're really talking about this, because. I've gotten a lot of questions from the community, a majority of the community thinks that. Central is basically for credit recovery. And all along until which of the meeting that we had here that you gave us the data, that break it down. I never.
I would just do the same thing.
I completed all this credit recovery, so, but now that we have all this, my question here is. Um, in, and we're discussing facility right now with all the plans that we have. Is, do we have? Uh. If we start that, that program? Do we have the capacity to? To bring back all of them into like both high schools to have both.
We do.
Instead of one, both.
We could take them back to their, their home buildings. Um. Meaning we have class hours, we have those kind of things, they'd have to have a schedule and we worked into the numbers, but yes, we could absorb that. Uh, but I think one of the questions I have for Tom's team is. When would be, as, as we kind of look through this, the mental health piece, the attendance piece, clearly we've got some continued work to do, but. When would we have to know? If it's a standalone building or if it's being integrated, like when, when is the, the deadline for that? November, okay. So we got some time, that's what I hear, good a- good answer there, Tom.
First time I've heard that you can self-select.
So what I mean is they made.
We have been told that.
They made a self-referral, no, they can't, they made a self-referral, now M T S S looks at it, the M T S S team looks at it. But there, so, and I was told originally that there was criteria, and there are criteria, but not crit. There's criteria to get you through the gate, but the first process is really self-referral, sometimes a teacher does it, sometimes a counselor, but most of the time it's the kid. For, for period. For period.
To get into Central.
And then the M T S S looks at criteria. Now, the question I have is, how is that weighted, right? So for example. You know, one of the things I look at is, um, if you've ever had online uh schooling before. You know, okay, I enter yes, what does that get me, if I enter no, what does that get me? Like, I, I'm trying to figure out how they balance those into that equation, like which one factors more, you know, um, and then I had a different conversation. But, um, somebody came at the end of the year and said, hey, we have this high school kid. They're gonna go to Central, and I said, what interventions have been tried with X kid? What do you mean? I said, well, before we just take a kid out of our high school and put them into Central, what interventions have we tried?
Right.
And the answer was none.
None.
And I said, no. I said, we have got to say this kid can't be successful in this environment. And we hadn't done that, now, I'm not, that's one off, I'm not saying that's true for every case. But I think there has to be that intervention model that we work through that says. This is not working for this kid, we've exhausted all our options, now we go to. This alternative situation that looks different and feels different versus kid wants to go, let's move.
I mean.
And this kid, th- this particular incident, there were attendance issues, there was, um. Um. Substance issues, there were things we could have done, there're just things that we needed to do to intervene to make sure that. Maybe if we just did a little intervention, you could be successful right here where you normally are. Uh, we just hadn't tried those, so we had to kind of slow it down a little bit.
Really quick, so I know we have to move on, what, when, when it's a, when it's a mental health issue? Is that a blanket? Like, for my mental health, I don't want to get up and go to school at eight in the morning, I don't want to go, so, like, do we have any kind of? Criteria for what that looks like?
Uh, I would say right now it's a blanket.
Okay.
And, and what I mean by that is, there are some kids who just say, I think you have a myriad. I don't like the stats, I feel, I feel a lot of anxiety with two thousand kids in a, in a place. I think it's, um, I, I don't still like the hours, do you know what I mean, I don't like the regimented structure of, you know, seven to three or eight to, eight to two. I think also you have some legit, like, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a physician, I'm seeing a doctor, it's documented, I need. I need a little space, and, and then I think of another question is too, and we, we don't really have this. Is there an opportunity specifically around mental health to maybe go to Central? Intervene really heavily and then go back to your home building, we do not see that. So right now, when you go to Central, that's kind of your path from then on. I, I'm, and I'm not saying that should be or not, but I do have a question of. If that's alternative, and then maybe you work through your mental health, or maybe you work through whatever. Could you go back, we just don't see that, that reciprocity, and I don't know if we want to, but that's a question I have too, because. You know, I think we've all seen kids who have success in getting some structures around mental health and some interventions and some tactics and strategies to help themselves. That they might go, I, I can go back to that, to the, to the larger building. So I think we have some opportunities for growth, um, in that, but I think one of the things versus the attendance piece to dig into further. Um, and then also to really maybe get like a flow chart of our mental health interventions and opportunities. To see what that looks like, because the beautiful thing is we're large and we do have lots of opportunities. The bad thing is we're large and we have a lot of opportunities and sometimes we don't put those on paper, so that we could see.
Okay, we have eight minutes, we can bump into a lot if people are available, but we still haven't talked about construction manager.
Right, and we can use the icebreaker if we need it, I put a little buffer in there.
Still eight minutes, including using.
Yeah, the icebreakers.
Levy training, are there any que- and some of, uh, Levy training on the twenty first with. With Gary, legal counsel's coming, is there anything specifically that you would like us to? Proactively plan for, burning question, I did talk to him the other day about signage, and I did talk to him about the community engagement piece. Um, so we got answers on that, but is there anything else other than his normal? And he's gonna cover just like he would with all boards of education, but I didn't. Uh, it is, it's during the board meeting.
It's our board meeting.
Yeah, it'll be about an hour, he said.
I think, yeah, just covering whatever you would cover with.
Okay. Um, F A Q, I know we've talked a little bit about that on, is there any other feedback for Betsy? As we go forward, anything else we need to tweak?
I have notes on mine, but if I, I'm happy to just go over those with Betsy as she prefers, in the interest of time.
I mean, if we have something, maybe we just reach out to Betsy.
And then construction manager at risk, I just want to go over that timeline with you as well, so proposals are due on June fifteenth. Okay, uh, walkthroughs, which are allowable for the process.
Wait, June fifteenth?
Were due, so we know how many we have. We, we got the, this is the R A P for proposals.
Oh, this is not. Okay.
But they're technically due to the, to the fifteenth, we have that window, we have two right now.
You said June fifteen.
June fifteen, it's the. We have two, sorry, I was thinking it was not the seventeen or the sixteen. Um, walkthroughs are allowable for the process through the twenty third. And those are on Tom and Craig's radar, that if somebody wants to do that, and we, we're sure that they'll probably take us up on that, they will do those. Um, I, again, gonna probably do those around the twenty third, submission process and interviews are gonna be on July twenty second. Those of us who are in those interviews, we already have those scheduled during the afternoon, I think from one to four, I think is our, is our schedule. And then we would make the announcement of our selection on July twenty eighth, so that is that timeline, we already have all of those things. Parse out and on, on the thing, and Craig will bring back to our meeting, um. One of our facilities meetings, just like we did previously, where we went to the woodwork, like we did with the architect piece. A little bit different, a little bit different components and criteria, but so that we can give some feedback on that before we use it.
A question on, if somebody is a construction manager at risk, then. Does that preclude them from being the actual person who does the construction? No, it does not, does it, Tom?
Well, they, you can allow for self-performance of certain tasks. Um, but generally, there's a, took a small percentage of the, the work.
Because it seems like you work with Turner a lot, so it seems like if they're in this proposal, that would seem like.
Well, but Turner i- in a sense is doing, I mean, they're, they're doing. As a C M R, they're doing the same activity as if they were contract with the district as a single agency. They're breaking it up into multiple big packages, they're managing that whole process. Um, they're gonna have the insurance, they're gonna have the bonding all under that, so essentially it does replace that. But some of them do self-perform certain activities, they are allowed to do that, rare, but. It, it does, you see that. So this replaces, we're not gonna be. Uh. Being in a traditional sense. Um, we're gonna be issuing uh with the C M R team, they're gonna give us, uh. Guarantee maximum price at a certain stage of the design process, generally that's halfway through CDs. At which time, uh, we know what that number is. And we'll be finishing up CDs, uh, together with them to, to make sure that we've incorporated all the scope. Uh, descriptions as, as appropriate, so they are your. Your manager, your contractor. Uh, in a, in that traditional.
Um, anything else, we're about, we got three minutes, anything else I know? Uh, ballot, I just had on there in case we had any questions from yesterday, it was more of a placeholder than anything, again. Slated to do on the thirtieth, the vote for the resolution, um, I know we talked about timing of that. Um, and Adam will be working with the auditor to get all of that paperwork that we need before the thirtieth to make that.
Question about C M R, that's thought of. So, we just talked about a resolution necessity for five hundred and six million dollars. Let's say that we get to the design phase, we get to the build phase and we're ready to go and we realize that now we've approved five hundred and six million, but. We're getting well beyond that, you know, price points have changed, stuff like that. Will there be some sort of a mechanism that's going to let us know? Exactly what we had to reduce cost on. So that when we're planning our P I, we can change those replacement cycles, because. Sometimes the lower cost to pull off the square footage.
Yeah.
Might result in a need to replace sooner than. Expected, will there be something that'll keep us really informed of that?
Yes, um, it's essentially.
Because I believe they're gonna hit that mark.
Yeah.
You know, they'll make sure, but.
It's an open book, uh, type process, so you'll be able to see where. Uh, where their overhead is, where their profit is, where their market ups are, uh, where all their stuffs are. All a transparent process, so you'll be able to see that and then adjust, um, and it's not to say, Adam, that you might. Sit down and say, hey, these projects, we might take out of this process, maybe we don't go through this. Through the, maybe we, the district might bid that independently if it's a. More of a maintenance, or if it doesn't, bid into the kind of, kind of complete nature of. Projects, so you'll have all that preliminary, uh. You'll have all those numbers, uh, already predetermined, um, so all their, their fees and everything, that will be justified. Overall. Our amounts.
So is that kind of an outrageous question then, like, this is new, new to me as well, like. I, I, where my brain's going on this is, let's say that you really got tight, you know, every. With, with the, um, tariffs and everything, it really, and inflation, it really, really gets tight, and we come down to a decision of like. We're going to replace travertine flooring, I mean, we've heard of that and it lasts forever. With epoxy. That's something that we need to make sure that we all know about, because in ten years, we're going to have to be replacing that. And so we won't be planning accordingly. Because in ten years, we're going to have to be replacing that. And so we won't be planning accordingly. Not that we would get to that. I mean, that would be like the doomsday, but I just want to make sure.
But you're not in your budget.
I want to make, yeah, I just want to make sure that. We're all looped in on certain things like that.
Right.
For the future plans.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see the, um, total cost of ownership calculated out. So when you open an mechanical system versus another mechanical system. You'll be able to say, okay, yeah, these are the initial benefits, these are the long-term benefits.
Okay, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, thank you.
Infiguration engagement plan on the agenda, is that?
That was what we talked about, uh, with the legal, legal interpretation of, um, we will do a combination.
Gotcha.
Of district push and then the committee will engage Adam and I, team members accordingly, who would attend.
All right, uh, one question, uh, Betsy, did we decide on a name for those, so when we put them on calendars, what did we?
Uh, we were, we were. Yes. Yeah, Blue Plinth and Beyond, that's what we would call the district meeting. So if you see those on your calendar, you're like, what in the world is that? Um, that is what that will be.
All right, so Adam, to go to, to do money?
Call recess. I've got a screensaver that says recess, if you'd like to turn the camera into sound.
See me eat my sandwich. All right.
Yeah. Letters, we'll see what happens.
So she read it.
like So 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 So
Like to bring us out of recess and back to our agenda. We are now moving to superintendent and treasurer evaluation training with Tony. Uh, who's currently helping us by human resources. Just how this came about is quite some time ago. Um, I spoke to Ashley that it it feels like on the board, it's always been a challenge for us to do effective and comprehensive evaluations of our superintendent and treasurer. And I think that that's something that we want to get better with as we continue to evolve in our evaluations of all employees. So we thought this would be a good opportunity for Tony to share his expertise from all the different districts he's worked with. Um, as to what might be best practices for the board to to use and um improve our product. Yeah. So that's how this evolved into being part of today, and I'm very excited to thank you.
And to piggyback before Tony starts, we're going to be doing talked about with administrator last week was system alignment, right? Everything from evaluation, the hiring processes to united substitute uh substitute teachers, student teachers. And so I think again, this conversation we're having in this forum is just the microcosm and the macrocosm, right? We're going to continue to calibrate and have these conversations about what is the importance of evaluation, grit, booking feedback, and what that looks like levels of organization.
Yep. All right. Well, great. Well, thanks for the invitation. Um, evaluation is tough. Um, and I don't know how much experience you have on either side of that, you know, being we all have some experience, of course, being the evaluating. I don't know how much experience you have in the evaluator. Um, so we sort of thought about this and kind of there's really kind of two sections that we'll talk about today. One of those is. I thought I'd just give you a little sense of what the research says. Um, some of the challenges with evaluation. Why I think it's it's really a difficult thing to get good at. And then in the end, we'll kind of get to the nuts and bolts, which is. You know, what are the mo- what's the model you're going to use? What does board policy say about timing and when we're supposed to do these things? And we'll get to those things at the end. So but we'd start with just a we'll look at that. We're going to talk about summative informative. Um. I did think it was important to look at some of uh some of the greatest hits of brain bias when it comes to evaluation. And trying to get it right and evidence. Um, did a little research on personal goals. Because I'm going to suggest to you that that be a part of your process. And then, like I said, we'll get into the nuts and bolts of things and we'll have some time for questions. So let's just start it this way. I want you to think about in your experience, either as the evaluator or the evaluator. What's the best or the worst experience you've ever had? And I'm going to give you about a minute to think about that. And then if you're comfortable sharing, we'll share those out and see if that provides any insights into what are perhaps are. What's the promise of doing this well? And then also what perhaps are the limits in evaluation? So I'll let you think about that for about 30 seconds or a minute. So uh, I'll get it started. I'll I'll just give you just, you know, one of my personal experience. Um. If you think it getting evaluations done well is a challenge in public schools, you ought to see it in a nonprofit, which is what I worked in for like 18 years. I mean, they were like non-existent for the most part. But as as Patel for Kids got bigger, we started to try to get better at those things. And so we had like formal systems. And so I had someone evaluate me. Uh, for probably the first time in like 10 or 12 years. And I won't get too far into the weeds, but what he said to me uh through that process. I'm not sure I really loved hearing it in that moment, but it has stuck with me. Uh, and it is something that is really, I think, driven how I interact with people for a long, you know, so it was super valuable in the moment. I'm not so sure. I loved it, uh, but it was really super valuable to me for the rest of my career. So that's just one example that I had. So anybody else care to share anything on either side of the table?
I'll share an opposite example.
Okay.
So I would say probably my worst evaluation experience is when you receive a stack of papers with information, but no feedback. So you've spent a lot of time preparing things for the evaluation, a lot of time where you have spent talking to the evaluator. I had spent talking to this person. And what they gave back to me was a glowing evaluation with no feedback. So I left feeling like, well, where do I go from here? How do I grow? What would you like? I mean, there's got to be some areas to, you know? And so that evaluation kind of just became irrelevant. And so that evaluation kind of just became irrelevant to me.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the the oftentimes the richness of the conversations is where the real value is, and we'll we'll talk about some of the informative here in a second. But anybody else want to share?
Yes, um, I'm currently writing evaluation for midterm evaluation for my team. And I have I have I have to also evaluate myself for my boss to. To use and also give me a feedback on that, so they like from what is the best and worst evaluation experience? Is when you don't document your achievements for the period. Then the time comes for you to maybe say is it touch your horn or blow your own horn for yourself, you miss those points. Uh, is the worst part of it all, because this is the time for you to show to showcase what I have done, I mean, rather than. So it could be good and could be bad, especially when you over. Maybe you have, uh. Touch your own horn and your boss come back and said, no, I disagree with that, so. It it has the good and the bad, uh, I mean, the worst, the best and worst part of it, which is from my experience.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, for me, a lot of it is with the three sixty feedback, I think, has been the most valuable, both. In evaluating others and having that as inputs. As well as for myself, because I think it provides the greatest growth opportunities, I think people too often are looking at a review. Simply as a validation of where they are versus I think the real value comes in the growth opportunity and we're all looking to get better. And if you can look at it as this, any even criticism as an opportunity for how might we improve? Is always the best way for any evaluation to be effective.
Uh, excuse me. For me, the worst, the worst evaluation experience was me being the evaluator to somebody else. Um, in between being a teacher, I was a, um, something like. I worked for the gap, I was a gap kids door manager and I had about fifteen people under me and my stock guy, who was a lovely young man. I started with the positive, these are the things I really am. Excited about you and what you do and bring to the team, and then when I got to the growth areas, it was just a complete shutdown, well, I disagree. Well, I disagree, every growth opportunity. He was very defensive and after a point, I, you know, I'm like, all right, well, sorry you disagree, this is, you know, I tried to. Get him on the train, but it was hard.
Yeah, that, yeah, cause I'll remind, uh, so we have a. Pretty regimented, uh, evaluation process that's like a year long process, but most people are just focusing on the endpoint of the, what's your final evaluation? Um, one year was a manager that was a trouble for me, um. My work plan changed, was constantly changing, and so I was like, well, I'm not committing this because this is, I just to make sure, because she would forget that she changed. What I was working on, and over the course of the year, I had fourteen different work plans. Um, so it was changing more often than once a month and like not just like, oh, like buckets of work. I kept it in a binder this big and I waited and I use it as like, like, I'm just. Pivoting constantly, I'm not, I'm not going in any direction, so that's not a fun process and, um, so it taught me continuity. Obviously, you need to have flexibility in there, but the buckets, the the main thrust of it needs to be, uh, have some continuity there.
Yeah, yeah, and you guys have touched on some of the, um. You know, the relationship with the person matters. Um, we all bring our own stuff to it, the context clearly matters. And and I think I always just encourage folks, uh, you know, the the summative, we'll get to the summative and the formative aspects of it matter. But I always encourage folks to just, just. Remember the limits, you know, of what you can and can't do in a formal evaluation process, so. I'll I'll make this super quick, um. The the bottom line with superintendent and, uh. Uh, evaluations is it appears that the research says it is worth doing there. There actually you can document that that, uh, the meta analysis, it was a really big sample size, so while. You know, an R of point two four doesn't knock your socks off, it was a massive sample, so it was statistically significant. Um, and the other part of it is the best study I could find is it is rarely done well. Uh, it's just superintendents are the big picture studies, they're they're usually pretty frustrated with it, it's not. It's sometimes not done, it's perfunctory, it is not aligned to the overall district goals, and these are all things we probably want to try to overcome. If we're going to do this well, and I've already given, I don't know if it, has anybody ever read this book? Uh, Marcus Bunkingham's, uh, Nine Lies About Work, um, it's a fantastic book, if you enjoy leadership books, it's just. Really interesting, so it's because it's very counter to what we typically think of, but one of the lies at work is we can reliably rate the performance of others. And I just think it points out how how challenging it is, and so really their recommendation is that evaluations. Should focus on observable behaviors, what are the things that I have personally observed? And my own personal experience, okay, because I think it's particularly challenging for boards. Um, boards are, um, they get a lot of feedback, as you are well aware. And it's a pretty constant stream and you're trying to sort of sift through all of that. And the objective outcomes, uh, that you want the district to achieve and how do you balance all that, so so hopefully as we get into this, you'll feel. Good about that, but it's just a caution, it is a very difficult thing to get right, okay, so I think. Probably. Um, if you gave me like one slide and like five minutes to talk to people. About evaluation, this is the slide I would use. What is the difference between a summative evaluation and a formative evaluation, and you guys have already touched on that, okay, summative evaluations are. Hey, Tony, you are a four on a five point scale, or you gotta see plus or whatever that, we're done here, this is your rating. And as you are well aware, those are often used in business for bonuses and raises and all that kind of stuff, right? Um, in education, they determine contract staffs, okay, that's a summative evaluation. Having said that, those are important, but what we're really after is the growth. What we're really after is the the formative process, which is. Uh, this kind of constant iteration of goal setting and how are we doing and checking in. Um, really, in the end, evaluation done well, the summative evaluation should never be a surprise. It should simply be the culmination of all the formative conversations that that have happened along the way. Here's the challenge. If you think about a single system. That has to serve both of those purpose purposes, both summative and formative. I'd like you to take one minute to think about. What's the conflict there? Let's just be real here, what is the real conflict between a single system, because I will tell you. I have friends in that research space who are purists. Who would say a single system cannot serve both those purposes. But we will, in superintendent treasure evaluations, they serve both the summative and the formative purposes, so I'll give you just a second to think about that. And then I'll ask you, which one do you lean toward? And what is your position on a single system serving both purposes? Thoughts?
Um, from my perspective, those tend to be, uh, there's a tension between the two. And so as I'm looking to explore and grow and how am I, uh, expanding my abilities and perform at a higher level, that. Can then tend to necessarily detract from my summative evaluation, because, oh, I'm not doing the best, I'm not perfect, right? And so as I'm looking at my summative experience, I can tend to sandbag that a little bit because I want to show up good, which then doesn't allow me to have that formative growth.
Yeah, hold that thought. I've got a couple of of slides on this, but that, that anybody else? But that that is, that is probably the fundamental tension that you're dealing with here.
But then I I believe that there's also a secondary tension to that being aboard, because each of us. From a formative evaluation of that ongoing feedback that has the potential for growth. Because we're not having those ongoing discussions specifically about the performance of those we're evaluating. It's just our individual feedback and what I may be feeling is completely different from what Christina is feeling or somebody else is. So then that can also, I feel like, lead to some confusion. On the part of our leadership, if we're not, if we don't even realize. We are individually giving different thoughts and guidance and feelings of how somebody's doing.
I think it's different when it's, both of those are different when you're talking about five people trying to evaluate.
Of course.
And get to the, to the root, as opposed to your supervisor sitting down with one person, one on one. And doing the evaluation that way, I think that's really, that's where it kind of gets confusing, because I might have a different. Benchmark in my head than Doug has in hip.
If you're familiar with the term inner rater reliability. It is this, the term inner rater reliability means, okay, in theory. If we all had perfect inner rater reliability, we would all see this the same way.
Yes.
I'll you, I'll use a classroom, exactly, you could put a, we could put all our principals in a room. We could put a clip of teaching up there, we could all watch it, and if we had perfect inner rater reliability, we would all say, oh, that's a. B plus. That is not the way it typically turns out.
Right.
For lots of reasons, um, you guys are getting different inputs from different people at different times. You're also different people. Which we will get into here in a second and how who I am. You know, tends to influence how I see these things and what I value and what evidence really means something to me as opposed to the person sitting next to me, okay?
And interestingly, to piggyback on something Tony said about inner related reliability. Normally, when you do that calibration practice with, uh, with principals or assistant principals, interestingly. When you're discussing formatively, they're more in line. Meaning you play the clip and you say, just what is like, you don't have a rubric in front of you, you don't have a scoring model, you just say. What is good teaching and learning, what are the strengths, what are the growth areas, they can have that very robust discussion. But when it gets to the summative is where, when they have to put it on paper, interestingly, when you have a rubric. That is supposed to be guiding that, that is when you see more delineation and breakdown of the calibration. So they can, formatively, they can talk you through it, but when they have to. Grade it, five, four, three, two, one, accomplished, skilled, what, that is when. And sometimes it's connotation of the words, sometimes it experiences, but that is where the, it tends to kind of fall apart, that interrelated reliability is in the actual summative, not the formative.
But when we get into, uh, I put some stuff together on personal goals. And the degree to which that should should play into this process, you guys, we're going to create here, um. This summative versus formative tension, that's real when it comes to goal setting, right? And and that probably is intuitive to everyone, right, if I set these insanely rigorous goals. Well, that increases the chances I may not, you know, get there, and is that going to be held against me as opposed to? I think somebody used the word sandbag, you set really easy goals, but okay, I accomplished that, but. I was going to do that anyway, and it didn't really drive us forward as a district. So that that's clearly, I think, a pretty natural tension for that. Um, this is, uh, I've used this slide probably two hundred times. This is actually the, uh, the human brain bias codex from our friends at Stanford, okay? They set out to try to put a, I know you can't read it, it's too small, I apologize for that, but here's all you really need to know about this. There are over a hundred and eighty documented types of human brain bias. What I say to individuals is, if you think you're immune from all of them, well, good for you. Because I'm not sure I've ever met anyone who is just immune, it's just the way the brain works. Okay, and it it does, it plays into evaluation, and so what I asked AI was, okay. Using the Stanford Codex, what would you consider to be the greatest hits? Of brain bias as we attempt to evaluate someone else, okay, and I I would have, if I'd have done it myself, I probably would have gotten. Three, one, no, I would have gotten four of these right, because I've taught it many times. Confirmation bias is just the notion that I've already made up my mind. I think Tony's a C plus, and so all of the evidence to the contrary, which might be Tony's an A or Tony's D minus. I just throw it all away and everything that confirms he's a C plus, there it is, there's my evidence, okay, that's confirmation bias. Um, halo effect is, um. Frankly, when people are charming and charismatic and have great people skills, it can at times overshadow the fact. They are not particularly competent at what they do. Okay, it is allowing one aspect of of a person or a personality trait to overshadow the actual performance. We are all subject to recency bias. I always talk with boards and I'm like, unfortunately, if you're a board member, whether we have a. Great culture or not, is probably a result of the last email you got. Okay, and 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 people are a whole lot more willing to harass the ones when they're not happy, you rarely get those ones that say. Hey, I just wanted to let you know you're doing a great job, okay, so that's recency bias. Uh, similarity bias, I always joke with this, when I always say, when I hire people, they're really high strung and they talk a lot. Because I'm really high strung and I don't come along, okay, that's just, that's affinity bias, we like people who are wired the way we're wired. And then anchoring bias is, uh. Who's the, have you ever, you ever had a boss that the the final decision was always determined by the first person to get to them? See?
Yeah.
Okay, that's called anchoring bias, all right, it's also, interestingly enough, okay? Uh, if you're ever advising your kids on which slot to take, if there's six interview slots, do you know which ones you want? First or last?
Yep.
Why? Because first is anchoring bias and that works to your advantage. And last is recency bias and that can work to your advantage. I think we would all agree, there should be no statistical correlation in which interview slot and who gets hired, but guess what? There is, okay, so those are all things, those are kind of the greatest hits of brain bias. Related to the task before you guys, and I thought it might be interesting, um, for you to take a minute. I've given you some examples of when you've seen this play out. In your, either your personal or professional life.
Did you interview first? For the slots?
Did I? I don't know. I don't think I was given a slot, I think I just was given the time.
If we got any, they want to share.
I think. It's not so much an evaluation, but even that halo effect in the hiring process. Um, you know, had some really robust conversations, just. You have to get, yes, there are people skills, particularly the job, right, pretending I'm a juggler, but you also have to listen to the content of their answers, and sometimes people are. So charming or so. Extramurdered that people just go, my gosh, I just want to work with you, and you're like. But what did they say, right, so there's that element of like not being distracted by the personality or the charisma or whatever you want to call it, and I, and we've had some really good conversations about. That as teams and interviewing of like, tell me what, tell me what you heard that they said. That got you to that, and that's been some really eyeing conversations to be like, oh. Well, just they're likable, which we want likable people, but you know, that that halo effect certainly can. You can just get sucked into kind of personas sometimes.
Or the consistency with their answers and their actions.
I think, um, in my current role, I mean, my, I'm using my my current job as an example. From what I see in my. In my team, I'm a boss. We're a team of, uh, seven senior managers reporting to him. Anchoring bias is what he uses the most. The people that, and and because of, we have different sites, we have. Uh, four sites, the people in his site have access to him every day. And they're closer to him, and those of us that are, I'm in Kentucky, I'm the only person. In, uh, Florida, we have three managers, then there are six, uh, in his site. Those are the people he uses for every decision he makes, so this makes a lot of sense to me when I see this, I'm like. Very interesting knowing if can, I can get this slide. It's gonna help me a lot, it's very good.
Yeah, but I, proxy, I, this, it would be a total distraction, it's not what I'm here for, but if you've ever, uh, have you, has anybody ever read, uh, if you're, if you love culture. Like work cultures, I love the book Culture Code, that's Daniel Coyle, who's a Cleveland guy wrote it. Boy, there's some fascinating stuff in there about proximity. And how powerful proximity is in terms of influence and those things and. You know, the 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 bottom line is if, you know, I've 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 known some privilege because I've gotten to just like study this stuff, right? You know, almost twenty years and you get to read a lot of stuff. But boy, I'll tell you what, it'll, it will. The more you read, the more you will slow down and start to question your own thinking. And am I sure I'm getting this right and are there things influencing my summative? You know, decisions that are, that I'm not sure that they're complete reality, right, and and they're just, uh. It's just the way we, it's just the way we're wired, you know, it's just their natural human tendencies.
And and I think about that similar.
And and I think about that similarity bias, when you're building a team, you have to be very careful of number four. You gravitate towards people who are like you, right? But you really need differentiation of thought, like. Stone against stone sharpens you, right? If if you just keep populating the same personality, that doesn't help us. And sometimes that's hard to, again, going back to the interview table or evaluation, it's hard for people to say that's a good thing, right? That difference in thought is what's good, we have to have those kind of disruptors in in it to make sure that we're we're growing and we're calibrating. But sometimes that can be a little off putting for people to hear or receive that information cuz you're like, where are you coming from? I just don't think like that, but I think that's really important in the team.
And one of the challenges for school districts that you typically see is, they're all schools people. By definition, we have, that's what we've known, I mean, we, most school leaders came up through the ranks and and it's it's, uh. There are other thoughts out there, there are things that that from other settings that work in schools and some things that don't, so, uh.
I also feel the difference between a finance professional typically in a school setting versus educators typically, a different mindset.
We're not training that way.
Yeah, yeah, I also think, coming from someone who evaluated teachers, the halo one is really hard because. The more charismatic they are, the harder it is to have a conversation about things they struggle with because they care so much.
Right.
I mean, it's so personal. Um, and they can also talk through so many of those things and so many teachers are that way, you know?
I I remember a principal saying once that like some of the teachers that are most requested, if you actually look at their data.
Doesn't get it?
Their data does not support that everyone is requesting this particular individual, which is.
Very much so, and I'm I'm certainly. You have to be careful when you talk about these things because we're not downplaying the value of their personal skills, okay? If you look at all the research around high potential employees, that is one of the three markets. Okay, they're super valuable and we're in a crazy people intensive business. You know, I always, when I say to boards, I say, I look, I don't have to look at your finances. You're probably spending somewhere between eighty and eighty-five percent of your money on people. It it's every district in America, it's a crazy people intensive thing that we do, so those are super valuable. It's not the only thing, okay? We do want, at the end of the day, we do want people to learn a lot.
It's interesting to look at these five and think back on evaluations and think like. This, this makes it conscious, right? Like, as I look through these, I have to think back like, gosh. Maybe if I had thought about this particular thing, like, am I actually having this bias, this is happening? How that would have changed? Previous evaluations in some way.
Yeah.
Even just a little bit, you know?
It it's, people don't often think about everything that's coming together when you're you're evaluating something, okay? You've done well, you're you're attempting to, and we'll get to that, you're evaluating against an objective standard. Okay, that's literally a part of what we do. Um, there should be a personal goals component, so the individuals really evaluating against themselves. Okay, and then there's all stuff we bring to the table as to whether or not we value that or not. Uh, which we'll get, we'll get to that slide here in a second, uh, because I think that's an important thing to kind of wrestle with as well as you do this. Ah, this is the next slide, okay? This is a really old slide, you're looking there like Tony won, why would you use a nineteen eighty-three grammar, okay? Oh, no, well, well, no, we're not, maybe, we will not ask everybody what they were doing in nineteen eighty-three. I was a freshman in college in eighty. But I, if I only get like ten minutes with people. And I, this is so much fun, reading big groups, and you only get ten minutes with them to say, okay, let's dive into who we are. Okay, this is, uh, this was, Robert Quinn actually was a University of Michigan professor who studied highly effective CEOs. So this is really business research, uh, crazy cool story, we actually applied this. Uh, when I was at the tell for kids, at one time I had access to the largest repository. Of teacher level value added gains in the country. I had all of Ohio, uh, I had Houston, Texas, and I had all of Tennessee. And we studied highly effective teachers. What what's, let's just get the best of the best of the best in the room and let's study them and see what they tell us and see if we can find any themes. Well, one of the researchers said, you know, this reminds me of this Quinn framework. Which is kind of crazy, I I always loved it because my parents were both teachers, so I love the idea. Of comparing great teachers to highly effective CEOs, I like the branding of that. And they said, you know, what really effective teachers are telling us is that they can move within these four quadrants. In a very fluid way and they're really good at deciding when to move where. So if you think about, there's a reason they call it the competing values framework, okay, so these are in competition with each other. So think of this as the people, people. I love people, relationships matter so much to me, I'm primarily a yellow person. This is the get it done quadrant, okay? Did you win? Did you lose? What were the results? Okay, blue people. These people, okay, innovation quadrant, just but these are the people that they're gonna constantly question, I don't really care how we are doing it. How might we do it? People that like to live in here, and these are the people who are, what's the system? What's the process? Can we systematize it? Okay, and you can see where those are probably in tension with each other at different times, right? And so I always thought it was really cool that when we studied these teachers, they started saying, well, I I I can shift in between these all the time. Right? The classroom example of that would be, this lesson isn't working. I gotta do something different, okay? Yes, everybody in here knows, kids learn more from teachers who love them. That research is clear and I don't use that word casually, okay? We know this is crazy important, but it can't just be all this, okay? That we we actually want people to learn something along the way, okay? And so, and by the way, if you've, uh, if you know anything about, if you really study value added gains, guess what? If you can't manage kids, you can't teach and they have great systems, okay? So I I always liked that model and but you've got to remember this. Any of them taken to an extreme becomes a nade. Okay, so if you have, if you are all blue. I always say those are the leaders who will get a lot of stuff done, but nobody wants to work for them. Oh, because there's never any, any interpersonal part of it, okay? The lower left, you get in the frozen bureaucracy, right? It's like, you gotta fill out the form to get the form, so you could get the form to submit the form, right? Like, why do we do it that way? Cuz that's the way we've always done it, right? You know, if you go to the upper right, um, you know, it just becomes, I call it irresponsible experimentation. You know, they never, you never get anything done because you're always on to the new idea. And of course, you know, we, you, you know, if it's just all about the the relationships, no, there's no expectation. So if I, if we had time to do the actual activity, you would figure out which one of those is your primary. And I I share it with you here because some people. Will, when we talk about superintendent and treasurer evaluation, you're like, well, wow, this is easy, what are the results? I don't even hear anything else, okay? Did we, are we winning or not? Okay, then you're probably a blue person, okay? I am primarily a blue person at heart, okay? Um, if if you really, uh, struggle. When there's conflict in the organization and you know, you like the, you like the smooth sailing and. You know, you probably lean a little heavier into the yellow quadrant, those things really, really matter to you and that's okay, we're all just a little different. Um, I'm a green guy as well, I love experimentation, I love, we've never done it before, what could be the new system? Uh, so I, as you, as you guys start to gather evidence and think about this, that might be something to think about, okay?
And I think, go going back to that color of what that. My job, Adam's job, executive team's job, whatever you call it, we need to grow leaders to be in all four. And depending on the team member that you're thinking about, they fall in different spots, right? Um, the other day, not someone in central office, but someone said to me. Um, I really don't care if anybody likes me, and I said, well, you should. I said, because people will go the mile with you if they like you. I said, it's kind of like the question, do you want your kids to like you or respect you when you ask a teacher and they'll go, oh, respect, you want both, right? You want both, right? So I think it's the the, our goal in the talent pool is to teach people to flex. I think of that Simon game, you know what I mean? That's what I think of, what I think of that, is how do you as a leader? Flex in all of those scenarios, and I think sometimes over time, particularly when we have our niches. We can get kind of heavy in a certain way, do you know what I mean? Like, some people, like the HR people are not always viewed as like the warm and fuzzy people, right? So I think it's that balance of how do you have a little bit of both? And some people pride themselves on not having certain colors, and I think that's a lift for us to do of, for principals and beyond of how do we. How do we have leaders that really can, can be successful in all of those quadrants while still having a propensity towards one or the other?
Or or if some area of that has been neglected, then you have to flex more in that without getting stuck there.
Correct, one hundred percent.
And and, you know, great teams, great teams would be in different colors here, uh, on this thing. And and you can, you can lean in and out of these, you know, and surround yourself with people. Who are particularly good at aspects of things that you're not good of, cuz they're they're just, they're naturally gonna think that way, it's just a. It's just a really simple one to explain.
Well, in the affinity, I mean, I think knowing where team members are, you know, there are exercises you can do to show what color you are, sometimes it's animals or whatever. Sometimes you go, oh, well, we don't really have any innovators, or, oh, we don't really have any people that. Kind of thrive in conflict, like you can recognize those holes and go out and deliberately hire that talent. Um, because people tend to hire people like themselves, you can get kind of out of whack in an organization or off off balance. Tony is, we're all different, the five of us, how does that play into how we evaluate?
It's going to, here's how it's gonna play into that, you're, the things, the evidence you will gather. Will probably be aligned, and if, uh, let's say Adam had a particular strength, he's a blue red guy. Okay, and he just crushes those things cuz it's naturally how he operates. Um, you might overlook that.
What's that? I think I'm more green and yellow.
Really, do you?
Yeah.
I have to say, I'm at the Supreme. That's probably, and and you're, so the things that that hit you, that if you're, you're, if you're a, um. If you're a really super strong yellow person, those interpersonal things, particularly if you got a deep relationship with somebody, they they just really are. And cuz they they just, they're they're just really super hard for you and, um. You know, I I kind of said, I'm a, I'm a bit of a blue person, I really struggle to, um. Improve systems until I know what are the outputs currently. I have to know what results are, I gotta get a nu, I gotta get, I was a math teacher, I gotta get numbers. I gotta know where are we, and then we'll talk about the rest of this stuff, so that would be hard for me, okay? And I would, I would struggle to evaluate someone who couldn't do exactly what Isaac was saying. Bring me your results and show me what you've gotten done this year, and we can talk about the rest of it, but I need to see, what did you produce? That would be, that would be harder for me.
It's interesting from an evaluation standpoint and thinking about, um, I think it was you, Isaac, that shared. Not, not really just putting yourself on display in an evaluation. If you're a red, yellow person, everything you're doing is internal, so how do you display that in a way that? You showed your growth and progress?
Right.
Um, I kind of find myself falling on the yellow red side. And so thinking about all the things that go on in my head and in my day to day work that don't necessarily. It's not like a concrete thing that you show, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's right.
And being aware of that and thinking about like, how can I? How can I add in some of that blue and green into that to be able to provide like? A vision of of that work.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's absolutely a personal level to it and, but I do think how you create the teams is also important too. I I really do think you can't, you can't have a team full of blue people. Everybody will be, they'll they'll all be dead in in three months, you know, because you're, those people are just such hard chargers as a general rule and. You know, so, but if you don't, if you don't have, if you don't have some red folks, I mean, you 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 can't replicate things.
Right.
And you're constantly turning around and saying, well, oh, how do we do that? I don't know, ask Bill, cuz Bill's the one who does it, and you have no system for it, does that make sense? Alright, I just think it's a fun way to to sort of, as you contemplate evaluation, to know. You'll lean into one of those quadrants more, one more than the other. Um, so this is, uh, I did a little homework for you on why would we want to set personal goals? I think it's, it's, by the way, it's in your board policy that you will do it collaboratively with the superintendent, I'll get to those deadlines here in a second. Um, just want you to know that, um, I took all the research references off this. But the research base is solidly behind you, that it would be a good thing to incorporate in the evaluation process. So you would want to measure against that objective standard based on the superintendent treasure models that you have. But you also would want to incorporate this in your process. Alright, so I think we already talked about this, so I think I'm gonna skip over it, we jumped ahead. Um, these are one of the ways to, uh, get around this. You guys referenced the balancing ambition and attainability and personal goals for the superintendent and treasurer. I want you to know, I'll send you guys this, you'll have this, you can go back and look at it if you want, but here are some ways that you probably could get by that. Uh, we've already talked about the regular check-ins, use of smart goals, you're probably familiar with those, um. And just some, some tips on that. Uh, and do they have Dr. Whiteley, do they, they have their packets, everything that's in their packet, okay? So this is, that's kind of, uh. It's kind of the first, the journey through the big picture around evaluation. And now we're getting ready to get into the, just the nuts and bolts and what was board policy saying, and and how do we do it here in Lakota? So I believe in your packets, you have the both of the state models.
That's these.
Okay, one is for the superintendent, and one is for the treasurer. Uh, I believe the superintendent one came from BASA, which is the Superintendent's Association and. Pretty sure I'm right on this, Adam, trip from Las Vegas?
Yeah.
Came from, okay, so those are, uh, you could elect as a board, if you wanted to, to have your own process in your model. I will tell you, most districts use these. Uh, they're pretty broadly used and well established, but that indeed would be a decision. Um, I thought, I believe this is page seven of the superintendent model, I pulled it out into a slide. Because I think it's like a one stop shop for you. Uh, so I would remember that you have that, because what it shows you, uh, page six, my bad. Um, what it shows you across the top are the five standards that are typical, and then this is the process. You guys have board policy language, I've got on the slide, it gives much more specific, gives specific dates for these processes. Okay, but just remember you do have that, and then Adam, what page is that in the treasurer?
Looks like four.
Okay, same thing.
Oh, probably seven, eight, seven or eight.
Okay, um, same thing here, you've got the standard across the top.
They could have used the same format, couldn't they?
Yeah.
And then you've got, you'll notice this was a, uh. This was a five step process and this was a four step process, in reality, they're the same. They just broke this one out and put this developer plans in and made it an extra separate, but it's really kind of the same process. The processes overall are, you jointly create the goals, board and superintendent. Um, you have a check-in, at least one, I would recommend several, but at minimum, you have one check-in. I think in board policy, it's February one or by February fifteenth, even reserves. And then the superintendent treasurer would come back to you with their evidence, they have achieved their goals. You guys would give some feedback, you're asking your questions, and then I think, I think, here we go, here's my slide. Uh, so you guys would determine the annual goals jointly with the superintendent treasurer, obviously separately. On or before August the fifteenth, you should meet with them. Again, I recommend multiple, but at least once on or before February the fifteenth. Um, they provide their self-assessment to you on or before June the fifteenth. Um, they provide their self-assessment to you on or before June the fifteenth. You provide feedback and then your formal evaluation per board policy is supposed to be given to them on or before August the fifteenth.
And this, so talking through this a little bit, okay, this is really not in line with some contractual contract. Meaning Adam, my contract about some things you need to do for like annuities and payments, which is why. This document that I created had everything kind of moved up a little bit. Because then it would be more in line with what the financial piece and implications have. So, and we can, this is board policy, but we can, we can adjust it. And in fact, um, Tony, you know, number one thing here is develop and revisit a standard best job description. And I'm sure he'll talk. Like our, our are pretty old, right? And, and this is what gets, it's interesting because we have board policy on not only like the evaluation of the superintendent treasurer. But we also have them on the responsibilities, which almost reads like a job description. And I remember actually when I was, um, in HR at Wyoming once, we were gonna, we were doing an audit of job descriptions. And I was going to change the treasurer. And she said, no, you're not. It is board policy. You are not touching my job description. And so we had to have a conversation of. And this is a question I think we should have as we look at policies. Is the policy truly the job description? Or is it just kind of like overarching buckets and themes? And then there is a job description that complements that. That's where we landed in my previous organization of, that's not robust enough. Those are like, policies are just really overarching and need a little bit more detail. So we had the policies that guided those buckets, but then we still had what we would call true job descriptions that complement that. Artur, just, what's the last date on those, Tony?
Uh, superintendent's twenty twenty and treasurer's twenty fifteen.
So we probably, so just knowing that, you know, as we look at this, I think that is an opportunity to start with step one. Get that right. Talk about our timeline. Again, do we want it to mirror more this or what in actual policy align those? And then once we get that job description, we can also crosswalk that with the existing policy to see if there are any. You know, big buckets. But the current policy puts you on a, I mean, that definitely doesn't work for that formal evaluation one by August fifteenth. But even if you move that one up, you're on a pretty tight timeline, which is why we kind of talked about that, that difference.
And you just referenced that document instead of re-freening two separate things that could potentially be a common.
Correct. And I mean, literally you can, I mean. We could take this and almost, like I said, I'm sure Norm would want to de-word it a little bit. Cause I'm, you know, I have to be wordy as an English teacher, but I mean, he could literally make it that if we wanted to. Or you could just put AGs, CAGs. And it can be the exact, the exact document. So I think, I think our first step, again, this, part of this is where we are now. Part of this is where we want to be. I think one is getting the updated job description and then two, really aligning policies or IGs and.
Prioritize those jobs. Yeah.
And finishing the loop that, again, we did that initial goal setting. We did that check-in. Again, at how robust is questionable, but we need to finish the loop for this year while we improve the process.
You know, we, we've talked about a healthy cadence of like retreats, right? If we want to have, I mean, when I think of a midpoint, I think of like December or January. It's the natural half of the year, right? If we want to build in a board retreat and part of that is. Just, you know, formative feedback.
Yep.
Or whatever it may be. We can do that too, so that there is a, almost just a natural check-in in that process. So you don't have to go, oh, I forgot that. Oh, alright, I remembered that. We can just fill that in. Is that, is that something, Tony, that? When you do their goals evaluations, is that a executive session? Or is that a public? I always thought it was executive session. I've only ever seen it. And when I say that, meaning, um, and.
You mean review? Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be an executive session, but the document goes personal file. It is a public record.
And then even, I mean, I've seen it in two systems. I mean, I've seen it where. Like literally executive sessions, I step out, you do Adams, Adam steps out. And I've seen it where cultures are different, where both parties sit in and kind of listen. Cause you know, it's more of a unit and they have that, that common goal, but I've seen it.
Previous district, I actually had mine outside of the board meeting. Uh, it was board president came into the office and went over it and. It was a summation of what the board had done. So, I mean, there's many ways you can do that, but it wasn't even in the meeting.
I think one of the big things to think about, one of the, yeah, very interesting consulting question to ask when you roll into a school district. Say, where are the documents that are driving everybody's work? The one you don't want is the blank stares. Okay, but it can be, it's all over the place. There are some places where the board goals. That's what everybody's working and aligning to. There are places where it's the superintendent's goals. That's what everybody's working, a, a strategic plan that we've had in place. You know, we're in year three. That's the good answer is we're in year three of this plan and here you go. And here's dog ear and highlighted. Cause it means we're actually being intentional about what we're doing. I don't really have a, any, other than it being aligned and having it. Um, that, that's what I think is important. Because then I think it makes, it doesn't make no sense at all to be doing, it's like, why are we doing this? We said we were gonna do this. Right? That's about what I had.
Timeline, but supportive timeline. Do you, with this document that you created? And I, and I know we've kind of lived and not lived this timeline. Are we comfortable with this timeline? Like, do we, do we feel this timeline is more, is it too robust? Is it too close? Is it too tight? Or again, this one has problems just in logistics, like execution or financial implications. But do we like kind of this timeline? And again, we can build in a midpoint. You know, if you want the midpoint, we can, we can even put a midpoint like right here. We have that, you should have, I think. You know, we can build in a, you know, number two, we could put board retreat in here, December, January.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I haven't spent that much time with this. I do feel like, as I'm looking at this for this year. We're clearly already behind. Um, so I think we need to close that out, but yes, I think for building over next year. Um, I think, well, and A, for closing out this year, it means to me, even though we've got crazy meetings coming up. We've got to walk and chew gum and do both, do all these simultaneously.
Because we need to do both. We need to close out this year and start next year. Well, and this, you know. Yearly goals, when I say August, what I mean by that is those are done. Doesn't mean that that's when the conversation necessarily starts. I mean, we've already started talking about with, with building administrators, even building goals, the district goals. And so I think thi- this would be when they're kind of like finalized, we work, we've got collaboration, all of that. So I don't want you to think that that's starting the conversation, because that would be odd to start the year without the goals. Um, and then when you have a strategic plan, to Tony's point. That, that's a game changer, right? Our strategic, not that we don't have a strategic plan. It's just a little, it's a little, it's a little outdated. We've been living it for a while. So I think even when we give that new strategic plan in the fall going into the spring. That will be a really good opportunity for us to kind of revisit this as well, maybe in that, that mid-year. To talk about if and how that changes anything for us going forward to have that new, that new strategic plan.
Yeah, and, and I also like with this that we adhere to it in the, um. In our organizational meeting. So we make sure that we're more intentional at the organizational meeting of when, which meeting. So then if we do make changes to meeting schedules, that again, things come up. We won't overlook any of this work that needs to be done.
I do think there needs to be this, this check-in step. Yeah, and number two, that's, I love that too. Like I made you. As we don't.
One of the things I call out is just, um, on this timeline, it separates it from a timing, it's out of sync with, um. Report card data. And so not that we would be evaluating solely on that, but we'll need to think through as we design the goals and the.
That is interesting. I mean, yeah, you won't have that data back until.
Time.
So we'll need to figure out what we want to focus on, but also then really, um. Uh, correlate that with the fact that they could be out of sync, right? So we could be saying, hey, these criteria. Performing really well, and then we get to report card data, then that is in contrast with, right? And so we just need to think through that evaluation process of like, how are we, how we would tackle that and approach that.
Would we be able to have access to preliminary data though, prior to these timelines and themes?
You can. It is very. Um, we might have to concentrate on how to read that, because it's by kid. I mean, yes, you can get some building overviews. But you're not, and you don't have the value add. Do you mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a really easy read. I mean, we can pull it out and give it to you for sure, for sure. Um, but I mean, Chris, Christina, I know you've looked at it a ton before, but. Um, we might have to just have some key points to kind of takeaways for you to decipher, but we can get that in a clear spot.
And the value added adds a lot too, too. So we don't get that until October or fall.
I mean, I hate to do it without the value add piece.
Again, that's almost then becomes in arrears.
Well, that, that's exactly what it is. It's just, I mean, the report card data is in the, in the arrears, right? So it's kind of, and so if you're the blue person, that's hard when you're kind of saying, I want to see where the river. Met the road and you're like, wait a minute, I don't have that. Do you know what I mean?
Right.
And, and it makes me think of some of the sessions I've sat in, like capital conference where, where. There's probably an opportunity for us to, as we design our strategic plan, what are the things that we're looking at on an ongoing basis, on a more continual? As evaluating how we're performing beyond the state.
Right, sure.
And I think right now we're a little reliant on the state report card. That lets us talk about different dimensionality of like, especially when we're talking about personal goals and growth of where we want the district to be. But also it's stuff that would have more immediate immediacy from a resource standpoint.
So it's one, one other document that I created for you in your packet. If you want to grab it real quick. We'll just sort of scan through it. I was just trying, I called it a quick start guide. But I just thought of something you can keep handy as you're starting this whole process. Um. I should probably say at this point, I'm not an attorney, nor did I stay at all. Uh, but I did ask. I, I asked AI to give me the ten most important points from O R C around superintendent evaluation and treasurer evaluation. So you'll, you've got those, okay? Uh, there was nothing magical about ten, but that's what it gave me. Um, and now this is, uh, when you guys are now starting to think about evidence and what would we consider? Um, I really did like the way this one turned out. There's ten, ten good quest, objective. Good questions about garnering objective evidence, uh, that you could use in the evaluation process. And I thought there were some really good ones in there. Um, so you can take, I'm not gonna read through those, but I think they would be worth you looking at. And then in the end, I, I asked it to give me, uh, just so you had some examples of evidence at the end. It gave you, I think it gave you five for superintendent, uh, and five for treasurer. Just, these are things that you, they're just examples of actual data that you could consider embedding in an evaluation model. With superintendent or treasurer. And I don't think any of these would be a big shock to Adam. You know, there are things like auto, clean auto reports. I know we've had fifteen, they name auto reports. Uh, accuracy and forecasting, all that kind of stuff, so.
Something that we might want to consider, again, doesn't have to be right now, but long-term, is there also is the reality of, um. There is a different timeline or schedule when a contract is expiring. And you would maybe want to go a different direction. I hope that's not the case. I'm just saying for both of those. But I say that because we, if you would like that document, I do think that would be important to have. Just as an organization, I'm, I'm speaking organizationally. If you were going to cut bait ever with an, with a superintendent or a treasurer. Um, there are timelines by O R C, sixty days, a hundred and twenty days, those kind of things that have to be met. And so while we make, when we adjust this timeline, you, and we can do it one of two ways, okay? You can just have, I want reality, I want to be clean always. I don't want to worry about if it's in the final year of a contract and you build it that way. Which is how OTEZ and OPEZ in theory is built with some small tweaks internally. Or you can say, I want the first, I want when the contract's rolling. And then I want the final year when I have to make the decision of what that timeline looks like. Because you can get enough. If, if you miss those timelines in that final year, you have no options.
So could that be built into that midpoint assessment? That that is the time when you would make the decision whether you're going down now?
Of O R C, so the mid-year would give you about the hundred and twenty days. But then there are certain things, and this is where HR becomes very important. You know, for, for, for the board team is that you have the hundred and twenty days and then you have a sixty days of notice. And then there's a five day and a ten day notice of when the final evaluation has to come before board action. There are a lot of hoops.
But I'm, but it's so. Why wouldn't the midpoint evaluation be the point that you could start down that path and make the decision if you're starting down that path?
You could, you could, but I'm just saying from that, the timeline really starts ticking. You're sixty and then the ten. But again, that's not on this. So if you want to build, if you want to build the, the plane to fly no matter what. That you were just clean no matter what, we probably want to get a legal overview to make sure our timelines are met. To make sure that's on here. Or you're gonna have to have a separate document almost. And I can make that with legal. Uh, and we had one in Wyoming for principals. But if you were in the final year and you were going to make a different decision, your timeline was much tighter. And, and we had really clear delay. So we can make a separate or we can combine into one.
My thought would be it's easy, more easily overlooked if it's separate than to. If you built it into that mid-year of if you're gonna start down that road, then you would have it documented at that stage. And then you could make sure you kind of flip to, it's almost like the option A or option B, depending.
And we can exactly build it like that, almost like a flow chart. Things are flowing well, da-da-da-da-da. If things are flowing bad, just remember you have these two other. Deadlines or three other deadlines that you have to meet. Cause it gets down to five days before board action, ten days.
Maybe it doesn't give us enough time then. Because if you do mid-year January, four months is a hundred and twenty days.
It depends on when you have to back map it. That's what I'm saying. We need to back map these accordingly. And it also depends on, remember administrators not May. An administrator's contract has to be decided by, uh, July first.
Right, so. May each of the four months, if you need another thirty days.
But you still got June in there.
You still what?
You still have June. You have to, you have to take board action on the contract by July first. And that's where the organ, they don't mean any. For how to be separate, because you gotta have enough time.
Yeah. So my, my, my concern then is then we're potentially impacting the, the intent of this on an ongoing basis, which is. How are we doing this year? Cause we backed it up so much.
Yeah, I, I would think it needs to be.
Given this timeline of the contracts, it might make sense to have like, starting that second to last year, there's a process for this because. Ideally, it's not happening in those first six months for your final year of your contract of us, us making the decision.
Both people in our seats, you have eighteen months before your contract. That's when you can start your renewal. I'm assuming at the eighteenth month mark, somebody would look at one of us and say.
Yeah.
You know, you really know before the year, but I, I think at that eighteenth month mark, you, that's when you kind of get a feel of how's this going.
Uh, for me, I think a separate document. I think it confuses it if you put it in here, but.
Probably just give us a heads up.
Well, when I say separate, it could just be a down here, final year of the event, you know, final year of a contract. Then we mark some dates out. Like it doesn't have to be separate like lives over here. It can live within one big, big piece, okay? I'll just make sure we get those dates because. There, there's just a lot of room for error in those moments. Because that organizational meeting, it, it's kind of like, um, and Tony and I lived this with the retire, rehire, right? You gotta know the organizational meeting and you gotta count backward, right? And so that organizational meeting becomes really, really important. Like when we had the May meeting, if that had been our last meeting and it would have been early in the month, holy jeez, it would have gotten super, super tight. So I'll build that, we'll kind of build that in with legal to overlay the final year in this document, but, but have a separate section.
I think you have retire, rehire.
That's on the thirtieth.
But for, uh, Eric too?
They both, oh yes, people will get to come speak for both. You'll, you'll read the thing that says Eric and Scott.
Okay.
We did both of those and then, uh, we'll have the opportunity on the thirtieth to talk. Or to listen, we don't talk.
We just listen.
I get to wear, I get to wear your, your wig, right?
Favorite thing. Talking, yes.
Yeah.
The thing, the thing that should be all about. But in the meeting, I mean. But I just checked our time.
Thank you so much. That's, that's.
Yeah, this was very helpful. And if we, are you, did you say you're telling us? And then so, again, to close out this year, from the timeline we're looking at. I do think that if you all can help start providing the evidence to us. I mean. So, I mean, our next meeting is the thirtieth. That seems you're gone, so that, or up until then, so that seems hard to achieve by then.
That seems you're gone, so that or up until then, so that seems hard to achieve by then, so. Of July. May, may be provided to us when you have it available and we'll review it on the twenty first. So maybe if you can get it to us by.
Prior to fourteenth, is that?
And so then we have a week to review, so we can come.
And that's for next year. That's for this year.
Closing out this year and then in August, I did, this is really going.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
No, August is when we'll do the yearly goals for twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah, to the five twenties.
But it won't, I thought that was the str-, that, I thought you said that wasn't the start of the process.
No, we we will start talking about August and July, but we'll bring them to you for feedback in August. And I'll make a note on that so that we, and uh, well, let me ask you, do you want to do that in the meeting? Do you want to do that in a planning session? Last time we did that in a planning session, now I don't.
It's fine to do that in a planning session.
Right, so I mean, yeah. And that's that executive session.
And then the policy committee should take a look at the policies and the.
I'll clean up this, we'll get the job descriptions, we'll adjust its timeline and then we'll update all the policies together. One question I do have, because I have not experienced this, but I ran it in my previous life and I just want us to be aligned. Is there, don't laugh at me when I ask this question. Is there a uh, page limit you would like for our submissions to you?
Oh, good God.
And I have not.
I have a patient who have a ratio, so knowing that he's got about a half page, then I think at least ten times.
He says seriously, because I think people like it different ways, guys. I I plan to give you my information. By standard, like I give it to you by standard and I will.
Look at this.
Write in bullets as much as my heart can take it. And the reason I ask, seriously, this happened in my previous life, the superintendent wrote, who who will remain nameless. Wrote like fifteen pages of narrative and the treasurer wrote three. And she said, you have got to reduce that. And he said, no, I'm not. I like all fifteen pages. She said, you are not turning empty fifteen pages. She goes, we have a three-page page limit, get it down. So I just asked that. And I just, you know, I just think, you know, capacity of insight, that's too much.
Maybe we just say this, provide us with the information that we need that is relevant.
But I will do mine by, would you prefer them by standard?
And I, I would prefer them to be the same. Like the same form.
Yes, okay. And yeah, we can do that.
And then again, from past practice in different districts. What I have seen is typically there is just a short summary that is written that comes out of that discussion. That is what actually goes in the file after that robust discussion that happens in executive session. So is that then we will just do that short summary that becomes the. The living document of that evaluation typically. Uh, again, half a page or not.
Because the document itself is public record. So I'll make your summary of it is, it can be short, sweet and to the point.
And I would just remind us, because it's happened twice in this region, that the newspaper has asked. Uh, so not that anybody would ever write any, just, you know. Right, be cognizant that it could be anything, anything that we write can be on the front page of the paper, right?
And taken out of context in an individual sentence. You know that there was great care taken in that, because you don't want those. Constructive opportunities to then be taken out of context.
And last time they published those in the paper, it wasn't so much the comments, it was just who had them done and like overall ratings. But I just give you that caveat, just like we do with principals of like, remember these are public records and if someone asks for them, they're allowed to read them.
With that being said, we should probably talk about how we're going to provide the feedback to the person who's writing the paragraph or. Creating the culminating document. And because if we email it to you, then that becomes public record right along with it, correct?
So in this, in this timeline, it's almost a, again, how it was kind of drafted is that we would give the self evaluations. To uh, Kelly or Julie. They would kind of then lead that conversation with you. Gather your all input and then they would kind of take that back to the document. So there's almost like, again, we're, we are where we are right now, but going forward. There's almost another layer of conversation before Adam and I, you all would have.
So if you're providing that by the fourteenth, then we need to meet sometime before the twenty first in person to discuss, correct?
We can't list a meeting.
I I actually think we would just wait and have that discussion there on the twenty first. And then depending upon how that goes, we can co-create that statement at that time. Or I can create something and then at our following meeting, we can. Wordsmith it if somebody feels like I did not capture the essence of that meeting. Um, we'll revise it at our next meeting for it to become the formal document. So I think it's best, in my opinion, to be done in the meeting to avoid any. Ability to look like we are not following the rules. Um, and I am, again, I've been on both sides of how that's done. I am more comfortable co-creating it um, as a team so that I am. To, I typically have been the board president, I guess I'm assuming I would do that, but that it truly does capture everybody's thoughts and feelings.
Instead of a one person.
Instead of, yeah. I was just gonna say, then we can all have our balanced biases, so then we keep us honest. Right, so.
So I made a note to myself on the twenty first, we will have an executive session. Or that, I just made a note of that. And we can put that on kind of like our board calendar that we're making so that we can, you know, I mean, once we get our timeline, we can put that in the right spots. When we talk organizational meetings, we always have that.
And a- again, this is trying to continually improve our process. I think this is like. Step one of this whole evaluation process, but I would love us to get to the point at that organizational meeting where we've become so intentional that. You know, January is special ed month and February is gifted month and, you know, and whatever the case might be. We start to have like annually, this is going to be the report card month, this is the five-year forecast month. So that again, we're, we know going into the year what we're targeting, obviously. Depending on what color we are, we may or may not want to pivot off of that.
Done that in the past, we've just never.
Yeah, so I would like to get more intentional back to that. I actually have that on my desk at home. Next time, we have a one-on-one to say, this is what we. Framed out at one point and never followed.
There's there are timings that do and don't produce results. There's timings that do feel dog and pony, not.
I think we realize that sometimes you have to shift. We do it in January and something comes up in March, but.
But I also think, you know, you have the topics you want to cover, and we have some logistical things, like we talked about with retire, rehire, right? We we kind of got lucky, because we had meetings that kind of met the timeline. But uh, when we make that organizational meeting, if that is a practice we're going to continue, we do, we do need to be deliberate about how much time we put in between those. Or we'd have to call special meetings and really. That could get clunky, right? So I think there are some just logistical things and topical things that we can put in there and almost put red, like you can't move this. Tied to something, right? And as we go through contract language, um. You know, we don't necessarily have it, but I've I've experienced contract language that says you have to know by the third week of April, right? And so you're like, oh God, I gotta have a board meeting then before the third week of April or something like that. So I think there are even some contractual things as we go in negotiations that will impact particularly that timeline potentially. All right.
This was very helpful. Very much appreciate this and hopefully you will have set the stage for us to now have this be a best practice instead of a. Looming through.
Thank you for stepping in and helping us. Transition. It's been very helpful to have somebody with your experience. Getting us through the, getting us through.
The ship.
The ship, keeping that ship afloat a lot.
We have a bit of time, so we're gonna um, flip. Conversations now before um, I'm ready to get thin, talk about our dog. So if you will pull out, uh, it should be on the left-hand side of your uh, folder, it's the one with the yellow highlight. This is our board uh, operating norms that we kind of used in the past, uh, with some additions and some updates. So if you remember those last time, um, we talked about this, uh, we had talked about, thank you, that was. Um, we had talked about uh, the word board versus governance team. Um, the things that we liked and we and didn't like. So one of the things, just the reason governance team is highlighted, I went through. And I changed the wording from board of education to governance team where applicable. Sometimes it's not about Adam and I, you know, it's about board members. And then the highlighted part in the first section is the definition of who that governance team is. So to match the definition, do you know what I mean? Like governance team is a new term for us, so this is how we are, you know, defining it. Um. Do you like that definition?
Yes.
Yeah, it's fine.
So then, the next change that I did was on question on meeting agendas. Which is on on this third page, next highlighted portion. Um, we struck out that first line, because we thought it was basically redundant, so I showed you that strike there, I haven't removed it yet. Um, and then um, on B, um, uh. We did some clarifying in there. We talked about clarifying questions. We were, we were afraid that it didn't suggest that. You could ask them in the moment or why you could, so we clear, I clarified that language a little bit. So if you can look at particularly A and B. And how those are worded and make sure we're comfortable with that flow. B underwent the most change, A was just the strike three.
I feel like there needs to be some recognition that there are going to be times that a question, like I may have reviewed everything ahead of time. And not thought of a question, but then as it's been presented or because one of my peers asked a question, I then have a secondary question. I I don't know how to.
You worry that it's limiting?
Yeah, like I don't want to ever feel like, and I mean, and again, I will admit that I've reviewed something. Like I happen to not open everything until Monday morning because of life. And then I'm like, oh crap, I'm left in the twenty-four hours. Um, I still want to be able to ask that question. I mean, again. And but yeah, so I just want to make sure that we.
Do you mean, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've never felt strange when that's happened, as you guys have all realized. Like I actually prefer when we go a little more freestyle. Gets me off those slides where I feel a little restricted.
We could put in parentheses, this does not limit natural conversation.
Only, I mean, we should always avoid that that chat question. Because let me add this one, I did to you, because that's not professional. But if it is like clarifying question, I say, uh, you may not give me the answer now, but it just came to me. I thought, which, I need this, but. If you can decide and give me the answer next time.
And I've always been, and that's why I wanted to add this to the the norm, like. I don't believe that it shouldn't feel normal if you did have a question that you thought of at the moment, if we didn't have the exact answer at the moment. It shouldn't feel unusual to say. Yeah, you know, that's what, I was always very trained on that from from the very beginning of. Don't just make something up. You know, if you don't know, it's okay to say, I don't know, so.
So maybe it was clarify that normal conversation, um. Or dialogue during the meeting and then maybe even add, um, recognizing answers may require further research.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know, because that's, I feel like. And I think that there have been previous board members who, right or wrong, have the reputation of trying to create gotcha moments and they don't think any of us.
That's, that's definitely, it's not, it's not really good. The gotcha women, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, it's okay to, it's okay to not have all the answers.
So yeah, I just put parentheses there, they should not limit natural conversation or dialogue during a meeting, but also recognize answers uh, may require. Additional research.
Do we have something here? A- again, uh, you know, so that if there is a topic that board members. Would like at a meeting, if they anticipate that they have a topic that that it be brought up. Or that it be. Uh, provided to the governance team prior to the meeting, so that.
It's not the governance team.
Can you say that again? Can you say that again, Julie?
That if a board member who is not involved in agenda, so for right now. You know, these three have something they want in agenda, we don't know about it, so we do the agenda meeting and don't add it. And then it just comes up at the beginning of the meeting. I think that's hard for everybody to plan for. So I don't know if in the board. Norm somewhere, we capture to have all board members provide. Any topics for board meetings prior to the Wednesday.
I thought we talked about that when we did this.
Agenda development.
Sorry, it is, it's board meeting, agenda meeting, agenda development is there, thank you.
And I'm not, I mean, I can always speak for my, you know, full time here. I've not experienced that, you know what I mean? For saying, hey, can we add this? I think there are conversations where we say, hey, can you put this on and follow up with this after you do some research, not necessarily an agenda item, but.
Okay.
Those follow-ups a lot of times, I believe, could lead to. A, you know, we followed up in an email or something shortly thereafter, but then at the following meeting. Bring it up again if it's something that it's for the good of the public to hear.
Um, the next sections are on the back and these are the uh, new sections. These are brand new sections that we talked about. And so this, these will probably be helpful for us to just review kind of one by one, okay? So um, just to give you some background from the last conversation, social media, okay? Um, we talked about a couple of things. We talked about, yes, we want it to be what it shouldn't do. But we also talked about, we wanted it to be what it should do. Like if you were going to do that. You know, we should highlight the positives and what are the benefits if you chose to go down that path. So it was a balance of don't be so negative. But also so illuminating some of the things that if you wanted to do that stance, you could, if not. The other piece, um, from legality standpoint, we wanted to make sure we're good. So there are some things in here. That have some legal interpretations or flavor, so let's just kind of go through these with social media, okay? The first one is that board members preserve an option. To have social media accounts, pages and groups representing board meetings, meaning you don't have to. You preserve the option to have it. It's completely optional. Then it's uh, again positively, social media accounts should positively engage constituents, post news about the school district, share information, inspire, motivate and represent the governance team. Just a little caveat to that, should refrain from responding to negative, offensive and disrespectful comments on social media. So we're about the positivity. We're just going to leave the negative people to their negative selves and not get in that conversation. Um, be positive and mindful of how actions on social media reflect the entire governance team. And as such, the expectation is to use discretion and professionalism when engaging on social media platforms. Um, not that I think any of us would do that, but you know, um, sometimes as such, the. Uh, I've seen different districts have some problems with that. Social media should be used in a manner that supports our mission and reflects the respect and responsibility of board service. Um, and then some caveats under that would be personal opinions expressed online should be clearly identified as such, must not compromise the integrity, unity or public trust of the board. We can change governance team if you want it there. And be mindful, this one was just for a legal. Just be mindful of posting about politics on their board representative's social media page. They thought we should just spell that out. Didn't have that originally and they were like, you might just want to have that in the in the climate. And then rely on the district's social media sites to relay critical information during a crisis. Always allow the district to send out updates first before reposting. And then send any social media information that may further an awareness of community concerns or controversy to the superintendent and board president. Any, any, let's stop right there. Is there anything missing? You don't like something? You're like, I think we got a hole. But I tried to turn it, and this was Christina's comment, can you make it more of a positive than a negative? So I tried to focus on like what it can do if you choose to versus what it shouldn't do. Although there are some instances of students in there that we just put from a legal perspective. Should there be? I don't want to get too far in the weeds and like I said, too negative. Should there be something in here, even though it's somewhere? Somewhere in our information, the. Carrying the banner, the, if we go to, if there's some. We're going to pick option A as our building. We're going to build this school on this site. And four of us think that's a great idea and one of us thinks that idea sucks, they want it built someplace else. Is there something that says, we've made the decision as a board, so. Person A shouldn't be on their social media saying, I can't believe they picked this site, it's the worst site ever.
I have concerns for that.
Why? Because once we make a decision as a board, regardless of what you thought, if the majority says we're doing this, you should back it.
So, but if if, as this is worded out, right, that that you're not speaking for the board and that you're talking about your individual positions. I have issues of saying that because the vote went a certain way, then people have to speak a certain way about things. I understand that like, as a board, we're moving forward.
So we, we have a line right here. It says, it says that we lead as a united governance team aligned for respectful debate. Urgent decisions being made each in their respective roles and act as a policy. Argue to decisions being made each in their respective roles and act as a policymaking boards. I mean, that's kinda what you're alluding to.
Where, where is that?
It's in um, roles and responsibilities. I'm trying to think, I'm just trying to allude to the language that, that Kelly was talking about. I think there's another one too, I gotta find it. Maybe communication, let me see.
I thought we had it somewhere, but maybe not.
We do.
Yeah, it sounds like it's E under roles and responsibilities.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean.
The social media piece is specific to what you're saying on social media.
You're referring to a specific to social media, right?
Yes, yes. And so what I'm saying is like, it is different to say, okay, and I'll make this up, uh. Or you decided to close schools and I said no, or something like that, right? It is different to say now I have a responsibility to go talk how I believe that school should be closed on my, on social media when. What we're shaping up on social media is that you're not speaking for the board. I'm concerned from like a legal standpoint, but also like that, that. The, the positioning of that, that now the person has to go campaign for that. So. Let's use any example for that. I, I don't know that we can ask people to do that.
Maybe not campaign for it, but maybe not being on the board saying, I can't believe they made this decision, I wanted to do this and now they're, like I think that. Sets us up for their minds though.
I understand why we don't want that. You know, I'm concerned from a legal standpoint to be able to say that.
My first.
In an honest discussion with political speech. If Isaac and I disagree with the three of you for whatever reason, that. We, our norms are, are suggesting that, well, we can't honestly speak about our, our honest disagreement there. I know that we're saying how we move forward as a board and I think how we conduct business as a board. But given that this is, and I think there's some concerns here about whether it's. Personal social media, my Facebook page versus my campaign webpage, like. There's just a lot in here that I just wanna make sure we have good guidance on.
Okay, I think we're separating, we're separating.
This got legal inter, yeah, but I mean, we can, if there's something specific question, we can say, can you write us a sentence for this or can you look at this question?
But we're separating personal Facebook from campaign Facebook.
Well, we're separating your, so this, this is in the viewpoint of you could have a school board member. School board member page.
Oh.
So like I have, I don't have, but I used to have, I used to have Ashley Wiley Twitter, that was mine.
Yes.
And then I had Ashley Wiley Assistant Superintendent Twitter, that was mine in Wyoming. Those were separate.
Yes.
Right? So I would be talking about the Ashley Wiley Superintendent one.
I would be fair. Yes.
They're kind of, in the public record world, they become one and the same official business.
If you use your personal for school business as a man of standing, so if you start speaking.
It kind of becomes.
And your personal Facebook page, if you put. I can't believe they're gonna build a school on the corner of the lawn.
If you come to now, yeah, because I'm on the floor, yeah, you can't do that, yeah, yeah.
So, so to me, this is different in kind of the legal versus the best practice.
Mm-hmm.
And what I feel like what we're talking about here is like. Best practice, because you're right, when dark, when past board members were on the board. Who chose to say things that were certainly not carrying the water, were not necessarily accurate, were certainly not reflective of the district's views. It is my understanding, we had no say in that because that was their right. And we as a government entity could not quell that free speech. So yes. You can go off and say that the decision was the worst thing ever. But you can also, we've had training now from Cheryl Ryan, god knows how many times, to tell us. That it is not a best practice and it is not healthy for the district or anything else. To have people act in that manner if you want to be perceived as a highly functioning school board. So I think to me, these board norms, well, yes, technically. We can't tell anybody, you have to carry the water and they can do whatever the heck they want. If we're looking at this document as a best practice. The best practice in my mind is for me now not to go out every day and say. These people are crazy that they passed this policy, you know, like.
Continue, continue the respectful debate in a public board meeting.
More.
It's more effective than on social media.
Yeah.
I think as a general.
That's right, just sure if we aren't paying ourselves up to any legal risk by even trying to associate that with a norm.
I, I don't think we are, because it's a law, right? I mean, it's kinda like, it's kinda like the twenty-four hour question, right? If you go rogue, ask me a question in meetings, it's not twenty-four hours, I, 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 I can't look at you Doug and be like, Doug. It's not twenty-four hours, I'm just sorry about your luck, right? You might want to, you might want to, but yeah, right? So I think these are smart, it's almost like bold, you know, you have those kinda buffers there. But to your point, there are, there are norms and then there's legal. Norm is, this is how we would like to function as a governance body. If you go outside of those. Then that's a different, that's a different interpretation, for sure.
I mean, I think it has, like, I think one example that I can think of is when. Julie and I voted that we thought that, what was that committee? That curriculum audit committee thing was a. See, we voted no. But then when it passed. Got on board with, okay, this is what you wanna do, here's my person, I'm gonna have a representative. But I, I said, I disagree with this, but this is what the board has decided, so.
We have to go, if the board has decided, you have to go with it. Then the only thing I, I see here is. I, I'm trying to, it, it is individuals actually that makes all this difference. Those than, those professionalism will never go on to some such thing like that. For instance, yesterday I voted, I, 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 I believe in the facility plan. And I'm gonna make my statement clear, everything we're doing agree with, but there are some things that go in a way that. I do not agree with. So yesterday we voted, and it passed, right? For me now to go and go on Facebook and begin say, oh my goodness, did you see what they did yesterday? I voted against this, this is why, and then. I'm gonna make my statement, but it's not okay to go to Facebook and then begin to, what are you doing? That's not a professional way of. Behaving. It has passed, it has passed. You can talk about it in a meeting, in a, on a board meeting, in the presence of everybody. To play your, your, the reason why you made your decisions, but to go on social media and begin to write stuff like that.
Well, and that's why.
That's the individual difference that I think makes.
On C, um, that's why I included, actually combined them. I put, you know, the expectation is to use discretion and professionalism when engaging on social media platforms. As I wrote that though. Professionalism is one of the most hardest things to define ever, right? And I say that, again, talking about evaluation, right? When you put a teacher on an improvement plan for professionalism. You better be ready to figure out how you're gonna, you talk about a measurable goal. Because that's so interpretable and so hard to define, which is why most people just avoid that, because it is so. It has such connotations and it has, you know, it's, it's so hard, but I've used that just as a.
Right, as a buffer.
Um, there are parameter, but I also knew when I typed it, I was like, hmm. That's debatable as all get out, that's abstract as all get out, but is it the best I could get without getting? Like really, really dissecty, which didn't feel good either.
Well, and again, this is a board norm, if. Somebody chooses to go on social media and say they all suck. Because they didn't pick what I wanted, there's not anything we can really do about it. We hope that won't happen. And I don't think it would ever happen in five months.
And I'm like, have.
We're all not gonna be here forever together. So I think this is just something to.
So, so, let, let me ask a question on this B, okay? When you say, um, represent the governance team.
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean? Because.
Meaning they're a reflection of us all. Yeah, they're, maybe, and reflect.
I think reflect, or you represent makes it sound like I'm representing.
Yeah, I represent the music, yeah. Okay, reflect.
Yeah, and I think this is the point of, and this is a conversation we, and Betsy and I have talked about too, just when you talk about. I'm gonna pick on principals, take it out of our world. A principal who has a Twitter account or a Facebook account or whatever and. It's their personal handle, or maybe it's like the school's handle, but it's their personal name. That gets weird, right? Because, and that's why some uh, public relations will say, it's never your name. It's your wine dog principal, freedom principal, it's never Ashley Wiley, right? It's, it's the title and then you have the handle that's the school. It gets a little clunky when you're using your personal name with your professional title and then your school, like that does get weird. Um, and so I think, again, having norms, and we don't have norms even for that level of our organization. I do think that's something we can need to continue to work through because. It gets more complicated.
Well, and then you pass it on, I mean, you establish the wine dog principal Facebook page. And that's forever the wine dog principal is. I mean, that's how the PTOs do, there's a PTO parent, PTO page and so. Once you're no longer in here at your PTO, that page still exists.
Well, and that's really what you want, so that you don't have to reestablish it, again, as we're inserting, um. Comment right now. If we had a, a list that we could just serve and keep passing on, that's different than everybody starts new every time you get a new principal. Every time you get a new BDA president.
And it's a little different for us, because our names have to be attached to it. It has to say Doug Horton School Board, Lakota School Board.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, you can't just say, yeah.
A challenge accepted, I'm gonna try to come up with a way around that.
You can't, well, you can't just say board number number one and when you're gone.
It's really been a neat evolution of social media, because. You know, you, you've got, you've got people like us that, you know, if we see, if we see stuff on social media that looks like the board's not having. You know, but we just come from a meeting that seemed like we knew what was going on, then we see that, then it. It kinda distracts from the goals of the district, because now we're trying to figure out how to not leave anybody behind and make sure that everybody's.
Coming along.
You know, we're not always gonna all agree, but we can at least understand the different viewpoints and where it's coming from, so.
I mean, look where we are from where we were.
It's. We've, we've been.
Come a long way, baby.
That's right.
It's, it's ever evolving.
That's what she said, the definition of professionalism is so broad, but it depends on. How informed or educated or, or, or professional, professional you wanna be. We all have individual uh, differences, but the way you express it matters.
Sure.
Do you ma, express it maturely? Do you, do you represent the district to give the district a few men? Or you just want to make sure everybody else is bad, but you are the only good person?
I think you raise a really good point. It's more how you're engaging than what you're saying, because.
Right.
A robust discussion around our disagreements on social media is not a bad thing, if it's in a professional way. But like you said, if you're going around trying to plant the dis, board sees, that's, that's a very different thing.
So, and we have to be careful, as we know, with serial meetings, it could be interpreted the same way on social media. Of violations of sunshine laws if we all start reflecting our views.
Yeah.
And are using, like, social media then becomes a debate. I feel like, again, if we're not careful. That could be interpreted as a violation of sunshine laws, because, you know, so I think there is that aspect of it. That we have to be very, very careful with.
And looking at the true essence of sunshine balls and all this, you know. Bottling this up and getting it out at that public meeting is why they were structured that way, you know, that way. Public can hear the different perspectives and viewpoints and, you know, as we've all found out. Not very often does everyone all agree on the same topic. But sometimes you realize there are things that you might not have known about, like I've already prepped Monica for, hey, we're getting. Assuming the resolution to proceed happens. It probably won't look favorable at times to social media. Yeah, that's just normal whenever something's on a ballot. So let's not get too excited, don't look, stay off of it, you know, that.
Um.
It can be nasty.
So as, again, if you marinate and you go, wait, let's add that, or can you add that, just let me know, right? Or give me documents, that's the media does. The next one is school visit. I did cross-reference this with our policy, yep. Um, that's why I actually started, I had this in totally different order and then I totally regrouped it. I just started with per policy, what's an official visit and what's an unofficial visit, right? So board members may visit school buildings in two different capacities, okay? Um, and then, so those are just purely kind of policy oriented. Then B, when visiting in an unofficial capacity, a board member, board members may visit schools or classrooms to look, listen and learn for understanding. And advocacy of educational programs and school environments. What they're intended for, right? They're intended for informational purposes and should not be construed as inspections or evaluations. Um, they should be conducted in a manner that minimizes disruption, that's part of our policy. And that any observations um, should be documented and discussed with the superintendent following the visit in a timely manner. Such communications are considered informal and do not represent official positions of the board unless formally adopted. When visiting, straight from policy. Um, and I actually added a word so we can talk about this. Board members should, our policy said contact the superintendent. I added an applicable building principal, like we would all be on one. But we can remove that if, if we need to, or change policy if we wanna update that to request.
Was an or, no?
I thought, I, and see, I maybe I put and instead of or, I thought we should both be informed, like at one time.
It wasn't or.
Um, and, and maybe we can look at that if we wanna change that, or I can put or. Um, and then those I took straight from what you have to include. The scope, uh, I should say scope, not score. Scope, duration, it has to be mutually agreed upon, we have to follow visitor processes. Um, and then the last two, just kind of. Always important reminders, confidentiality, remember what you see, we don't need to discuss necessarily, because you might see something sensitive. Then all interactions, again, should reflect the highest standards of professionalism, there's that word again, and respect for school.
I think the one add is for those who are parents with students in the building.
Mm-hmm.
That there almost needs to be like a third set that says, if you're acting in your capacity as a parent.
Um, I do, where is that one? Hold on, maybe I took it out, I might have took it out.
Applicable rules to parents.
Oh, we do, well, this is a brand new section.
Yeah, I did not, I just read through it and I did not.
I think I had it, then I deleted that, but I think you're right. So three, we'll put three. Um, if a board member. Is also a active parent, right? Uh.
Or staff. Oh, no, it wouldn't be like, yeah.
They may visit. School buildings or classrooms in.
Your capacity natural.
Parent, parent capacity.
Yeah, with all, you know, with those applicable rules or whatever. I mean, I, I know I communicated with my kid's principal and said, this is your official notice, that I will be in the building this year as a parent. You know, but like it felt awkward, so I think if you just say like.
A number one on C, they will follow visitor sign-in procedures. It, well, you built, like, they, I have been told in all buildings except one, that we don't sign in because we have a badge.
Yes. If you're, it depends on what capacity. If you're in an unofficial capacity, you would sign in. If you're in an official capacity. Oh.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, we are not being consistent right now in Raptor and how we treat visitors, period. So we gotta, we have to cling that for sure.
If you're in unofficial capacity, do you have to bring your driver's license?
Yes.
Technically, you're supposed to, but I can tell you that is not being done by Yonk.
I can't imagine, I don't know any time I haven't. I guess I don't know any time I've been in a building unofficially, to be honest with you.
And you might not have. You might not have, you might have always been there in official.
More performance during the day.
I think that's an official visit, because we've been invited.
Yeah, well, but also like, for, if it's, if it's, if it's a theater performance, right, you're not, all during the day, you wouldn't be signing, yeah.
Like if, if they did a, a production of one of the shows at East during the day.
I think that would be an official visit.
But if you're invited, then we.
They have to, because we're a board member.
We should have defined.
Cause what if they didn't, because that was just one of the options to come in view, but. Then I guess that would be different, I don't know if that.
Or like, I sign in when I go have lunch with my kids, I use my ID and I get a badge.
I always sign in and I will say, like, I've seen that. Inconsistency where it's like, I'll just go ahead and I'm like, well, I'll sign in.
Because I, because I don't have kids, I would not really be in there in an official.
Yeah, I've never been in a weekend or nothing, I'm invited. Because I don't have any kid anywhere.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I do, and again, you're a perfect example, okay? Meaning. People just know people sometimes, and I think this is where we've gotten the inconsistency of building, like, oh, I know you, or I know you're someone's mom, or I know you're this. And they're just like, oh, come on in, right? We really should do.
We've got a badge, so they're like, you have a badge, so you're good.
Right, we, we need to do a better job of.
The state volleyball game is at East in the middle of the day. You're not really invited to that, but you wanna go, which you're doing board work, you're going in support of.
And well, and the weird thing.
Yeah, that's an official capacity, because I wouldn't go to that if I wasn't a board member. Even though it's in the middle of the day.
And policy would probably define that as unofficial.
Yeah, it's unofficial.
But then, but the weird part is, is that's during the day. Most sporting events are at night, so you don't rather. So when you have odd things during the day, and that goes back to your point, you know, are we saying, hey, board? Come to X during the day, or are you kind of going as a normal spectator?
And I would say like, there's something that I take into account, which is the personal responsibility, so. If I'm in the building as a parent or something like that, and something happens and there's a security incident. You know, I wanna be seen as having signed in and not out, just not randomly in the building, so that's why all the, all the.
But your badge, that, that too, when you scan in, your badge says.
You're not actually just waving you in, because you're. You're not able to just wave in because you're a board member.
No, I've never been waved in.
So, I'm just saying, like, I'm always cognizant of following the process and the procedures, especially because of what's happened in the past with board members, so I think there's a personal responsibility here, yeah. I think it's very dear.
Don't follow them.
I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is, it's.
Well, what about a time where you and I walk in a building together, one of us is gonna badge in and we're gonna walk in together?
Yes.
I guess.
Something happen.
I guess how about, like, with the staff's request, because that's how I, like, that's where I feel more comfortable, is I ask the staff, would you like me to sign in?
And they shouldn't, and they shouldn't have a choice.
Yes, you should sign.
And we, and we'll clean that up, that's not for you to worry about, that is not for you to worry about, we will clean that up, but right now, I mean, if you have a badge, like, again, there, there's, we're sending mixed messages unintentionally. If you got a badge, I'm sure somebody sees a badge and they go, okay, you're legit, right? But, to your point, if you're there not in an official capacity and you didn't have your badge, say your badge wasn't on you, technically, they should ask, and it would, and I mean, it would burn some people in the wrong way, not this group, but, I mean, collectively, if somebody goes, really? You're gonna ask me for a license? Yes, no disrespect, that's just our normal protocol, right? And I'd say that for even like president's council, parent groups, anything like that, we, we've gotten a little lax on just like, oh, I know you, whether you have a badge or not, I know you've come on in, right? If I didn't have my badge, and I truly mean this, and I'm, and I, if I didn't have my badge, I would expect somebody to say, hey, you have your badge, or can, can you sign in for me? Because technically, that's my way of them knowing I'm in the building, like, whether there's a.
I guess, I think that's.
That's why D P C gives them a badge to be willing to give you.
But I believe that is BTSO, where we've had buildings start following the process, and the BTSO has to adjust, like, I'm in here every day, why do I have to sign it? And it's a learning experience if they go through.
Hundred percent, and I think if we all do it consistently, that'll be good.
Yeah.
But if you have, like, endeavor trying to implement it and freedom's not here, that's where it gets weird. And it, I'm used to having a Raptor FAQ, not only for like our office managers and our staff, but also our parents. We don't have that, so we're trying to build that as well, because I do think there's just some like, hey, it's not personal, we're just trying to be super safe and make sure we're following our protocols.
Do you have to, and, when you do Raptor and like you go into a building, and you give them your license, do you do that then every time you go in the building?
So you don't have to, so whatever, once you go into a building with your license, okay? They can look you up by your last name, and then they'll click it, and it can, it almost runs the license that's on file. Now, if you were to get, if your license expires or something like that, it wouldn't work, but you don't technically have to have it on your, ideally you do, but if you don't, we can look you up in a.
What about, does Raptors talk to each other in the building? So like, if she goes to Independence and she's already in there, can she go to Endeavor and it'll be in there?
Now, whether they know.
We can have Raptor when my kids weren't.
And they might not, and I'll be honest, they might not know that, and we might not have set up the system that they can see other buildings. So it's all about the setup.
I think a lot of office managers are abusing Raptor.
And, and so when, also as a parent, so like, you know, if you had a kid in three schools, when you go onto your Raptor, uh, Raptor piece, you can say what kids you want to be, you know, what buildings you want to be affiliated on, and it'll associate with you, it's all about the setup on the front end. And I don't know how we set it up, so that's one of the things we're exploring.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's a way to, so, that's a way to, we can make everybody know the benefits of this. Because like when we're coming into the building today, uh, I had one banker who was in front of me, uh, because he doesn't have a plan, but he has to go through the process, actually opened the gate for her, right? But you know what I did? I scammed her, but I don't know what I captured or not, but that shows I'm in the building.
Well.
Now, if anything happened, you see.
And I think we, um, you make a good point too. Part of the reason we badge staff, not visitors, staff badge, is for accountability in buildings, right? So one of the things like that we ran into, and I think I alluded to this in a different meeting, we had a contracted staff member whose badge was showing very low that they were in a building. And they were like, well, people just let me in, and you're like, even if somebody let you in, that's a really low threshold? And so you should badge in every time to say like, I'm here, like, I'm accounted for, like, I know that seems, yes, I know people answer the door or open the door sometimes, but the part of that badge is to say, you're like, I know where you're at, you're doing your job. And so especially traveling teachers or teachers that don't have like a dedicated home base, we have put that into job descriptions now, like, you have to account for yourself. Ideally, that's easy through your badge, but if you want to account for your travel log in a different way, but the easiest thing to do is just badge in.
Well, I think you need Christina French for some sort of mental health emergency, let's say she's a mental health therapist and she's flipping two buildings.
You gotta work, you gotta work.
She over shielded.
Yeah, and I do think safety, you know, the safety conversation was very important in master facilities, and so I do think that is the right message, it's about that safety.
I think we've gotten lax on safety a little bit.
So, we're, we're looking at that right now with our Raptor.
All right, we have five minutes before the next section, anything else on this topic, or should we take a five minute break?
I think we can take a five minute break, yeah, we got everything I needed for this, and then we got fifteen fifteen, I can circle back.
That guy. So I officially put us in recess for five minutes?
That works.
I am putting in recess for five minutes.
Let's go, I'm in, yeah.
Recession, I feel like, I feel like that somehow, like, it sounds, we're not in trouble, but I feel like we don't want to read that, like, wait a minute.
Recession is a good thing.
Open them up. That's weird.
I always enjoy the recess.
Those cookies are good, they're just really, um.
Really big.
Feed that, oh, I'm getting this.
It's a good.
It's been both Franklin about the child.
Public records request.
Kelly, this is a lot for me.
All right. Microphone is on.
I just.
Yeah.
Just in the video that I talked about over there.
Yes, we did.
That might have been the funnest reaction.
I'm telling you, I.
Sounds better than that.
Like, come on, man.
Well, he probably just had a little.
As well.
He can't stand.
I'll do the.
Love what I'm doing.
Now.
Don't know. Be like, it's just not my email. That does happen.
Hammer track all.
All right. All right, I was gonna pull us out of recess and we are going to move. We are one minute behind on our schedule and we're moving to therapy dog. We're not happy. We have kicked this down the road so many times. I am glad that we are on schedule to get there.
I'm kicking the dogs, I know. And now kick the dogs. Now it becomes undressed. Come on, Andre. I think, I think honestly, she might be bringing dog.
I saw a dog behind the little gate.
I mean.
I was hoping, yes, hoping not.
She asked her around Montana, she on her.
Yeah, I texted her, I said, ready when you want.
I thought she was right behind me. Or I grabbed Karen.
Dog didn't cooperate.
Maybe the dog isn't cooperating. Well, this has got moved off our agenda so many times. It is fair to think that.
Yeah, they know, we will have some follow up. We will have some follow up from this, like, so this is the philosophical discussion pieces, but I do anticipate.
Thought you were gonna bring one.
Oh, we get a surprise.
I did say. As many times as we haven't gotten to this, it's fair that you were wondering if we were going to.
Right.
Probably right there was where it extended.
She probably was like, are we really going to?
I'm, I'm good, thank you. And do you want to, uh, cast your presentation or you, they have a copy of it? Or do you just want the?
Probably cast it in the video.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about the dog. We'll have to plug you in and then wonder if we don't have what you have in your. The make sense that we want. Sure. Dog in.
Yeah, it's in the back in this part. Yes, there is a therapy section dog within our.
Yeah, it's behind the.
Strutter tail and. Five different things.
I don't have it.
They don't have it shared. We don't want to share. Pluggers, you can stay up here.
Oh, my goodness.
Here, it's okay, you can have mine. I got it.
No, then I can share it.
Okay, no, I got it. I see it, I know what I don't work here.
Is it not?
It's okay, we got.
Oh, it's a lot.
I think he pulled it out and hit.
That's my number number one.
You wanted, you wanted to get the dog presentation.
Number one.
There you go.
I always make it extra, just in case.
Just in case.
This is a shared village.
That's right.
I'm just posing the, you know.
The hundred tab, huh? Yeah.
Cooperating.
He probably changed his place to therapy for board member number.
It doesn't. Starting, I'm sorry.
Or die there. Yeah, it needs to be more number, number four, but you know, you.
Oh, this is, there's a, it's the whole conspiracy.
You're really board member number four.
Not according to the domain registration that you got on, on, fine, yeah.
My back in the video. You got the presentation, she got it right, right on her shoes, so. Very big right there. Hello, puppy.
All right. Dixman.
I will tell you Julie, fast match her outside. He's in the blue or the red.
What color was it?
He'll be holding up flashcards. All right, to Julie's point, we, we have had this on several agendas. Um, and so Andrea and I have had lots of conversations about this. And so I think because we're all coming from different like spots and histories, some of us have been around since the dog's inception. Some of us are like, where do we get the dog? What do we do with the dog? Just starting from like a baseline of information. And then there are some philosophical points they want to talk through. And then the takeaway would be to adjust maybe some policies or adjust some trainings or something like that. We would, we would have some next steps as a takeaway from this, particularly in policy images. So we're gonna start from a baseline. We have big, big buckets. Feel free to ask questions or stop us if we need any clarity, because sometimes even I have to ask and go, wait a minute, what does that mean? So feel free to kind of have that healthy dialogue that we continue to have. All right.
Um, and some of you guys have seen kind of some little nuggets, but, um, we hear in some presentations that we've done in the past. And yes, there's a, there's a little showcase at the end. Um, and if anyone has something nice on, I do have the roller, you know, to take the dog hair off. So our therapy dogs of Lakota, um, we have each of our dogs up here. So we have Biggs and some of our dogs are at two buildings, some are at one. I'll explain why that is. Um, some of, some of it's based on the dog's personality. Some, I mean, they're just like people, um, some are more fickle than others and don't like to go to multiple locations. Some of our dogs are a little bit older than others, as you see, um, Braxton's eight years old, Biggs is five years old. Uh, Biggs tends to be, um, happy no matter where he's at and just very food driven. You have sometimes they're on your desk or in the garbage or on the floor. He's just happy to sniff it out. Where Braxton's a little bit older at age eight and, and these are large dogs. So if you've had any type of large dog, the lifespan is short typically for a large dog. And, and both Biggs and Braxton are on the larger end of, um, the dogs that we do have. So age eight, I think Braxton is turning eight years old this summer. So I went ahead and put age.
When you have two buildings, Andrea, do they just take turns like daily? They don't go move in the middle of the day or do they?
They do not move during the whole day. Um, but great question, like, is, they do have schedules.
Okay, okay.
Lastly is at Woodland and is four years old and Quiz is eight years old. And Quiz, um, is, um, the mommy of some of our dogs, please don't ask me which. Quiz and Braxton.
Oh. But there's a story.
There might be a story. I think Tambo might be one of them, but I'm not sure. Techna. And you can see Liberty, um, Junior and Central for Tambo. And that was kind of one of those, um, natural, uh, pieces, just because Eric Baumann. And I'll get to some of the lingo of handler and host was the, um, host of Tambo. Which means that Tambo lived with Eric Baumann. And then when Eric went to Central, that was one of those natural fit pieces where, um, Tambo went with Eric on Sundays to Central and also the freshman building was freshman's benefits from that as well. And Techna is at Cherokee and mostly because of proximity. There's no other building.
Close to it.
Close to, um, Cherokee and the teacher that, um, Techna lives with. So the host, um, also teaches at Cherokee. So to have some, a, a different location, a different building, when it's a classroom teacher, it's very hard to have that, um, technique or somewhere else. I like those pictures. Reeves, Reeves is at Freedom and Ridge. That's again, because there's two buildings close to each other, that works out very well and Reeves is six years old. Um, no one knows that Serenka's name is Serenka because we call him Ringo. Uh, and Ringo, um, does not like to be in out and open places. Ringo likes to be in very small groups, does not like to go in the cafeteria, does not like to go in the gymnasium. This is one of the reasons why Ringo did not make it through, um, service dog school. So all of these dogs were slotted to be service animals and we'll get to the definitions of the differences between service animals and therapy dogs. But, um, that is one of the big things about Serenka is Serenka likes the quiet. Serenka is one of the, of our dogs that if we need, um, to have more of that intimate type of setting with individual students does much better in a therapy type setting. Uh, Zui is the queen of Lakota therapy dogs. And, um, she does not like to be around any other dog. And she lets us know that, um, she has had several different host families. Um, you'll see within the Circle Tail paperwork. Um, they will allow up to one dog in the, in a home for the host family. With Zui, there can be zero dogs. She likes to be the only child in the home. She likes all the attention. She is probably one of the more loving dogs that we have for sure. And when we have a crisis, she is the number one dog we take on our crisis team. She knows exactly which person, adult, child to go up to. She knows, I mean, she will stick right to you and she, she really is a very loving, loving dog. But yeah, she's, she's great. Bendy, uh, is at Creekside. We tried to put her in some different buildings and split it. She, um, doesn't do very well. We had her at Heritage and, um, Creekside last year, not the year prior, still in twenty-four, twenty-five. And, um, she didn't do real great one in between the two buildings. So we've, we've had her put her, um, back just at, at Creekside. You'd think a natural fit would be West Freshman and Creekside. And she really is, she doesn't do well one in between the, the two buildings. So she's mainly just like Creekside in the one building.
Like, when you say doesn't do well, what's that mean?
Um, they, they let you know they don't want to go. They want to stay. They have their people, they have their place, they knew the building, they knew the surroundings.
So like kid energy versus older kid energy?
Yeah. She's a very, um.
It's Creekside early childhood?
Yes. She's a, she's not a high energy dog. She's a low energy dog and always has been that way. So she likes that, you would think, you know, K two kids would be more of a high energy. She, she likes that low energy, small group. She is with the school counselor there a lot and small group. Or with one-on-one and in a child's schedule, it's a reward, different children's schedules. So she, we build the, the schedule as the, as fit for the students and the therapy dog as well. So it's kind of meeting the needs on both ends. They're really no different than people. I mean, it's, it's, it's amazing. All right. Service dogs, do you have questions about the ten that we have? So our service dogs, and I put, um, the policy eighty-three ninety up there because that, everything I have on the slides, I pulled directly from the policy. I didn't list everything that was in the policy. But service dog is provided by, uh, the parent. Um, we do have students within the district. We've had employees within the district who have serviced dogs. And they're here to perform specific tasks based on a disability. Um, the board has no liability, um, for any or any responsibility for a service dog. And the service dog has to be under the direct supervision of the person with the disability. So there's a lot of difference between a service dog and our therapy dogs. There's for a specific person, specific disability. There, we have no responsibility as a district, the board, and, um, we're not even allowed to ask what the disability is. I mean, we just have to say, yes, you have a service dog. Yes, you have the licenser for it appropriate. Um, that care for it, meaning shots are all up to date. And the person who has, um, the service dog has to show that they can, uh, have command over the dog at all times.
And one thing that was helpful for me is Andrea explaining it. We can't have a service dog and a therapy dog in the same building. So sometimes if you go, how come we don't have a dog in X? Well, that, that building might have a service dog. And as long as there's a service dog in that building, you can't have a therapy dog. Or as that child gets older, if that service dog, which probably will goes with them, that might bump a therapy dog. So you can't, that was really good insight for me. I go, how come all building, actually you can't, because you can't have a service dog and a therapy dog in the same building.
We actually had an incident, um, not on the service dog end, but we had a child who was highly allergic to the dander of the dogs. We didn't realize, we, we knew there was an allergy. We didn't know the extent of the allergy and the nurse pet, the dog, went into the clinic, the child came in even an hour later.
Oh, wow.
This was when we first got the dog. Allergy had to be transported to the hospital. But it was just that perfect line of events.
Right.
But the dog wasn't even in that building.
Choked it, but it.
Or she just touched the dog and kind of peanut allergy, you know, you get peanuts on your hand and you carry it.
A child at home, peanut dog.
Yeah, so this was one of those things that we, we had to think through. Like, okay, who are these kids? What do we need to do? So we have protocol for notifying, you know, parents, parents in nearby, you know, building i- if that was to happen, something like that. So we have protocol for all of those pieces. Um, it was just, it was something that the nurse didn't even think about as well.
I have a question. If we have, say, we have two or three kids in one, same building that have service dogs. And therefore leave them.
Yeah, yes.
In theory, yes, in theory. But as, as, and I don't want to speak important, but I think when dogs have certain personalities, even service dogs, right? Or therapy dogs, ideally, yes, they should be able to coexist together in the same type of dog. But sometimes you run into, you have to problem solve about how to make that work or traffic patterns and things like that.
Yeah.
And I've had that experience before where it should have worked, but dogs were a little persnickety with their personalities and we had to make sure that they weren't engaging with each other.
And I think the lecture being in Lakota is we are so large in our buildings that, and you may have six or seven sections of the grade level that you are able to move in such a way in a building that you wouldn't have.
Okay.
And, and you would have to look through, look at that through that lens. Um, but to think about the age of a, of a child or a young adult, um, you'd have to have command of the, over the dog at all points in time or else you couldn't bring the service dog to school with you. So that's kind of a key factor is that you have to have command over, or the dog can't come, even if you have a service dog. Because we've had, we've had to cross that bridge. And have those conversations, they're not easy conversations to have for sure. All right, so the therapy dog, and this is where we go from having policy to the AG. And you have the AG that's been in place in front of you. And again, I didn't, um, I just took some of the snippets out of, um, the AG. And this is, you know, it is owned by the district. And, you know, it's a therapy dog program, so only dogs. You know, I've had the question, well, can I bring a wizard?
Or the rabbit?
Or?
Snake.
Yeah. Where, um, when, when it comes to. You'd be surprised. On the plane, right?
Yeah.
Um, when it comes to the service dogs, um, a miniature pony is actually a service dog. They, uh, under Americans with Disabilities Act, a dog and a pony, a miniature pony all fall within, within the same guidelines.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Is that the only two that can be a service animal?
Under, under those guidelines.
Service.
Service, okay, service.
Service. So when we worked with legal to develop this AG, we were very clear on it needs to be a dog. Um, from Circle Tail Inc. and cer- certain certifications. Because we did get a lot of questions about them. My dog certified and I'm like, that's not the same. Uh, Circle Tail puts the dogs through a twenty-four month, um, type of training. And they actually, you know, make sure that they are trained again as service animals until they fail. And they have multiple types of, uh, trials before they are passed on to, to.
It's not just one trial, the dog doesn't do something.
And sometimes it's, they don't want to wear a bandana around their neck because you need to be identified as a, a service dog.
Yeah.
And or something simple as Zui. Zui failed because she could not be, uh, around another dog led to another dog without, when this jump in, you know, do those types of things. So, um, Braxton actually is a service dog. He's retired. And so he's, that's why he's kind of the little soldier. When you see him, he kind of represents himself that way and very well behaved. But his host says he likes to eat bread. I blame, I blame the host for that. All right, do you guys have questions about, um, the AG? Now, this is the one that's not connected to a policy.
Which is unusual.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have some work to do on that. But I think the number one question I've gotten particularly from, from people is why don't certain buildings have dogs? And, and there's multiple, I mean, there's financial implications of that. But honestly, a big piece of it is the service dog versus the therapy dog, plus the allergy conversation as well. And then to, uh, Andrea's presentation is not about this, but just for nomenclature, a canine dog, a drug dog, is not a therapy dog, nor is it a service dog. Okay, it is a canine dog with a very special training. Some school districts, very rarely, but some school districts do own canine dogs, like Oak Hills. Atticus is a canine dog. So I just, there's lots of dogs in the world, service animals, therapy, canine dogs. And they're not interchangeable sometimes like people think. They have, they have training, very specific certified training, can't really use them for interchangeable purposes.
And the popularity of the program, I, I blame Betsy Fuller for this because she's the, uh, just a, a great job of showcasing the dogs when we started getting them and then the cost started increasing, supply and demand. Um, very rapidly started going, um, through the roof, I'll just say. And, you know, we had created lots of documents. We had a lot of people calling us. We had our SRO sharing, um, at the state level, the program. And I was happy to share it. I mean, I, you know, but you build a thick will come type of thing. And so I feel like the popularity and the way that everything was being showcased went along with that and drove that. And so I, I feel like it was kind of our fault too, a little bit. And, um, so, yeah, there's, there's, there's some reasons why. And then we, we had a halt, but kind of a, a threshold point. We're like, okay, we need to get some things in place. Um, injuries of dogs, costs associated with some of the injuries of dogs, who's going to pay for it? What are we going to do about X, Y, Z? It, it, we, we needed to slow down a little bit, make sure we had some pieces in place.
Speaking of that cost, um, and Andrea and I talked about this too, the initial dogs, there's, so there's, there's two basic cohorts of dogs. Cohort one, cohort two. Now, sometimes there's been some triples in, but the first dogs were about a thousand dollars a piece, fifteen hundred thousand dollars a piece. Okay? When that kind of advertising went up and supply and demand and you had COVID and all those kind of weird things, the price spiked. The highest dog that we have was ten, was ten thousand dollars. Okay?
I don't think it was we had.
Ten, the, uh, one of the dogs we paid for, which is just one, right? Was ten thousand dollars.
The last.
Yeah, the last one we purchased was ten thousand. Now, you met the ten dogs we have. Next year, we're slated to get our eleventh dog at West Main. Okay?
No, we have a secret.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 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 I jumped the gun. He's, he, he, he.
I'm not gonna say.
Okay, so the dog, the dog is around twenty-five hundred, okay? So what I want us to think about when we talk about policies and AGs, because you don't want to put a defense, you want to have to, what is our threshold? For a dog? What is the max? And maybe we've already reached it. We are like, not paying that for a dog anymore. But that is a question of, in a policy that I would recommend we have for not only our guidance, but our guidance in the district is when we go to, if we're ever in a supply and demand stretch, what is our threshold of pay? That I do think we need to have that somewhere in our AGs or policies of what we feel comfortable with.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Why the big difference between the cost if they're both coming from Circle Tail?
It was a supply.
Supply and demand.
Demand. So they just didn't have enough.
They didn't have enough.
Raise the cost. I think that leads to my next question. How do we obtain a dog? Does someone request one?
That's in there. Yeah. Let's get your handlers and hosts.
I have all that.
Yeah.
It's, it's on that here. You don't have to remember because that, I promise you.
It's in there.
I'll get to it.
Because I had the same question.
And it was supply and demand and funding sources. So it costs about thirty thousand dollars per dog to train. Because that's how much they're investing. And they, they only pick certain dogs to train as service dogs. So they have their investment piece and then they have to recoup some of that. So when you look at those pieces, now, when I say they say, you know, I'm going by they say, but from the research I have on students trying to attain a service dog, it costs that much money. So. Um, this, so this starts leading and now this is NDAG about the approval of the district administrator, uh, and the therapy dog. And the building principal, the building principal is key in the success of the program because there are fidelity pieces here. Uh, we, it's been since I think twenty-two, since we've gotten, um, a therapy dog in a building. But it is truly part of the success. And if the building administration's not bought into the program and it's a staff member and it needs to be treated as such. And if, if the therapy dog's not part of the staff, then, um, in my opinion, then the dog shouldn't be there. It, it needs to be really embedded into the, um, culture of the building. All right. Therapy dog lingo. The facility dogs, when you look at the Circle Tail Inc. contract, you'll see facility dog. We call them therapy dogs. It's our school district. And we know that it's here to support our students' wellbeing. I will say our staff's wellbeing just as much as our students' wellbeing. And the facility dog is because these dogs are, you can find them at local businesses, police departments, fire departments. So the, the name is facility dog throughout, uh, the contract. Host, again, um, if you like sci-fi movies, you know what that means. The person with whom the therapy dog lives. The handler, handler staff, you have to have handlers. Handler are staff trained to handle the therapy dog, the daily living, the, the daily commands. So there, there are people within the building, staff within the building. Could be the secretarial staff, the parapros. Um, it could be the custodian who has some flexibility to be able to take the dog outside for a walk. I mean, you have to do daily routine things. And it's actually embedded within the contract from Circle Tails and Expectation. I mean, you have to do daily routine things. And it's actually embedded within the contract from Circle Tails and Expectation. Because it's, it's just like us getting a drink of water, you know, if we need, if we're bored and, you know, what our daily things or if we need to get and stretch, stretch our legs. Maybe our, uh, service talks are, or, sorry, therapy talks are no different than that. So you have to identify these pieces and this gets kind of to, um, the question that Christina, um. Raised some minute ago is, you know, how do we determine, you know, how does this happen?
And a question that Andrea explained to me that was helpful, so like she mentioned the teacher that had the dog. Okay, the teacher that has the dog at home, that's the host family. Okay, that's where they live, where they, you know. That is not the handler during the day, because the teacher doesn't have flexibility, right? The teacher can't go out and walk the dog or, you know, get into a kid. So even though the host family is the teacher, the handler would be the other people in a building that have the flexibility to engage with the dog. And get it to where it needs to be or change it.
Carriage counselor.
Carriage counselor, those kind of things. So don't necessarily think those, I guess it could be depending on the role, the host might be the handler. But the host can be different from the handler as well.
Do we send those people to train me?
Yep, everyone gets, gets, um, trained that has any type of duty with the, with the dogs. So the first three dogs that we had to Zooey, Bendy, um, quizzes here. All were, they're the host or the special services directors. And it was more of, uh, we didn't really know what we were doing and we wanted it to succeed and not fail. And we were building it as in the air. Cause we didn't have the documentation, we didn't have all this paperwork. And I wanted it to succeed for, for kids. And so. Trying to figure out how they dropped off the dog, handed the dog off and ensured all of those pieces were in place. It, it was a little taxing at first, but they were able to do it. And it worked out well, like so Brian's children went to Creekside and then Depper. So that was a natural fit to begin with. Sherry Copeland had Zooey initially. Her building assignments were junior high. So that's how, you know, that ended up. But then she had some of the staff picking the dogs up from her home and going on the way to work. And there's a lot of responsibility when you are the host. If you're sick, that dog still needs to get to work. So you have to ensure that there's a backup plan. So it's, it's a lot. It's a lot if you're a host family, I have to tell you. Cause they have, the kids are depending on the dog to get there.
And the host family, this will, when we talk about kind of dogs retiring, remember the host family invests a lot of their own money in the dog. Do you know what I mean? They feed the dog, they buy toys, they claim like, there is some, yes, you're getting a highly trained animal. But there still is a financial burden, or not burden, but a financial impact to a family. That, that might become important in our retiring conversation, because Andrea and I was like.
I never thought about that when we were talking about it. There is the financial piece for a host family.
And is there training for the host family? Cause is there? Things the dog can and cannot do even when they're old?
Yeah. So if you go to this one, the, um, therapy dogs of Lakota.
This, the staple of general information mission statement, yep.
We created a handbook, therapy dogs of Lakota handbook. And a mission vision statement and what is a Lakota therapy dog. And we did this in conjunction with some of our hosts within the district as well. And it's in alignment with our AG language that we have. It's the one I already got. And then just. We attached in there, so we have everything. And what you'll see is our, I like redundancy. I like, I think redundancy, um, just helps when it's, when things are cumbersome. For everyone to understand what the expectations are. So within, what you'll see is within the handbook, you'll see there's the AG language. Roles, roles and responsibilities of the host, the handler, the building administration. And then myself and the special services team as well. So the roles and response, the contracts in there, the AG is in there. Um, the reference of the Circle Tail, which is lowercase d, the Circle Tail contract, which should be in your. Packet as well, which is more like a legal.
Yeah, legal document. But that training is every year. So everybody gets the initial training and then you get a refresher. And so one of the questions I had to Andrea, like when, um, when, um, Eric moved to Central. The dog changed, um, host, host families, right, changed host families. That host family then had to be trained, right? So there's the initial and then the refresh every year. Or if the dog changes, host families or handlers or staff changes, there has to be training of that as well, including the building administration. So when you think of like, hey, quiet being new, or if you think about, um, like Ben, inheritance, right? Uh, all of those people have to be trained annually to either get the refresh or get the initial training to know how to appropriately handle the dog. When you have a host family, a host dog, who gets trained?
So, everyone in the family, everyone in the family, the whoever lives in your house. Gets trained. You go out, it's way up in the Milford, almost Landchester area. And everyone gets trained. Uh, it is one-time training for the host family, for everyone in the house. Then in addition to that, the host and the handlers in the building. So the handler should be the building administration. So if you go back to this sheet that's here, it should be the building administration. And at least three to four others. And it's mandatory that someone from special education, whether it's an intervention specialist, paraprofessionals, well, instructional aides. Are also trained because it's essential for the schedules to reflect individual students. So there needs to be training from, within special education as well. But building administration has to be trained. So if you look at the special services lead document. There's part of that that starts going through, so, um. Grade band placement, so Christina asked the question about grade band placement. I know I'm flipping back and forth documents because they're all kind of intertwined. Uh, there's a. Document with this little few puppies, I think it's Zooey and Bendy. Then this pre-placement document, so what, um, when we got, we get a, we hear that there's a dog available. We talk to Circle Tail and they say, we have a dog that is probably most appropriate for older students, let's say. And we go, okay, what, you know, tell me more. And they'll say, well, no, it'd be in a home with another animal, small animal. But they, they won't place a dog if there's a pit bull. They won't place a dog if there's like a larger dog in a, in a home. They will not do it. And then we already have, which we'll have to redo because it's been such a long time. We already have buildings with some administrators who have filled out this document. To show interest in saying, I have a host, I have all the handlers, here's the data from my building. That says exactly how we would utilize the dog. Cause it has to be tied to multi-tier systems of support. Has to be tied to your, your building's student data and how the dog would be utilized. Cause it can't be, because it's, I'm stressed all day because I'm the building principal and I need to pet this dog. I mean, that's a great thing too, it's a luxury. But how is it tied back to your student data? How's it going to be tied back to your schedule? We have students with school phobia. To come and get out of that car, come and get off that bus every day is a lot to ask of kids. And to have one of our, you know, therapy dogs sitting there and be a part of that day. I mean, that is a, a wonderful thing, uh, to have it be part of the schedule, whether it's part of the lunch schedule, part of a meet and greet. Uh, part of a recess, to be able to just say, you, you know, that you, quiz will be sitting here waiting for you when you come in. Just for a hug, a high five. So it's. But we want to make sure that the data's there.
One of the things that we, so the training mentioned something else. You know, part of it is the training of the people that have the dog from year to year, but then also from a reasonable standpoint. I mean, I was in place for thirteen years and didn't have dogs. Like, so even if I'd been a principal and I'd come in, I'd have been like. I, I didn't know I could ask for a dog. What's that process look like, right? So we also have some training of just about the system of dogs. What's its purpose? What does it do? How do, how do you even ask for a dog? When do you ask for a dog? Because if you have new administrators that aren't familiar with this, like to Christina's point, you might not even know how it works, right? So I think there's like the system for principals and then there's the training systems that we have to do with fidelity as well. To make sure that the people who have the dog, interviewed a lot of the dog, once they get it, that, that's being done with fidelity. The dog changes, you know what I mean?
There's some tightening out that needs to happen and retraining.
And I also think again, because people tend to view them after a time of their own, and like, it's like, it's like my dog, or it's part of my family. So I'm going to pick on Eric, I'm not saying Eric did this, I'm just going to pick on him. If he said like, hey, I'm just going to give my dog over to so-and-so. Well, we really can't do that, right? You gotta tell, the dog has to flow with people, so the training's accurate. Again, so I think it's that conversation of not only how do I get a dog, but when somebody's changed their mind about a dog. Having that run through the special education team to say, okay, we need to get the dog in a placement or the dog has to go to a new building, which is a whole different training protocol. So you can't just treat, even though the dog is living with you, it's not really like your family pet. It has bigger aspirations.
So there are things that the host family cannot do with the dog. Like, I don't know, dress them up in the Christmas sweater for a family member. I mean, I'm making that up, but.
It'd be a requirement.
There, when the dog is at home. The dog knows it's not at work when the next birth comes up. So when they know, and they, it is your pet. When they're out breeding life. They're not supposed to be on furniture. That's the no-no. Um, you're not supposed to have any of the therapy dogs lay down on their back and, you know. There, there's certain things that are no-no's. That you're, you get through that host training. I think we all forget that they're not. They're, they're, they're highly trained dogs. You're not supposed to have a ball.
Think, think about that. Think about that, because.
So there's some.
Do that sometimes.
Recalibration that needs to happen because I will tell you, I've gone up to buildings and there's been some lax things. And some of the special services directors will tell you, our head kind of. You know, mm-hmm. And it's about expectations and setting expectations, reinforcing some things. But we haven't, and I say we collectively as a district, haven't said. We have it down on paper. We haven't said we're reinforcing things. And this is what we're doing moving forward. We kind of paused on everything and it just sat there.
Which is a perfect time for us to have this conversation, recalibrate, get our policies in place and then implement with fidelity.
So retraining, we, we retrain all handlers, we in Lakota, retrain all handlers every year. There's expectations. Not everyone is showing up.
But we can make that part of that process.
So I changed the words in the document that said mandatory. This year.
Cause I mean, I think if you want to have a dog and you want your building to have a dog, there is that you, you, you have to do it with fidelity, right? The dog is important. We have to follow the process.
Cause, well, I don't want them to be dogs. I want them to be there.
That's right. You don't want to be pets. How do, and you might get there in one of these. How do we know when the dog is done?
Cause that's going to be a conversation.
So it just, I know we do want to get to a conversation with some decisions, so we have fifteen minutes left, so just.
Fifteen, I like. She keeps us locked out.
In your packet as well, like just because again, we've streamlined a lot of things. This is the administrator checklist, because we ask for our, we ask a lot of our principals to do a lot of things. The last thing I want to do is say, you want a dog, here's seventeen thousand things you have to do. So we tried to streamline, um, we, we need to update some of our links. But we have a lot of links in here, all the stuff that you've seen, we've tried to streamline, put the links, embed everything. We sit down with the administrators and go, let's walk through it, let's talk through it. You know, every host family has to have a fence. They won't let you have electric fence because it doesn't keep anything out. It just keeps your dog young. So there's all of these pieces and remember thirty thousand dollars. My money. Uh, some of you have seen this video. I know that the dog has, I mean, has fun, but I still just like it. I don't, I hope.
I would skip this just for time and come up, because I'll share it with them afterwards and we can come back to it.
This is what we show staff and students when the dog's introduced. Just, right, here's our dogs, reduces anxiety, helps us talk to each other, calm in crisis. What they do throughout the day.
I thought, this is, I thought this was really cool. Right, I think sometimes the dog, we're just like, oh, the dog's just hanging out. Like, it has a defined schedule.
So it's, and I, I usually get till September. Submit a schedule to me, they said, in a Google file, um, every year. The dog's vaccinations have to be submitted to me every year, along with, um, the liability insurance for homeowner's insurance. Along with, we have to submit, Chris usually would submit through PolyHale, um, the liability insurance with, for the district as long, as, as well. So you can see there's group, there's individual student, it's not the same student. Um, but there's, there's break time for the dog as well, all built in. No, this, this is Braxton's schedule.
And like Kelly asked, they're not going between two buildings within a given day. Like you might have a dog that goes Monday, Wednesday, Friday to the building, Tuesday, Thursday to the other. So they're not trimming during the day.
Then do they get, like, does it flip the following week? One day the dog's going to get three days in one building.
And like when we had the. When we had the central episode, you know, the dog kind of got taken off of its schedule because we needed it to be some, some grief pieces. And so we kind of moved the dog's schedule that day.
Um, the other piece is that, to answer your question, the dog, it tends to tell us when they're slowing down. Um, Quiz is eight years old, um, lives with Mark Clevins and goes to Union. Quiz is bored right now in the summer. Like, she's been here a couple of times. She's got the sort of extended full year at Union a few times. And, but she only goes to school like four days a week because Mark was having trouble getting her in the car.
Oh, so during the school year, she doesn't go five days?
She, she, this year, about mid-year, she, but if, if she wants to go five days, you take her five days. But if she's telling, I can't go, she, she's telling. And that's what, we work with Circle Tail.
It's a mental health thing. So before, so part of that. This, so as, we have, we have training, right? Andrea explained to me, the dogs are assessed every year, right? So I, you know, you asked about retirement, Doug had asked that too. I think we used to, or decommission, we turned the word to retirement, right? You don't get to talk about the decommissioning to the dogs. Dog, the dog starts showing signs, right? Then you're like, eh, I'm kind of getting a little bit slower. But then Circle Tail, when it starts to fail, kind of those assessments, if they will tell you like, perhaps it's time for the dog to. Have a different schedule or to come off the schedule.
So somebody at Circle Tail every year sees these dogs?
Um, not necessarily every year. If, if there's something not quite right. We, we will call, in, it, in the contract, you'll see if there's behavioral changes.
So as they're starting to slow down, then we would make sure that they're united.
So like at the example you just gave, would you send Quiz there this year?
Well, no, Mark's, Mark's been in consultation.
With Circle?
With Circle Tail. There's nothing wrong with her and she's just.
I just wondered like what qualifies them to go back or, like, give me an example of a time you've sent a dog back for an assessment.
Uh, well, we've sent a dog back and they've not come back. Because. And, and, no, they don't, went to other placements. They weren't a good fit.
So like, what about like Zo? Or is it bad?
Who isn't in a building anymore?
Zoe goes to Hopewell Junior.
She is gonna go to Hopewell Junior.
She's been going to Hopewell Junior.
How many days does she go to that?
She goes two or three days a week. No more than three. I think it might be two days a week that she goes. And some of that is Zooey and some of it is, um, building schedule too.
So does the host family alert you that they need to go for a little visit back to Circle Tail?
It's, it's the host in combination with the, the handler, the building administration, so.
So is, Zooey goes to Hopewell Junior twice a week as their schedule? But she goes someplace else?
She, she could, and that was part of the conversation, but because of her injuries that she had, I think that played into the biggest part of it.
So one of the conversations we have, so we have ten dogs now, okay? Not supposed to tell, but I think.
Yeah, it's okay, cause it's almost time.
We're getting a new dog right at West, right? Um, which is the building actually has been asking for a dog for a while. But in talking, our idea, and again, this is kind of an AG philosophy, particularly as we decommission buildings and we're, you know, not retiring dogs, but we decommission buildings. Um, our sweet spot, we think would be about twelve. Like, at, at capacity would be twelve dogs, because you're going down to, you know, sixteen buildings, give or take, they're sharing schedules, you have the dogs that may be a little perfectionist and they don't wanna be with other dogs. We're thinking about twelve would be our saturated point. You know what I mean? Now, it doesn't mean we have to have twelve, but twelve would be kind of, kind of where we would land. Um. Which then, again, predicates the, what would we pay for a dog if we had the opportunity to buy one dog or two dogs, you know, or if we decommissioned or retired dogs, what would that look like? So those are two questions, um, that we had. And then the other piece in decommissioning our retiring dogs is, I know we had talked about, um, like, what does that look like? Do you know what I mean? Like, when a dog, to your point, you might, the dog might ever not, might not ever retire because they're outplaced or somewhere different, or they tell us that a dog can no longer serve its, serve in its capacity, we are thinking that would be a more quiet retirement, rather than a celebrated retirement. Because I think just the optics of that, although it's, although the buildings consider their dogs their dogs, I mean, as far as their culture, um, I think that could, unless we, that could look odd if we do them separately. But again, we can talk about that as far as AGs and policies of that, it would be a quiet retirement rather than like a celebrated retirement of a dog.
Don't we, like, some of the dogs that are older, like the eight years, aren't all babies, you know?
We have about five.
Let's look like there's about five.
Gonna be maybe ready soon.
I mean, with.
And I think we came up with a policy when we discussed that there was a concern of, you, you don't want them to get to the point where you have some tragic incidents, right? They're in pain or, or making mistakes. So there is a, like, I think there's a role to play of, what guidance do we wanna put to say like, okay, you served, you served your career and, you know, leave in a good place rather than, you know, oh, wow, this, this is fucking.
Andrea, can you, I have a question. I don't, I don't know the Circle Tail piece. Like, let's say a dog got to be, and I have no knowledge of dogs, I don't know what's old, what's young, never had a dog. But eight, apparently, this is older. Couldn't we request a dog to be assessed when they reach a certain age? Is that a fair thing for us? It's like, if they were nine, could we say when all dogs start to be eight or nine, that they're assessed? Would Circle Tail agree to that?
Well, the, the cover, that's been the conversation and their, their words to us are, the dog will tell us. When they don't wanna be with people, when they don't wanna get up and go, when they're not happy to be around children, then that, that they will start telling us that.
Is the, does the host family keep the dog? And what happens to the dog?
So that was, that's the part where Andrea, I, I think we had a good held guy on, cause, and Adam actually said this too the other day.
I remember this.
And you did, you said this.
So you're talking about it like a car, okay? So the dog's retired, if I'm a host family, I might say, I'm gonna buy the dog. Like, I want the dog, right? Like, no, I know it can't be a therapy dog anymore, but it's part of our family, can I buy it? So Adam said, well, then you put a book value that thing like a car, right?
Makes me sound so soulless on all the, all the negative stuff she brings me. So that's like the least soulless thing that. I'm doing worse.
Then, uh, and I
My counting man.
That's, no, I said, because I was, well, so, and I said prorated, I said, who would be prorated? Cause if you had like, tire, you have the first quarter dog versus the second quarter, like, I'm surely, and then she made a good point too, though, and she said, but Ashley, you have to remember, they've made a really big money.
Investment, yes.
When she said you have to get a fence, now, I know that's a choice, but think, I mean, I don't have a fence in my yard, so if I wanted a dog, I have to put in a fence, I have to feed it. Now, and I'm not saying we have a philosophy on that, but I do think that's a question.
Yeah.
When a dog is retired, what do you have the option to buy it as a family? I don't even know what Circle Tail would say to that. I don't know the answer to that. And if you do or can, this is another question I have now that we're thinking about it. Who would get the money? Cause technically they train the dog for thirty thousand dollars, we bought the dog. I'm assuming it's ours.
It's our dog.
So it's like, so would we want that prorated? Or do we just say, you've served a family capacity and so the dog is technically yours?
But we also have dogs that have lived with multiple families. It's a, it's a.
Correct.
You gotta think through the, the philosophy behind.
You've bought the food, you bought the fence, you fed the dog for ten years or eight years, let's say, to go at eight, and one host family, but what about the dog that's been to three host families?
Or, yeah. Or the financial, the financial piece too, if it's prorated, prorated from ten thousand, I don't know, people pay ten thousand dollars for a dog.
Well, that's what I said.
They say to you, if the prorate is twenty-five hundred, then you're like, well, I would pay that fine puppy.
Right.
Yeah, at the end of the dog's life.
Well, and that's why I was thinking.
Medical care at that point, as an owner of a dog.
That's why I'm writing medical bills. So, and let's hold the medical piece. So right now, a couple, couple of things that I think we're looking for takeaways is, are we comfortable with the kind of ratio of twelve dog in the rebuild and like the master facilities plan? If that's where we land in the future, we'd have about twelve dogs to sixteen buildings. So some dogs could share.
And there'd be service dogs in some buildings.
And there'd be service dogs in some buildings, or allergies taking that in consideration. Threshold for a dog. Do we have a, a dog amount that we go, we just, a dog, a dog, we can't go over that? Again, we've paid everything from a thousand to ten thousand and everything in between. I mean, you know, I think we've paid six before, we've paid twenty-five hundred before, is there a cap? Have we just? I have no idea what a dog costs, but I.
What would the average be?
Probably.
Well, fifteen hundred was where they started. It went fifteen hundred to three thousand. It was three thousand, three thousand, three thousand, six thousand, ten thousand.
So how are we back at five for the still?
Supply and demand.
Okay, so it's just some favorable market right now?
It's a flunkies currently. I mean, I would, again, this is my opinion. And again, I don't have a dog, I'm not a dog person per se. Ten thousand seems a little high to me. Like, it's just a lot of money, but again, I have no real.
I would think, I would think six or five even could be the cap, but I'm open for, like, and I'm picking that from a non dog. I mean, I know people that, I mean, I know somebody literally spent nine thousand dollars on a dog like two days ago. It's like, you did what?
I mean, this is a policy, it can be changed. We set the threshold at six.
And it can be up too, do you know what I mean? So it can be anything up.
Well, if, if it's six thousand dollars and you get six years of service.
It's a thousand dollars a year.
I, I, I think I'm comfortable with up to, up to six.
I mean, that's just.
And we'll, and we'll draft it up, do you know what I mean?
Oh, it's more.
Um, with the retirement, and we can play with this, would you like us to look at a kind of, uh, prorated option? Again, we can, we can flesh this out, a prorated option, a, no, you just can't buy it, it's cleaner, or a, um, um.
You took care of it, the dog.
You took care of it, the dog's yours with it. And maybe there's an op, like, if you've had it for multiple years, here's what happens. If you've had it for a year or less, here's like, maybe we could build up like several options and that's.
I don't think you say. I, in the case of dogs that have been here for eight years with one family, I don't think you can say, the dog retire and give it back now. Cause like you said, it does, even with the restrictions, it does become part of the family.
When I'm gonna ask a bigger question, let's say they give it back to us.
What we do.
What we do with it? You see what I'm saying?
I, I think as long as we have assessment from Circle Tail that says this dog is done. So the host isn't just deciding.
Right, yeah.
I think this dog is done. As long as you have the assessment, just give them the dog.
Right.
I mean.
Give, they, they bought the food, they bought the medical care.
Right. At this point, if Circle Tail has said they have to retire, you're gonna have a whole lot more cost coming after that.
Okay, so then let me ask you this. Again, you just think, so you offer to the host family, the host family, I don't think this would happen, but the host family says, no, I'm good.
Yes.
Then what do we do? Is it like, do we offer the dog?
The handler maybe?
Up.
There, does the handler find someone?
But I think you need a protocol for that.
I, I, I don't, I don't know that they would take.
Well, if not, we'd have to look at the policy, it should probably be a public auction. Well, I'm just saying.
Is this any chance?
God bless.
It says.
Starting at one dollar.
I, I will say with it, with. The dog in a bowl.
I'm sorry.
Within the option.
Oh.
Within the policy, it is a partnership between Circle Tail, the facility, and the host family. Everything's written that way. So I think to answer the question, Circle Tail, they're not gonna turn a dog away. Uh, we're disagreeing about how many employees and families.
So we vote off, they can say that.
Yeah, but, but we might just say that, and what that.
Is correct.
Because they're probably gonna be the man. So I could see a family saying yes, a handler saying yes, and then a board member saying yes, and.
Second option, yeah, okay. And then maybe after that. I mean, if it's been at a specific school for most of its time, would you offer, put it in a school email and say, is there a family?
Well, that's how it's gonna, yeah.
Is there any, who said the dog would tell you what it's done? And I know that they're all.
She'd like that out of dogs, is there any chance that a dog would get aggressive?
Would, well, that could be part of the dog telling you what's done.
Right, but I would hate to see a tragedy.
From a dog.
Because we haven't had it assessed and all of a sudden, I, I don't even know that would happen. I don't have a dog.
Um, they're animals.
So it's my concern with the dog telling us when they're done.
Uh, if a dog is injured, a dog will be aggressive if there's something wrong with it. So that's why there's, that hair, there's all those pieces that we have to make sure are occurring for the dogs.
Yeah.
Um.
And we can circle back with, with, he'll just say, like, I hear what you're saying about the dog telling us, is there any point where we could? I mean, we can just ask the question. They might not say, yeah, they might not say yes or no, but we can ask that.
And, and remember, we were the first people that, you know, ran with us, that's why.
They might have learned something between the non.
But we're, we're in constant contact. I mean, I send loads of.
The other.
Circle Tail constantly.
The other piece that, and it's part of the contract, um, Circle Tail contract, the first cohort of dogs had, and again, this is, you talk about a definable or interpretable word. They had routine care from a veterinarian, um, as part of their, their contract. Those thousand dollar dogs did for the most part. The second cohort of animals didn't have that. So what that means is you have some families, depending on the dog you have, that the routine care, and we could define that better, you know, what that covers. But then you have some other families that don't have that. So as Andrea and I were talking, um, you know, you, you've got a contract for a dog that was signed at a given point of time or whenever it was signed, it is what it is. Our question though would be, or our, our thought was that maybe we try to find a partnership with a local veterinarian who could cover the non-original cohort dogs to cover that same routine cost. Again, very similar definitions, not for extra, but if this cohort is covered by X, this cohort would be covered by B, C, and E or whatever. Are we comfortable that we can explore that so that at least all families feel like they're getting the same?
Yeah, like an annual checkup on backseats every year.
Or like, and again, my question, routine, I don't know, I'm assuming dogs brush their teeth and eat snacks, that's routine if you have to have some dental check that we experienced this year. Like, I think we can help define, right, what routine is, and then get a partnership for both cohorts of dogs, not only the current ones we have, but going forward.
I, I would encourage us to think like, even when advising it and putting it like a, a partnership and sponsorship, right? So they would get a lot of recognition for being the, just like beacon, whether the programs that they work out with our.
Well, and, and I had a lady when I was, um, selling concessions, said like, hey, I think there could be like three and four, you know, vets in, in, between Westchester and Liberty, depending on where you live, you could take them to X spot or X spot. So that's something we'll explore, so that we can just feel, I think we would feel better that all of our staff, our host families are having the same opportunities as far as medical or dental, uh, opportunities that they don't have to absorb that cost. We understand by fence and food and all of that, but routine, again, that's a rough word.
Yeah, and right now, established contract reads for the first cohort of dogs, not in the contract. It's, was this kind of handshake and a wink on the side. Um, but again, the program blew up and it just grew so quickly that the partnership with this other, um, veterinarian, they were like, we can't keep.
Can't handle that much.
So that's what happened. So it's not part of the contract, it actually.
It's like an MOU.
It's like an MOU.
The contract actually reads, um, that the facility, so, meaning Lakota, by means of the host will do that. Yeah.
So I think our takeaways are policy and AGs.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh.
What if it has a big?
That's, so that's where, so, that's a great question. That is what we ran into with the knee, with the dog, with the knee problem, right? It was a very, I'm gonna say expensive, I don't have a price tag for that, but they needed a knee replacement. Now, the dog's knee is kind of repaired itself.
It happens apparently. I mean, it repaired itself, but I do think that isn't, well, but again, that, and I don't know the answer to this, we'd have to talk to Circle Tail, is
what if we say we can't, we're not gonna pay twenty thousand dollars for a new surgery, does that make the dog non-workable? What does Circle, like, those are the questions we need to think through. Because, as you know, I mean, like, medical bills, those can get really, they can get really fast when you have twelve dogs. And so I do think we need to explore that option a little bit and how that works in the assessment. If we say we're refusing to pay for that.
And also, what if something happens with the host family? Like, what if an injury happens at home? And then, is it really?
Any, anything at home is in the contract, is, is on liabilities on the family.
So if he tears his ACL at home, just running in the yard, it's on the host family?
But if they're toward at school, like workers comp, right?
But I think this is an opportunity with those discussions to see if there's even a bigger partnership progress, where they'd be willing to even cover and expand the coverage, knowing that these are kind of.
Sponsor too.
Yeah.
I read that, so.
And, and I, I'm just gonna throw this, I know the kind of press for time, the, the hard part of, yes, it's at home, but it's our therapy dog.
Yeah.
And we want it to come to work.
It has a job to do.
So, and that's my special education brain, it's like access to school. So it'd be access to work, and if you can't come to work, then what, what are we gonna do? So I think that's something that we maybe want to. Sorry, I know it's, but can I bring, thank you, can I bring a surprise?
You can't, you can't, that I did not ruin.
Cause, no, you didn't run it off, cause I, I don't know if this is.
It's a new dog, is our new.
This is the west one, the next one, like the funky west one.
Very nice.
Just don't let me scratch my eyes.
Well, then you can't.
Hey, I know, but I'd like to pet them.
Okay, that, I like peanuts, so I'm gonna do them. No.
Like, that's not gonna work. I'm gonna go into an anaphylactic shock. This is Downy.
Yeah.
Hey, Donnie.
Okay.
You got your.
You say hi to Adam.
Hi.
Suzie.
I'm stress free. This one is, I don't need any support right now.
Is it a boy or a girl?
The other day she was attached at my hip. I didn't know what to do about that. I was like, oh.
Okay, I'm not stressed.
Yeah. Two. He was very. Tell him this is a dog.
Very good job.
Big dog, really.
Big dog. Twelve.
I mean. Right?
You need one, you can carry it first.
Yeah.
The age of the dog that's that big, and I would say usually is about twelve, and then like a small dog is about sixteen.
How long they last?
Yeah. I would, I mean, it's not a long or longer, but that would be pretty.
I thought he would be a bottle of water.
Like, I have, like, a little walking over there.
Put away the muffins. Down, no, I don't want the muffins, I should keep over there because of Downy.
Downy has a butt.
Oh, good. All right.
I think I have two dogs, this one, let them.
Thank you, do we have?
I have two.
Two things, okay, quick thing. Do you have a dog, Andrea? Like a, one more dog?
Oh, no, I have a little box. My, I'm not allowed to have another one.
Um, two things, uh, just, just to kind of circle out, or just Circle Tail, circle out right our day, um, two things. Um, two things that we had slated for today. Thank you, Andrea. Um, committee dates. We had talked about, cause we have publicly noticed committee dates through like August. We had not done anything after that, cause we were wanting to talk about schedules and things, just in general, in general committees.
At the org meetings, we didn't do them?
We did, but we talked about that we were, uh, wanting to double check that our daily committees. So like facilities, I think we have figured out. We can do our planning meetings from seven to nine. Christina said those are fine. Um, nine to twelve, which is master facilities, but then also like policy committee or. Um, finance committee or community engagement, those happen during the day. Will that work? Once school starts.
Yeah, not for me. The only way that would work is if somebody took my spot at this.
And so what about after? Like, what, what time could you, could you get, like, what time are you, are you done?
That's why I want to have this conversation so we can.
Like, what time would be the earliest you could be here?
Probably four thirty.
So finance doesn't need to change? Cause that's Doug and I, correct?
It's just community engagement and policy.
Community engagement and policy. And then master facilities. If we wanted to change that, those are the three we're talking about.
Well, we would have, I think master facility quorum, could we not? Figure out if one of you two.
I wouldn't be able to ensure I can be there.
No, but I mean, like, could we work it out so that? Like, the next one coming up, could it be Doug? Or could we work it by day?
I think that gets really tricky.
Do we stop doing forum meetings and just do report outs at the regular board meetings and then people come as their?
Or do we just do subcommittee meeting all the time and? Is that, can we do that based on? But then they get no input when they can come?
Well, or bring the. Bring the committee into the board meeting. Instead of a, instead of a review, once that review out at that part of the agenda, we could actually do it.
So.
Committee meeting.
So do our regular Tuesday as a sub and then bring the?
Not the quorum became, should not be. The meeting that request to the quorum. Should not be part of our board meeting, right? As a committee meeting. That's what we tried to do last year, I believe, yeah.
And this include now, well, I guess they would do it.
We tried.
This is the architect piece too. And sometimes those are really. There, this could be lengthy. Do we want to throw that into a board meeting? I mean, I don't care.
I think there's an opportunity to put more of a spotlight on the master facilities during this process by having it be part of the board meetings instead of. Tuesday during the day. I mean.
So quorum, I'm just pouring a bar of booze. So we do quorum and then we'd still do subcommittee. So, well.
Quorum would be in the board meeting.
Quorum would be during the board meeting and then subcommittee would be during the nine to eleven slot.
The only problem I, and we have to look at this with quorum being during the meeting is we don't have that many meetings.
So the quorum we have, just so I'm reading them off the list here. We got, what is today? Clear, I gotta look. Okay. We got the quorum on the first of July. We got the quorum on July fifteenth, but two people are missing. Julie's absent and Christina's absent that day. We got a quorum on the twenty ninth. Julie's absent that day. We had a quorum on August fifth. That's also a planning meeting. We got a quorum on August nineteenth. That's quorum on September second. September sixteenth. September thirtieth. October seventh. October twenty first, yeah, and then November fourth.
So. Then you would have a quorum meeting only once in July on the twenty first. But I feel like it's not enough.
I can attend until the end of July. August first is when I can't, I can't attend anymore. So I can do the twenty ninth.
Then it would be a board meeting.
Well, I'll be out of town.
Have the architects come in, have Craig be there, have, you know. Have, have the group actually at the board meeting come up and.
I'm fine with that. What I'm saying is we don't have as many board meetings as we do quorum meetings. So there's, there's decisions that need to be made.
You have a quorum meeting every week. We have a board, a regular board meeting once a month.
Can decisions be made in a planning meeting?
I mean, even that after.
That's twice a month.
But you're still gone after that, like you're still.
No, but we have the planning meetings. I'm talking about the board planning meetings. We have like, we have two board meetings a month that decisions can be made in and we have two quorums a month.
I thought after July you could not come to this.
She can come to planning. And so not master.
Not community, not. Just.
For the rest of the calendar year or?
If we change it to seven to nine. Or five to seven or whatever. That was the first thing she said is if we change the board planning meeting.
They're already at seven. They're already at seven.
Seven AM, yeah.
So I can do that.
What she's saying is put the master facilities conversation.
I have that planned out. If, if, there's decisions to be made. We have two board meetings a month. We have the planning meeting and we have the regular board meeting and we have two quorums a month. So if we align those. They could, you can, we can still be together to make decisions. Even if the facility's quorum is only attached to one of.
Well, maybe the facility's quorum is attached to the. Planning.
And, and it is, a lot is.
And then the decision is voted on at, cause we're trying not to quote unquote vote at planning.
I can't stay till eleven. I can stay from seven to nine. So if you attach a quorum.
Yeah.
To the planning meeting, I cannot stay for that.
I mean, there's been very few things honestly in the quorum that, if, if they haven't been voted on, like.
Right, we haven't, yeah.
The seven o'clock to nine o'clock planning and then make the vote at the, if we need to, at the night meeting.
Right.
That or if you had some pressing enough, we could always call special. If there was, but I, we haven't really had anything pop out of that that we would need to vote on.
One, two, three. Four. There are several, there are several planning meetings that fall on a quorum. You know what I mean? There are about five. Through now and just.
So we would just move, if part of our planning would be divided to these, the quorum of the facilities and. That way Christina could do it.
So like, I'm just gonna pick a date right here. August fifth is a planning meeting from seven AM to nine. It's also a quorum meeting, master facilities. For noticing purposes, are we saying that? Master facilities is coming into the planning meeting? Like, I'm just thinking about how he would notice.
I don't, we've already noticed the planning meeting. I don't know that we would need to change anything. We would just add that as an agenda.
We just have to cancel the quorum meetings if they've been noticed.
They haven't been noticed yet.
Anything past July and just to make sure the architects know that. Not, not, not.
So on August fifth, when we have a planning meeting, there would be no master facilities. I'm just making sure my notes are right.
It would be in the planning.
Master facilities would be from seven to nine during the meeting.
I would hope that we could limit it to an hour so we would have other things that we could also do.
Yeah, so facility.
I'm just making a note like.
Okay, I don't think our whole planning meeting should be.
No, I agree. I'm just saying like if, for calendar purposes, I don't want it to get super weird. So I'm just making a note on here, the planning meeting on August fifth, master facilities would just become part of the planning meeting. Same thing on September second. Same thing on October seventh. Same thing on November fourth. Same thing on December second. And then you, that, that takes you to the. To the.
Board meeting. So. Let's confuse it even further. Where, where are we on subcommittees then?
So, and I think, so the others who are community engagement and pol.
Where, how does that work now? Still be every other week?
So it would be. It's a good question. So when I, uh, I don't know, let me get to September. In August, we have an August fifth planning meeting, which would be the quorum. The twelfth is a subcommittee, the nineteenth is supposed to be a quorum.
But does that just go away or does that become a subcommittee?
It's a great, it's a good question. I mean, it really just changes the people sitting at the table and how many people we want there. I mean, it really.
So I guess. We can play that by ear, like whether or not the forums become a sub.
I mean, really, for all intents and purposes. It's non-clature, right? Meaning you gotta have three people or you can have two people. I mean, that's really the only difference. I mean, we have to, we have to notice them and all that regardless. So it's really just the amount of people sitting at this table versus out there, depending on what you call it.
Right.
I would think for now we. We move them to subcommittees and then if we don't need them, we can cancel them like we've been doing. And then we just need to make sure that everything is well reported out in your weekly update from anything that transpires in those subcommittees.
Well, this will be easy to keep track of. Because the quorum meetings will only be on planning meeting day. So we will be.
I will know where to sit.
So you will know where to sit.
So we are changing.
It's not just your.
Just for your reference, we'd be changing one, two, three. Four. Four. Five. Six, you'd only be changing six subcommittees, or s- uh, seven, sorry. And the last one's December thirtieth, which we've already talked about, like.
Yeah.
Are we having that under your seat?
Yeah. Or the day before.
So I'll get calendars and things adjusted for that. Um, community engagement and policy.
Is the seven o'clock, could that be? Could you also do seven for committee meetings or does your day start before then?
My day starts before then, so. I just made special arrangements for those days. Until through December.
Okay.
So after December, we'll have to go back to either if.
Well, then we'll redo the org meeting, so we'll redo committees anyway in time, so we got that.
We have noticed all of the facility regular meetings all the way through.
You mean the forum meetings?
Yeah.
All the way through December sixteenth. It was those subcommittees that we were.
Well, we'll have to change. Have to change them. To.
I can move it to the evening. I can. Do four thirty?
You have your email now.
Whatever is fine with me. I don't, if any of the above is.
Is four thirty worth for you to? I think if we do four thirty, well, that would be a lot to, if we do four thirty for those committee meetings. I almost, could we do them on different days? Or is that allowed to ask four thirty to five thirty and five thirty to six thirty? You will have things with the kids.
I don't, I feel like it's easier on one day, but.
It's easier on one day, but then it goes into.
It's easier for me to get here by four thirty on one day. Cause that's gonna be a tight squeeze for me, you know, it's thirty minutes away. Well, maybe a little longer to here. But. Again, I could give up one of them. And you could attach it to finance or something else. And I could keep one and we could just do one. I'm open to anything. I don't, I mean, I'm not married to any. I'm only married to one.
There are the kids on that night.
We get into trouble.
With the age of your children.
Is there any way? Is there any way to notice? The meetings. So that it would say. Four thirty on April the seventh, we are having a community engagement slash policy meeting. So that. If we come to, and I'm making it up, community engagement at four thirty and it's done by. Five. Now we gotta sit here half an hour to wait for policy to start at five thirty. Is there a way to do that so that you can just roll them or is that not cult?
Think you combine, like, the notice is just one meeting?
I could, I can figure it out.
Cause I think that would, especially from a staff perspective of our staff, that now we're asking them, they have to stay till six thirty potentially.
We always agree with that. Uh, with a regular board meeting, we had challenges with that, but I'll see if there's a little different way to go with it. Yeah. A static start time was what they needed. So we'll see if maybe.
Is that the same for committee?
So just have it be, yeah, it's one committee meeting.
The community engage slash policy meetings. I mean, cause some days we do have policy for an hour or so and then like last time we. Not only didn't have policy for the entire. We also have a fifteen minute community engagement. We could have been done. Right, or there are two hours when we could have been potentially done in forty-five minutes. But because we had to wait to start. I, I don't know if that's kosher or legal or, let's work on it.
Look into it.
Or, I mean, if you would prefer. We would prefer, we could do it in the evening. We could say like a six o'clock, six thirty. I feel like that's harder for you maybe. I don't know, to go home and then come out again. And I'm always a little, little.
Well, I mean. There is situations where. Parents won't be at bus stops and kids are coming back to school and I would have to say at the last minute, I can't make it.
Right.
And situat- I mean, there's. The evening, having it in the evening would eliminate that from happening. Um, I don't care. I'll do whatever. If you're all willing to switch to a different time, I'll make whatever time you choose. Work in whatever capacity you make it.
I don't know what's the best option for like our. Like our staff. To have to come back another night for.
Could community engagement be tied to the board meeting? Cause that seems more static and it's easier to kind of manage the time of. Like, are those usually full hour meetings?
Uh, most of the time. It hasn't been lately, but. My concern for that then becomes my schedule a little bit in the fall. Because I will be teaching some afternoon classes.
So, but if, say that started at. Five and then to five thirty when the listening session begins, cause we usually don't have a listening session. So then you could often. Well, pass by towards the board meeting. If you did that for community engagement, like. Again, just a thought, just trying to be helpful.
Then you have to worry about, like, if you do go longer and there is some, I don't know.
And then we can, I mean, we can.
Why don't we try? Why don't we? Since it affects Doug, Christina and I. Why don't we see? If the option to do one meeting works, or let's start with that.
Or Julie, you could take my spot on policy since you're with him anyway, the finance. You have to put those two together. And then we just have to figure out community engagement. And then it's only one hour. And if we did four thirty, the staff would be here.
Maybe give up something we may want to do, but that's up to you. And Julie, she's gonna have no.
It's okay.
Let's give clarity on that.
Would we do one meeting?
And then, and then regroup and see what that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I just wanna make, okay, so we're gonna get clarity on that for community engagement and policy. Can we do kind of one meeting with one, like? One start under one notice of, of policy. So I just wanna make sure, cause I'm looking at my master facilities. We're not changing. Like, the, the quorum piece until after August. Right? We're gonna continue in our normal quorum piece through July.
Starting in August.
August fifth, okay, I'm just putting, I'm putting a little thing.
Yeah.
That the schedule changes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just putting a thing here, sched- schedule changes and I'm just making a note here. Okay.
Cause then that would be a renotice of everything from that point through December sixteenth.
I think you may have changed the start time on some of those in July or maybe I'm wrong.
Uh, July did.
Just the one.
Just the one in July. Eighth, which is a quorum where you and Christina are gone. That one is seven to nine.
Cause that's when we could get it. That's why that.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm.
Nine, after. It's like one's after the planning meeting and the other ones by itself. I think is how that.
What now?
I think one's right after the planning meeting and the other one was by itself.
Sorry, guys. What do you mean?
Oh, we appreciate that you're trying to make it work.
Every other week, I think, is how those.
There's still nine except for that one in July.
Facilities. I think it's just not worked out when we did it originally. That notice has been, that was. Notice back in February.
Do is I will.
I don't like the issue that he attaches to the board meeting.
Now, once you have that worked out, you just give it to me and I'll notice it.
I'm, I don't wanna overwrite. Does that make sense? Like, I'm gonna strike through so we can see the original and then do that, cause I don't want us to be like, what did we do where? Um, so.
We did try hard this year to change less, but it's been tricky.
We have a lot of committees and that, that's what I, I. I feel like, again, we used to do quarterly committees, so maybe there's a way to get back. To doing fewer committees.
It's been much better than the every month on that one Friday. That was a day.
Okay, all right, we good?
One more. I did forget one more. Retreats. Do we want, what cadence of retreats do we want to keep for next year? This year we had three. One. Three.
We, no, we had two back to back in August and have we had one since August?
Yeah, we had one in the fall.
So we had two in August. One in, did we have one in November?
Yes, and then this one.
Yeah, so four.
I, I count the two in August as one, but three. So do we wanna do like a half year, a start of the year? I just wanted to kind of understand that cadence. So we talked about once a quarter at one time.
Yeah, this was the only one we had for this calendar year.
Yeah, this is the only one we had in second semester.
I feel like it depends how we decide to do our meetings for next year. I don't know. Like, if we're still gonna do a planning meeting and a regular meeting. Like, if we're still gonna do a planning meeting and a regular meeting every month, then I feel like a lot of this was getting things started. That we could probably go to two a year, would be my thought, but.
That we only have one.
Does it make sense for us to plan for a retreat after November eighth?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was thinking.
Either we're either turning the page or regrouping.
Yeah, you're.
No, no retreat between now and then November, so we won't have a retreat in next year until the.
We, we would have.
I thought we said we would just.
Retreat in November, so.
Like, I personally would think that it could make sense to do a retreat like right around that goal setting time, like goal planning time, right in there, but. That just naturally feels like a normal spot for me.
I agree, I mean, I think a natural spot is August, right, because it's start of the year, but then.
Yeah, when you're really proactive, that would probably be more like.
Where's the mid-year check-in then, is that at a meeting in January?
November, probably December, January. And yeah, we can build that time, I'm just thinking with strategic planning coming after. The election, do you know what I mean, I think it would be a good group to see, again, are we gonna have to regroup? You're turning the page or what are we doing and then talking about that strategic plan piece too as well. Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, so I have a motion to adjourn. Second? Isaac, any discussion? Here you go, Adam, please follow the role.
Mr. Ord. That's Mr. D. Ms. Casper.
Yeah.
Ms. French.
Yeah.
Gotta reference you differently now.
I know, you are.